Good evening, can you hear back there? If you can hear me, please raise your hands. Yay. Hey, thank you all for coming. It is great to have you. This is October 22nd. This is our second public hearing. I'm Sally Bagshaw. I chair this committee. With me, Council President Harrell, Councilmember Gonzalez. Thank you. And we know we'll have more. They're lurking in the hallway, talking to other people. So, we know. We know that we will have many more council members here. I want to just remind everybody that we're going to ask speakers to have two minutes. Stick with two minutes. If you want to speak as a group, you can have five. I know we've got some students here. I always love to know what schools that you're representing. So, thank you for coming. This is a really good opportunity for you to see democracy in action and our folks in Seattle that are here to talk to us about the budget and what's important to them. I believe that there are more people downstairs. So, if you are willing, after you have spoken, if you would leave your seats and make room for people downstairs so others can come up. And I also, Councilmember Sawan, I'm glad you're here. Thank you. Last year, when we had our Vietnamese seniors, I believe you made a motion to suggest that they come up and speak first. I think they're seventh on the list tonight, but I would like, if it's okay with my colleagues, to invite them up to speak. I know some of them have a bus catch. They also have, I think, some, I just heard from Lynn, that somebody was on their way to the hospital. I don't want to get in the way of medical treatment. So, if it's okay with you, I would just like to invite them up to speak. Is that any objection to that?
No objection.
Okay. Ms. Lynn, I know you're back there. At least you were. But if we could ask our Vietnamese seniors that want to address us to come on up to the microphones.
The speaker hasn't shown up yet.
I see. Okay. Would you let me know when the speaker does show up? Thank you so much. Okay, well, let's get going. I'm going to call three names. And if I can't read your handwriting, which happens on occasion, I'm going to call your number. And then if you will come up, and I think there's a place for your cards over there. There are two microphones here. There's one over here. I feel sort of like in the airplane when you first get in and you get your flight attendants directing you here, and here, and over there. So, are they here now? Okay. Very good. So, would you, Ms. Lynn, would you invite your seniors to join us? We're going to have them speak first. And so, anybody who wants to come up will be welcome. And also, Mr. Interpreter, if I may, would you please let them know that the, I believe the request they have made for the budget was in the mayor's budget and that there's no reason to believe that we are not going to support that? So, they don't have to be convincing us of anything. Ms. Lynn, just approach to the microphone.
Thank you, Councilmember. On behalf of the Vietnamese Senior Association, I think that we passed the public testimony. So, we just wanted to stand up all together to say thank you to all councilmembers for supporting that fund. But we passed on the testimony.
Oh, nice.
The seniors just got out of the hospital on Friday, but because of, you know, they really need the funds, so they fight the rain. And, you know, some of them can barely stand up, but they want to be here to let you know that they really want your support for the grant. And thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez, for supporting the grant. Councilmember President Harrell, too.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sawan.
Thank you.
I used to work for you all, so I love you all.
Thank you. So, did your colleague want to speak?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all for coming. Okay. So, Speaker number one. We have, it looks like Cecile Hansen. And then we've got number two, looks like Queen, King Rios. Number three is Sandra Valberg Crown, maybe? So, it's one, two, and three. Oh, great. Are you a group? Lovely. Okay. But it makes me very happy to have this many people stand up and talk about safe streets for kids. Okay. Please. And you've got five minutes, is this group? And we're very happy to see you all. Please, go ahead. And just introduce yourself, please.
Okay. I'm Cecile Hansen. I am the Chair of the Duamish Tribe, the Indigenous People of Seattle. And I've been Chair for over 40 years. And I'm here to advocate for safety on streets, especially on West Marginal Way in West Seattle.
Thank you. And if I can ask each of you to speak into the microphone so others back there can hear you, too.
Okay. Are you done? My name is Jolene Haas, and I'm the Director of the Duamish Longhouse and Cultural Center. And I'm a Duamish tribal member. And I am here to convince you to support the Duamish Safe Streets Initiative that has been proposed to Lisa Herbold and given to each one of you to consider in funding this project in the mayor's budget. We've been working with SDOT, who has come up with a $2 million price tag to put us, that is what it would take to put a crosswalk across West Marginal Way to give us equal and safe access to the T-107 Park and Harings House Park, which is a very culturally significant heritage site of ours. And it's the reason why we put the Duamish Longhouse and Cultural Center where it currently is. At one point, we wanted to actually have it on that side of the street, but since it is where it is, we need to have access to it. And trying to get back and forth has created hazards to the schoolchildren, to ourselves, to people that are walking, biking to our location, since we don't have public transportation. So, with that being said, I want to thank all of our supporters that are standing here with the Duamish today that support this. This has been an ongoing issue for the last, well, before, since before we even built the longhouse, we knew this was going to be a problem. We're asking the City Council, please, take seriously this request to get us a safe crosswalk across West Marginal Way. And I want to ask any of these folks that want to say something to speak to this issue, please do.
Thank you. My name is Tamsin Spangler, and I've lived in West Seattle for 60 years. And I'm happy to see the Duamish Longhouse and Cultural Center open in 2009. I've attended many events there. It's a beautiful place. And recently, we've been holding our District One Community Network monthly meetings there. The longhouse provides that space for our meeting at no cost, as they believe in community engagement and building relationships with the residents and the community groups with District One. I am asking for your support of the Duamish Longhouse proposal to add a city budget, a green sheet with the total cost of constructing a safe crosswalk, paving the sidewalks, and anchoring a traffic slowdown signal. It is not safe to cross the street right now. These unsafe crosswalks are not even ADA requirements, are not even being met. And the sidewalks are unpaved. This is not safe for families. It's not safe for the elderly. We would love to be involved with the longhouse, but we need these additions made. So, I'm asking for your support for the green sheet, what's these totals cost. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, all of you. Sir?
I'm Linda Blackington. I'm a liaison from the Samish Nation to the Duamish. We're behind them 100% for any safety features they need. I live on Alki Avenue. And when I go over there, if I have to park over at T-107, I would rather not, because the traffic is so bad. You take your life in your hands getting across there. It's hard enough just getting in and out of there with a car. So, they really need something done in there. There's many, many different things you can do. I don't know what's in the proposal, but please look at this. It's really important to get that safety feature done.
Thank you. Hi, Ishka. Thank you.
I'm Don Brubeck. And I'd like to, we acknowledge that we're on the ancestral lands of the first peoples of Seattle, the Duamish tribe. This is a chance to actually do something about it. And we're all here as part of a coalition, a broad coalition of neighborhood groups, including Georgetown Community Council, Highland Park, Action Committee, the North Delridge, the Delridge Neighborhood Development Association, Ecos, the Duamish River Tag, over a dozen groups, Duamish Valley Safe Streets, West Seattle Bike Connections, and others who are in strong support. So, it's a broad coalition. It's a doable project that SDOT has a concept designed for, and we hope for your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time. Well done. Now, how many numbers did we go through? One? Just one. Well done. And Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, they're here, too. So, thank you for that. All right. Well, let's move on to number two. Queen M., King Rios, and then it looks like Sandra Valberg Crown, number three, and Oliver Anderson Sanford, number four. So, two, three, and four.
Good evening, Seattle City Council members. My name is Queen B., King Rios. I live in downtown Seattle, District Three. And I'm here today as a member of Wheel and a leader of Women in Black. As of tomorrow, Women in Black would have still for 94 outside by violent deaths in King County, and of course, right here in Seattle is included. Our hearts are broken and we are grief-stricken. I've been trying to pass out as many flyers as I can to get people to come and stand vigil with us for David, Derek, excuse me, Derek Frost, who was murdered in Lake City last week. We have to fund, we need to fund tiny house villages. There's no way our city is going to be able to survive if we don't get the means necessary to help stop one of these things. And deaths outside by violence isn't one way. This big, beautiful, rich city should be living in, and the people that live and work here. And I'm asking you guys, Councilmember, to please support Tiny House Villages. God bless you and thank you.
Thank you.
And can I please share this?
And I'm Anitra Freeman, with Share and Wheel and Women in Black. And I'm very glad to see a proposal from Sean McElroy for $12 million to fund 20 new tiny house villages, including the stipulation to not spend any money on shutting two of them down. We, as my friend said, we have too many deaths. Without shelter, people die. More shelter saves lives. I was there when Share Wheel started Tent City Three, which is still going. I was there when the Nickelodeons started the first tiny house village. And the Nickelodeons are still going. These are the pioneers. Share, Wheel, and Nicholsville are the pioneers in self-managed, organized encampments and tiny house villages. They need your support. That includes funds. It's also your support to keep real democracy and real self-management going. It works. It works, and it keeps people alive, and it keeps people going, and gives people the strength to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Anitra. All right, number three. Number three, we have Sandra Vanberg. And then four is Oliver Anderson Sanford. And five is Mariko Elas.
Hi. My name's Sandra Valberg Cronin, and I'm here about the ride-share tax. So, you call it fair share. We already pay 49.4% tax a gallon for the state tax, 18.4% federal tax. We pay 24 cents a ride that goes out of Seattle, which I just found out. But, you know, that's all right, because that goes for wheelchair taxi service. And then we have property tax that we have to pay as citizens of Seattle. Oh, I've lived here 32 years. I just paid my property taxes, about $3,000. To register my car, almost $400, $399. $80 was transportation benefit. I guess that's a benefit of getting to live in Seattle. $251 for regional transit, $25 for highway improvement. Well, okay, now you want to, oh, and then I pick up at the airport, so I have to have a TNC sticker, which also includes, oh, that's free. Great. But it also includes needing to have a business license, so you have to do all the filing of taxes and all that. So, now you want to charge 51 cents more, so that makes it 75 cents a ride out of Seattle. So, for your 51 cents, you guys want $125 million over the time of this tax, which to me, it just looks like you're replacing your Amazon Head tax. So, that's for 500 affordable housing units, which the Uber drivers are going to need. The city center connector streetcar that you guys ordered, the wrong size for cars to begin with. And then $17 million for driver's protection or unrepresented unionization. So, I think you guys should rethink this. Being a city resident, I don't want to be taxed by the city.
Thank you, Sandra. Oliver, Mariko, and then Eleanor John. That's four, five, and six. And if I could ask you, please, to come up. Excellent. Looks like you have some supporters here.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Oliver Anderson Sanford.
I'm Ashlyn McGraw.
I'm Sophia Scumnia Talis.
I'm Anya Ginsburg.
And I'm Esten Reeby. However, William Capham doesn't have the opportunity to be here today because he was found dead at 59 years old with his dog buddy curled up at his side. According to the Seattle Times, William, who preferred to be called Three Stars because it reflected his Mohawk tribal ancestry, was homeless for years. His shelter was a 14-foot aluminum boat covered in a tarp, being held up by a PVC frame. And he moved his boat around over the years until he eventually was stationed under the 520 Bridge, which is where he was found dead only two months ago, on August 7th, 2019. The medical examiner's office discovered he had passed away eight months before he was found. All that was left of him was his skeletal remains. How is this acceptable?
Sabrina Tate died in 2018 due to complications related to drug use, the Seattle Times reports. She was only 27 years old. After struggling with drug addiction as a teen, Sabrina moved to Seattle from Spokane in the hopes of finding a better life in a bigger city, but only found an endless struggle with addiction and homelessness. She ended up living in a so-called safe lot and was starting to reach out for help, but ultimately, she never received the help she needed, she desperately needed, until it was too late. How is this acceptable?
And there was Sarah Stewart, who, as reported by Crosscut in 2018, became homeless after getting evicted because her ability to work was limited by her degenerative illness. She struggles with chronic pain and fatigue and is now forced to sleep in her car, on her friends' couches and floors, and wherever else she can find. Sarah still finds, still works when she can, but was additionally burdened with $2,000 of late fees and attorney fees by her old landlord, which she simply cannot pay. How is this acceptable?
These are just some of the people that you could have helped, that we could have helped as a city. But you've been complacent. You've waited too long and wasted too much money on cops and repealed taxes due to your subservience to big businesses like Amazon. They couldn't, those big businesses couldn't care less about our city and even less about the people that live into it, live in it. How is that acceptable?
Around 48 homeless people in Seattle die each year, and only a fraction of them are investigated. About 70% of homeless people in Seattle became homeless while living in our own city. A survey in 2017 by Crosscut found that 25% of homeless people lost their homes after losing a job, and 93% of those surveyed would move into affordable housing if it was available. It's not. 41% of people living on the streets work in some capacity. How is this acceptable? As leaders of Seattle, how do you rationalize this? This is a crisis. You simply cannot call yourself a progressive city or a free city when there are over 12,000 people living here without a home.
These problems can be solved by reallocating funds to the wages of health and human service workers. It would be one thing if all 12,500 homeless people in the region were sheltered, if they had beds to go to every night. We could deal with that. But they don't. 47% of them don't. Having 30 more police officers won't give us more beds. The mayor has asked you all to turn our city's progressive values into progressive action. We can't execute that action with more police or new office workers. What we need is people on the ground, therapists in offices, nurses, doctors, family practitioners, teachers, and people that make real change. These are the health and human service workers. These are the people actually getting others off the streets. They deserve a living wage, and when you don't provide one, they have to move on, which in turn harms their clients. We can't solve homelessness and the housing crisis without dedicated, compassionate, and experienced people who love their jobs. So, I'll leave you with a simple request. Don't waste our money on officers with guns. Spend it on the people who care. Spend it on a bed. Spend it on anything but the police. I hope we've proven to you how you can increase public safety, not by spending less of it as a department of the city and more of it as a group of humans who care about everyone's health. Thank you.
Thank you. What school, what school do you attend?
We go to the Center School.
Nice. Well done. Thank you. So, I think we have Mariko Elas, Eleanor John, and Kelly McKinney next. So, those are numbers five, six, and eight. More Center School? Well done.
Good evening, councilmembers. We're honored to be here tonight. We're seniors from the Center School. My name is Mariko Islas.
My name is Adam Billen.
My name is Zivia Rich.
And my name is Maya Pody. There are many Center School students here tonight to testify on the budget, so we are going to try to limit our testimony to three minutes to leave room for all of us to speak. In alignment with those peers, we're here to advocate for an increase in health and human services funding.
But we aren't here to talk about ourselves. We're here to talk about...
Councilmember Herbold. You passed legislation that gave millions of dollars to affordable housing. You've seen how badly our communities are in need due to the rising rents within the city. In order to keep our communities safe and healthy, we need you. Councilmember Harrell.
We both live on Beacon Hill, and we see the effects of poverty on our community every day. We know you see them, too. When you announced you weren't running for reelection, you talked about the opportunities you had because of the mentors, teachers, and family members who helped you along the way.
Funding youth development services helps young people who need the same kind of role models in their lives.
Councilmember Sawan, you've been one of the most progressive voices in our city for years. You fought for the working class, for renters, and for the homeless. You know how important this is. Keep fighting. We need you.
Councilmember Pacheco, you work with U-Dub's Office on Minority Affairs and Diversity. The truth of our city is that people of color, especially Black people, are vastly overrepresented in poverty and homelessness. In order to help all of our city's populations, we need you.
Councilmember Juarez, through your work on capital development projects, you understand the impact that public policy and funding can have on poverty and homelessness. Continue pushing for high-end-back solutions like those that Health and Human Services provide.
Councilmember O'Brien, you have been dedicated to fixing our city's homelessness crisis for a long time. We urge you to act on your conscience in regards to the funding that Health and Human Services desperately needs.
Councilmember Bagshaw, you talk about wanting to create a healthy and safe environment, regardless of religion or race. By not giving Health and Human Services the funding they need, youth of color will not be able to connect to their culture. Councilmember Bagshaw, we need your help.
Councilmember Mosketa.
Your goal is to lift up working families and create affordable housing.
Health and Human Services, like the Downtown Emergency Service Center, do the exact same thing, and to be truly effective, they require additional funding.
Councilmember Gonzalez. You know firsthand from your experiences as a lawyer in Seattle that police can inflame rather than assist in many situations faced by Seattle citizens.
Health and Human Services is what is truly needed by our communities.
In a city where we've declared a state of emergency over our homeless crisis, only 10% of our general fund is offered to solve the issue. The people of Seattle deserve better. In order to get our citizens the help they need, we need you. We need you to step up and to make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you all. Number six is Eleanor John. Eight is Kelly McKinney. Nine is Gerald Davis.
Our names are Brandon Hopper...
Clara Gucina.
Eleanor John.
And Sawyer Anderson. We thank you for taking your time to hear us. We have our sources with us today, and feel free to check them. 27% of the general fund, $409,538,851, is allocated to the Police Department. Only 10% of the general fund is going to the Health and Human Services. We believe that the City Council should redistribute the $2,477,433 allocated for hiring and retention bonuses added to this year to Health and Human Services to aid Seattle residents who are experiencing or at risk of homelessness, abuse, or addiction.
There is no data to support the idea that more police officers equals less crime. In a Marshall Project study, the ratio of police per 1,000 students has been dropping. Meanwhile, crime rates in those areas have also dropped. According to Alexander Wise, a police staffing consultant who has worked with police departments in Chicago, Albuquerque, and New Orleans. Most police departments have issues, not with the number of officers, it's with how they are deployed and scheduled. It's more important what the officers do versus how many of them there are.
The key to an effective and respectful police force is not to increase the number of police officers. It is to train our officers in being aware of their implicit biases, the correct responses to different complex situations without resorting to unnecessary violence, and using evidence and data analysis to schedule patrols where and when they are needed most. Quality, not quantity, is what makes a police force that works for everyone.
Organizations getting funding from the City of Seattle on their Health and Human Services general fund section are subject to intensive regular audits and reports of how the city's money is being put to use. The police force should also have to provide city and its people with reports about how their money is being used and how this is helping or hindering communities. Organizations such as Southwest Youth and Family Services provide programs like opportunities to get a GED, credit retrieval classes, mental health services, community outreach, and family support, which are integral in building strong, healthy communities, getting people off the streets, and helping people get a second chance. However, there is simply not enough money getting to these organizations in order to serve our people in the way they deserve.
Increasing funds for Health and Human Services allows for organizations to do more important work with our communities and expand programs that not only help families but reduce crime. For example, the Housing First Strategy is not only one of the most effective ways to help people suffering from homelessness get back on their feet, but according to the Urban Institute, connecting people returning from prison to stable housing decreases the likelihood that they would return to prison by 60%, according to data from the Returning Home Ohio Program. In addition, connecting ex-offenders with a steady job paying around $10 per hour halves the likelihood of them returning to prison.
We have been researching this issue for mere weeks, and we already fully understand and accept what needs to be done. Each of you has had, at the very least, two years in office to gain this understanding. We're counting on you to do the right thing for the people you promised to serve. We will be watching. Thank you for your time, and please consider the incredible positive community impact for our generation and future generations that increasing funding for Health and Human Services will provide. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Number eight. Number eight is Kelly McKinney. Nine is Gerald Davis. 10 is Andrea Porter.
My name is Kelly McKinney. I live in the Bitter Lake neighborhood, and I'm going to try and keep this short. I, let me rotate this around. There we go. I support feasibility studies for Lipton Springs Community Center and for 24/7 enhanced shelter in Lake City as proposed by Councilmember Juarez. Lipton Springs is an underserved community in District Five and needs a place for people to gather as its community grows. And Seattle only has one enhanced shelter space in the city for adults, single adults, located south of the Ship Canal. There is no shelter for single adults in North Seattle. I continue to support LEAD in North Seattle for three reasons. The LEAD evaluations, as conducted by the University of Washington, were positive. Every Seattle Police Precinct captain and lieutenant I've ever heard speak about LEAD has praised it. And three, LEAD works with police. I support the efforts to recruit more police and community service officers. I'm skeptical in the increase, of the increase in the navigation team. While not opposed to the navigation team in principle, I cannot help but wonder how the navigation team can navigate people to shelter if we lack sufficient shelter and housing. People of, the number of people being successfully referred to shelter by the navigation team are not good. Seattle needs to step back and consider why the referrals of the shelter by the navigation team isn't working.
Thank you, Kelly. Gerald Davis, number nine. Number 10 is Andrea Porter. Number 11 is Erin Thomason.
My name is Jerel Davis. And I am passing my time off to Decriminalize Seattle.
Good evening, councilmembers. I am with Decriminalize Seattle, and we are calling on councilmembers to reject the proposed expansions within the Seattle Police Department. Please do not allocate $800,000 for the continuation of the emphasis patrols. Please do not allocate... Please do not allocate $800,000 for the sworn officer hiring incentives. And please do not allocate $1.6 million to recruitment and retention initiatives. The SPD and city are still under federal consent decree. How can we justify adding any additional funding when we are still out of compliance? The total divestment of $3.2 million can make some real change for our communities. The council should instead use this money to fund projects such as the Green Light Project, as proposed by Councilmember Mosketa, to provide direct outreach to sex workers on Aurora, which they have been doing since April of this year, making sure that people have things such as latex condoms, Plan B, and supplies for safe injections. And also Freedom Schools at Rainier Beach High School and Emerson Elementary, as proposed by Councilmember Sawant, which serves young students of color in South Seattle during the summer, which we know is a crucial time for young people to continue their learning. And also to support community-based first responders and bystander trainings for community members who are de facto first responders in non-medical emergencies. And lastly, allocate funding to create a harm reduction working group that utilizes noncriminal legal solutions to create policies addressing challenges the city faces.
Thank you, council members.
My name is Allison Chang. I'm with Decriminalize Seattle, Parasol, and All In for Washington. This is an issue of economic justice. We know that Seattle has the most regressive tax code in the entire country, which means that low-income Black and Brown communities are paying a much greater share than their wealthy white neighbors. Our tax dollars should not be used to further criminalize our communities and harm our youth, our families, and the things that we need to make our communities strong. I'm calling on all council members to reject the proposed expansions within the Seattle Municipal Court. Please do not allocate $170,000 to the Seattle Municipal Court for enhanced probation. Please do not allocate $150,000 to the City Attorney's Office for case conferencing. The details of this pilot project are unclear. I would like the council to allocate this $320,000 toward the Youth Consortium package, consisting of Creative Justice, Community Passageways, and the Safe Futures Youth Center. Our resources should be used to heal our communities through programs like these.
My name is Mark Routen. I'm a student at Seattle Central, working housing policy. I just wanted to say, there is a direct inverse correlation between the amount of resources a community has and its crime rate. Police don't exist to protect people, they exist to protect property. Stop using resources to lock humans away, and instead give those resources directly to the community through projects like the Green Light Project, POC Swap, and the Youth Consortium. Thank you.
And we also have copies of our platform for the council members as well. Thank you.
We have a few more remarks. The council should also support equitable development and anti-displacement efforts, such as the Equitable Development Initiative and community-driven planning, like the Graham Streets Station Project. We do not support the criminal legal system using the language of harm reduction and reform to further invest and expand itself and harm our communities. Study after study in places like Los Angeles, Philadelphia, and New Jersey have shown that increased probation does not result in lower crime rates. Nationally, municipalities are moving away from probation, so it does not make sense for our city to double down on this program. That is not our progressive values. Our budget should be used to address the root causes of why people end up in the criminal legal system. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Number 10 is Andrea Porter. 11 is Erin Thomason. And 12 is Kyoshi...
Golly doo. Greetings. My name is Lacey Warrior. I'm a member of Seattle Made. I'm here to encourage you to support funding for Seattle's small-scale manufacturers and producers in the Office of Economic Development's 2020 Budget. I manage Native Works, a social enterprise and vocational rehabilitation program that employs 15 homeless and low-income Native Americans and Alaska natives. Our apprentices create authentic Indigenous art in Pioneer Square at the Chief Seattle Club that is sold at Pike Place Market. We give our apprentices a safe, secure space to relearn employment skills and reconnect with the Native community while mentoring and guiding them into gainful employment. Many of our apprentices have gained full-time employment and housing because of the Native Works program, without which they would have a significantly more difficult time doing so, finding jobs. The support of Seattle Made for our program provides resources and training for our apprentices and has also given Native Works a voice in the noise of big business in Seattle. Again, my name is Lacey Warrior, and I'm here to ask you to fund the work of Seattle Made in the Office of Economic Development's 2020 Budget. Native Works and hundreds of other small businesses benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lacey. Is there an Andrea Porter? That's number 10?
She's with us. We're all together.
You are all Andrea Porter.
We're all Andrea Porter.
Nice.
Hi, I'm Francine Mu Young, and I'm here with Seattle Made. I would like to encourage you to support funding for Seattle's small-scale manufacturers and producers in the Office of Economic Development's 2020 Budget. My studio and shop are both located in Capitol Hill, just off of Union. I make leather goods, everything from leather earrings to bags and clothing. I began this business over eight years ago. Over this time, I've employed 10 people ranging from students, mothers, and any person needing a job. If I could help them, I did. I moved to Seattle because of its support for small businesses. Having the Seattle Made organization here to help only emphasizes what I love about Seattle. I want to stay in Seattle and continue to grow my business in a community that matters to me. With the high cost of real estate and the new minimum wages, I find that I can turn to Seattle Made Group for resources and knowledge in sharing materials and information that would otherwise have costly learning curves. The support and easy access to other manufacturers has helped me overcome barriers and obstacles. Seattle has a culture that I'm afraid will be lost with the many tech jobs currently present. People need to be aware that there is a healthy amount of manufacturing happening here in Seattle. Everything from working artists like myself to manufacturers of beddings, bikes, a multitude of food items, and of course, coffee. We are proud to be Seattle Made, and we need help in a noisy marketplace in letting people know we exist. With more awareness, we can grow our businesses, furthering our impact in our communities, providing more jobs, and creating a healthy circular economy. Seattle Made has almost 600 members. Nearly 70% of Seattle Made businesses are women and minority-owned, me being one of those. And many of us employ other women and minorities. If the City of Seattle is serious about its commitment to providing real economic opportunities for women and minorities, then I ask you to please support Seattle Made. Again, my name is Francine Mu Young, and I ask you to fund the work of Seattle Made in the Office of Economic Development's 2020 Budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Art Stone. I also support, including, Seattle Made in the Office of Economic Development Budget. Seattle Made has been a great resource for me as I try to grow my business, which is Honest Biscuits I own in downtown Seattle. We employ 10 people as we grow and make more delicious food. And we have to expand. We want to do that in Seattle and not have to move out to the suburbs like a lot of people have. And it's the resources that Seattle Made provides that makes this sort of thing possible. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Indrajit Ramgatra. I am an acupuncturist and herbalist, and I work in Seattle also. I'm a board member for Seattle Made, and I'm here to reiterate our request for funding from the Office of Economic Development to support the great work that happens at Seattle Made in keeping and holding a diverse, local maker's economy here in our progressive city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, all of you, for coming. All right. Number 11. We're now on page two of 12. Erin Thomason, Kyoshi. And then 13 is Jessie Moore. Number 11, 12, and 13.
Hi, I'm Erin Thomason.
I'm Russell Cody.
I'm Madison Chamberlain.
I'm Anya Navarre.
We are from the center school and are here to advocate for Human Services. Thank you for taking the time to listen and for giving us the opportunity to testify. We'd like to start by acknowledging the work you have done for the city thus far and urge you to consider our proposal tonight.
On my way to school one morning, I saw a burned book on the ground. At first, I was confused as to why it was there until I realized that someone had no option but to burn their book to stay warm throughout the night. I moved to Seattle this April, and I see people in South Lake Union who have everything, and others in Pioneer Square with the clothes on their back. In the proposed budget, $357.21 million are going towards the Police Department, while homelessness is only allocated $80.2 million. $2,447,433 are going towards hiring incentives for police officers as well as recruitment and retention initiatives. There is no empirical link to more police equating to less crime. The consensus amongst police staffing consultants is that it's not how many officers you have, but how you utilize them.
According to the Marshall Project, Memphis, Tennessee hired 300 more police officers in an effort to reduce their crime rate. Many of the police hired through the recruitment initiatives did not meet standard and were largely ineffective in upholding public safety. The violent crime rate increased by 2.4%.
In New York City, a city very similar to our own with the largest homeless population in the US, the council took action to reduce the number of police hired, and the crime rate dropped dramatically. Hiring more police officers and giving them frivolous bonuses is not how we should be spending our money. We should be focusing on retraining our currently employed officers to better deal with situations and assist our neighbors in need.
Instead of hiring more officers, it would be largely more cost-effective and beneficial to retrain our currently employed officers so that they can do their jobs more effectively. We believe in restorative justice rather than mass incarceration.
There are more than 12,000 homeless people in Seattle. In 2015, over 48 people died on the street, and half of those deaths were drug and alcohol-related. Walking down any street in Seattle, you'll only see the gold leaves dyeing the city with their deaths.
A large majority of the homeless population are the elderly, many of whom have complex, chronic medical conditions. Access to healthcare is a major problem, and independent human service organizations are forced to pick up the slack and are easily overwhelmed. They are often unable to provide adequate medical care due to a lack of healthcare professionals.
You all have the power to change this and to fulfill your promise of a just Seattle for all. I was supposed to work tonight, as I do every Tuesday. Being kicked out, becoming one of those people on the street, is a very real possibility for me, and I can't afford to waste my time. Instead of treating the symptoms of the problem, and even then, only barely brushing the surface, we need to address the root. Getting people off the street will contribute to increased public safety. Over the past three days, the center school has gathered over 168 signatures in support of our proposal to reduce the money allocated to hiring incentives in the SPD and fund Health and Human Services further, specifically combating Seattle's homeless problem.
Every city council member has one common value: building a Seattle for everyone where we can all thrive and prosper. You have a moral obligation to aid the most vulnerable and marginalized members of our society. We strongly urge you to reallocate the $2,447,433 going towards hiring more police to homelessness relief initiatives. Thank you.
All right. Kyoshi, 12. Jessie Moore, 13. Seth Emerson... I think it's Emerson? 14. 12, 13, and 14, please.
Good evening, city council members, and thank you for taking the time to hear us. We are seniors at the center school. I am Levi Koenig.
I'm Kyoshi Sakawo. I'm Virgil Grooms.
I'm Camilia Maxson.
And this poem is titled "Public Safety is Killing Our People." Funding public safety is just another way to say gambling on lives. The crimes never go down like the bodies of innocents from the fingertip triggers of illegal executions elevating escalating situations relying on incomplete concentration, seeing only colored skin, not human emotions, yelling, "Put the knife down." Five.
Seconds pass before John T. Williams was dead.
Four. Shots to his body, bullets decorating gun clicks and permanent wounds. Three.
Metres away from another human, but the police only saw a bullseye waiting to be targeted.
Two. People in the streets of Seattle, 4:15 PM, and only one survived and walked free. No charges, just a bit of paperwork at the Police Department.
You can't threaten a gun with a scrap of wood. You can't stab a man with a closed pocket knife.
You can't take away a man's life without any blood. And now he's a totem pole and not a beating heart. Michael Taylor looked between two officers not being able to process information in real-time, diagnosed with delayed response syndrome. The police believed he was deciding which one to stab first. Shot brutally like an animal in the jungle. He didn't survive the confusion.
The police didn't have blood on their hands. He was dangerous in the eyes of authority.
Thirty-five minutes after he apologized to a man for almost robbing him, he was shot dead by the government's hand. He couldn't drop the knife because he didn't know he had to.
His father said he just needed love like everyone else. But all he received was a bullet from a gun trigger.
And now he lives on the second page of Google. Charlena Lyles was shot dead in her own apartment, and the officers left the Police Department on paid leave while life left. And both her body and the unborn child in her womb, her two-year-old son, crawled his way to his mother's corpse and laid in his own family's blood. And the policemen got to go home to their own families. They couldn't see the difference between lethal and defense when they looked at a woman of color. At least the men got to keep their own blood in their pail vains.
She had four children, and they will all grow up without their mother.
She had four children, and the two policemen shot her.
She had four children, and Seattle Police Department shot her.
She had four children, and Public Safety shot her. Fifty percent of the budget is killing our people.
These are only three cases of dozens of lost lives.
Public safety is killing our people. Most of the victims are people of color being killed by white officers. Seattle Police Department is killing our people.
Gone but not forgotten.
Charlena Lyles, Demarius Butts, John T. Williams, Shay Taylor, Yosia Falatogo, Sam Smith, Raymond Azaveto, Michael Taylor, Kyle Gray.
These are the names of who we lost. Say their names next time you give a bonus to another police officer. Thank you.
Moore, 13. Seth Emerson, 14. And Sid Wambach, 15.
That is quite a tough act to follow.
No kidding.
My name is Patty Foley, and I'm the chairperson of the Georgetown Open Space Committee. The Georgetown to South Park Trail is one of our community's top priorities, as defined in the Georgetown Open Space Vision Framework, the Duwamish Valley Action Plan, the Georgetown Mobility Study, the Neighborhood Plan of South Park, the Neighborhood Plan of Georgetown. It's abundantly clear that Georgetown and South Park are both very interested in connecting our communities via a safe walking and biking trail. Thankfully, we received funding for 30% design a few years back, and that work is now coming to completion. So here we are again, advocating again to get the next round of funding. If at all possible, it would be amazing, and really, most efficient, to just fund this trail through construction. I'm here today in hopes that this project will not stall. Please help us connect Georgetown and South Park in a way that promotes health and community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Rich Brown. I live in South Seattle in the Georgetown neighborhood. I am a bicycle commuter, and I've been commuting for over 12 years. During that time, I've noticed many areas throughout the city that have received bicycle infrastructure improvements. I have also noticed that in South Seattle, I haven't seen as much of that. The residents in South Seattle deserve more infrastructure. Lastly, I'd like to urge the council to work with SDOT towards making things more equitable for residents in South Seattle. We need more bike lanes. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for listening to everybody. Also, big shout out to the seniors from Center School. I think they're doing a great job. My name's Marty, and I am a cisgendered male, Latinx, person of color. My pronouns are he and him. I'm a parent in Georgetown. I have an eight-year-old daughter. And as this summer ended, I sat down with her, and I asked her, hey, like, what did you think of this summer? What could have been better? What could have been worse? And she said, Dad, I wish we spent more time together riding bikes like we used to do. And so I'm here today to ask you all to help me spend more time with my daughter, to build and fund the bike trail from Georgetown to South Park, which would connect her to a community that's rich in her life. that's rich in her Latin heritage. So please fund the Georgetown to South Park Trail. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rosaria Medina. I live in Georgetown, and I'm here with my neighbors requesting that you please fund our trail to South Park. I work in South Park, and I go there often to get fruit and vegetables from the frutariesta en San de Val and for many community engagement events that I also coordinate. So I really appreciate if you could support my community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we all worked as a community to do a lot of outreach. And the people we work with at SDOT said that we did a remarkable job. We got over 400 people to give informed input, and we come up with a community-supported plan, supported by both the merchants' associations and our neighborhood groups on both sides of the river. We're exhausting the funding that was originally given, and we'll be out of money at the end of the year. SDOT and the community are ready to go forward. They've estimated finishing the design and building this will be, I think, $3.7 million. I ask that you look at the money coming out of the MegaBlock sale that has been designated for bicycle master plan projects. This project is in that. Please fund as much as you can from that. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Were you number, were you group 13? Are you Jesse?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. You were the last speaker. I was just hoping we had a Jesse here. Seth, 14; 15, Sid; 16, Renee Murray.
Hello, my name is Clara Cantor, and I'm from Seattle Neighborhood Greenways. And we're here speaking on behalf of the Mass Coalition. We're a coalition of transportation and environmental-focused organizations that came together to push for a whole slate of requests in the budget this year, improvements for people who are walking and rolling and biking and taking transit in Seattle. Right now, this is a matter of climate urgency. The Seattle City Council and the mayor's office have both signed on and supported the Green New Deal, which asks for 100% renewables by 2030. And transportation right now makes up over half of our carbon emissions. So it's imperative that we invest now in safe places for people to walk and roll and bike and make it accessible for people to take transit. This is also a huge safety issue. We're in the middle of a pedestrian safety crisis, and last night, we had another tragic incident where a woman was killed up on Aurora Avenue, being hit by a car. That's happened way more times than it should, especially considering that we've committed to Vision Zero, which is zero traffic deaths and serious injuries by 2030. And it's also an equity issue because we all know that those impacts of traffic violence are affecting people of color, low-income people, unhoused people, disabled people at much higher rates than anyone else in the population. Thank you.
Thank you, Clara.
With those things that Clara had mentioned in mind, here are some of our asks. First of all, the Mass Coalition thinks that it would just be unconscionable to reach the end of the Move Seattle levy and not have a route to Southeast Seattle for bikes. So that is a top priority for us, and we think that Martin Luther King Jr. Way, Beacon Avenue South, and the South Park to Georgetown Trail are all critical connections for having a route that does make it to Southeast Seattle. Second of all, we think that there needs to be delineated money for bikeway maintenance, and we feel that poor maintenance of Seattle's bikeways is making them hard to use and unwelcoming. And putting money toward bikeway maintenance will enable more people to bike safely around the city. And then, lastly, on my part, I want to say that the Mass Coalition feels as though we should put aside money to fund the Transportation Equity Agenda, which was created by the Transportation Equity Work Group, which was formed in 2017.
Continuing on our asks, Anna Zivard, Strutted and Rights Disability Rights Washington. I want to highlight this resolution that you all so wonderfully passed in the beginning of September, talking about the need to build more dedicated off-sidewalk parking for bikes and potentially scooters in the future. We want to make sure that that gets the funding it needs to roll forward in the New York because sidewalks are a critical piece of our infrastructure, of our transportation infrastructure for many people with disabilities. And having sidewalks blocked by bikes and scooters really limits our access to the city and to where we need to go. The other pieces I want to mention are our support for the connection to the Duwamish Longhouse, which you heard from earlier groups on, and also from the South Park Georgetown connection, which you just heard as well.
Thank you all.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gordon Pedelford. I work for Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, and I'm going to highlight three additional projects that we think are really important. The first is actually more of a position than a project proposed by Councilmember Mike O'Brien, and is to fund an active transportation coordinator for the school district. And the reason that's important is that the majority of kids in Seattle are required to walk or bike to school, which is a beautiful thing because they arrive healthy, ready to learn. They've got their physical activity in for the day. But the problem is, there's no one at the school district helping those kids get to school. And there's no one at SDOT whose job it is to do things like help with Safe Routes to School trains, where you walk with a group of students. We've talked to principals recently, and they're concerned about gang violence on the way or gang recruitment on the way to school. And if we had some of these programs, we could help get kids to school more safely. The second one is from Councilmember Bagshaw, and it's around Thomas Street. Thomas Street and South Lake Union could be the gateway to the Seattle Center. Seattle doesn't have a Central Park, but the Seattle Center functions as our arts and culture heart for the city. And soon, with the arena opening, there will be events two-thirds of the nights in Seattle. And so we need to get people there in a safe and sustainable way. And thirdly, the Home Zone pilot is proposed to be continued by Councilmember Juarez. Very exciting. It's probably the most cost-effective program that the city runs. For the cost of one block of sidewalk, you can make an entire neighborhood safer to walk in. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much, all of you. Number 15, Sid; 16, Renee Murray; 17, Cindy Kruger. Please.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Sid Wambach, and I'm here on behalf of Big Brothers Big Sisters, Pudah Sound, and also the thousands of youth that need our help within the Seattle area. First, I'd like to thank the council for voting for the cost-of-living increase for human service contracts. I'm also asking each of you to support the Seattle Human Services Commission budget package. While the redirect of funding under a safe contract to support youth ages 18 to 24 are important, it still leaves a significant void for youth development that are under that age. It is vital for the council to support the youth development efforts, intervene much more earlier, just earlier in general, for people and families to avoid the criminal justice system altogether. I'm asking you to support the budgetary ask for the Youth Development Executives of King County and the Seattle Human Services Commission to ensure that all the youth and all the families can thrive within this city. That's what I got.
Thank you, Sid. Renee? Renee, and then I think we've got an entire roomful of the garden gnomes.
Hi, I'm Renee Murray with Youth Development Executives of King County. We represent over 100 youth development organizations in King, the majority of which provide services in Seattle. And I'm here as a member of SHSC also to encourage you to adopt their entire package. And we also want to thank you for the human services cost of living. But there's a couple other comments I'd like to make, and partly because we did ask for another $2 million to be invested in the Human Services Department Youth Development Fund. And it's partly, well, it's all because youth development is the missing piece. You've done a great job in investing in the early learning, and we have Seattle Promise over here. But the CBOs of our region are willing and waiting to provide those extra services to get those youths from one to the other. And the school services honestly can't do it on their own. As of yesterday, here are some examples of our need. We have 500 youth waiting for a mentor at Big Brothers Big Sisters. Coyote Central, that provides after-school arts program, has 800 kids waiting. East African Community Services has after-school programs. They have 130 on their waitlist. Team Reed, that hires teens to tutor other children, they had enough mentors to serve another group of kids who were needing services, but not enough funds. And so what we're asking for is an additional $2 million in the Human Services Department budget in order to help fill this gap. We have programs waiting. We have kids who need it. And we want to serve those children, but we need more funds in order to access and fill their needs. So thank you for your consideration. We appreciate the work you do. We hope you'll support us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Renee. All right. Cindy Kruger and your team.
Well, good evening, my fellow gardeners and garden gnomes. Thank you for this opportunity to bring our support for the mayor's proposed $3 million for the pea patch program and our campaign to save the Ballard pea patch to council chambers once again tonight. Along with this large group of gnomes, we bring more than 3,000 volunteer-collected petitions and 18 letters of endorsement, and we submit these to the city clerk for the record. These petitions entreat the city to make funding available to save the Ballard pea patch, to support the Ballard pea patch program, and they come from across the council districts. Every council district has multiple pea patches. If you haven't visited those in your district, please do so. Seattle was among the first cities in the U.S. to create a pea patch program, and it remains one of our best and most imitated ideas. In the first public hearing, we talked about statistics and Save Ballard Pea Patch campaign details. Tonight, we want to focus on community voices and concerns. So why would anyone be interested in saving the Ballard pea patch? That's easy. Pea patches are a buffer between poverty and food sufficiency, stretching the budget by growing nutritious organic food. Food banks are big beneficiaries of pea patches. Pea patchers share information with new and seasoned gardeners, and visitors can learn innovative growing methods there. I've used photos from Ballard pea patch in my lectures. A lack of connectedness affects city dwellers, and pea patches address this. They offer a vital connection with green and living things in a world of cement and plastic. E.O. Wilson argues that humans have an innate need to be associated with nature. And Oliver Sacks observed that just looking at plants aids healing and well-being. Pea patchers know these things, and we work together to transform barren land into rich, fertile, and productive community resource. We must support and preserve these special places, for once gone, they can never be replaced. This unsolicited letter was sent to us by Sharon Coleman, WSU professor emeritus. A Ballard pea patch parent has told us, we have two young daughters. When we moved to Ballard four years ago, we knew we wanted a pea patch plot because we were moving to an apartment with no yard. Our kids have been enthusiastic gardeners and vegetable eaters since they were small. Many pea patch gardeners garden for food security. In Ballard, at least 50% of our gardeners are senior citizens, many living on fixed incomes. A current Department of Neighborhood survey indicates that 33% of Ballard gardeners are eligible for low-income housing. Pea patch gardening is a great way for all ages to enhance their diet while keeping aging bodies healthy and flexible. Gardeners participate for fellowship. Many of us live alone, and many Seattle residents are transplants without extended family. It may sound corny to say that our garden friends become our families, but for many of us, it's the truth. The loss of a garden like the Ballard pea patch has a ripple effect far beyond the 85 families that garden there. It's a loss of 2,500 pounds of fresh and organic food to the Ballard Food Bank. It's a loss of pollinators. It's a loss to the neighborhood, a place to learn, walk, and be in nature. It's a loss of 2,000-plus volunteer hours that enliven and maintain the space. And it's a loss to volunteer opportunities. We've all heard tonight many of the big, challenging issues that Seattle is grappling with, many of which are without clear or guaranteed solutions. We offered the pea patch program as an example that works, that provides huge benefits to the citizens of Seattle, and that is largely self-sustaining. Only 100 years ago, Ballard was an immigrant community. Those immigrants were fleeing poverty and oppression in their native Nordic countries. When they arrived in Seattle, they brought their values of self-sufficiency and communal support. They also brought their traditional folklore, which included the garden gnome as protector of home and land. Tonight, we ask you to be garden gnomes for all the community gardens in Seattle. Protect them and help them grow. Our city will be a better place for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, all of you, for coming. Numbers 18, 19, and 20 are Flo Beaumont, Lachlan Johnson, and Bill Curlan Hackett. Those are 18, 19, and 20. All right, I see Flo. Bill Curlan Hackett. Lachlan Johnson is number 19. 18 is Flo Beaumont. She's right here. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. Thank you very much for this opportunity for us to tell you about one of our programs, Sacred Heart Shelter. Barbara?
Hi, my name is Barbara. Good evening to everyone. I came, I wanted to come here to thank you to continue to support Sacred Heart Shelter families. My name is Barbara, and my family and I were homeless. Sorry. It gets emotional.
No, you're doing great.
Hasn't been a long time. Catholic community charities helped us find permanent housing two years ago. Then CCS trained me to work in social services. Today, I am a family advocate at Sacred Heart, where I love providing services to families who have struggled like me, or like I did. Sacred Heart is a truly and low-barriers shelter with a long history of successful serving high-school-need families in the homelessness. We are a transitional house, I'm sorry, we are a transitional shelter home that meets families where they are welcomed 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We empower our families with tools, knowledge, compassion, skills to move from homelessness and integrity-stableness, I'm sorry, and permanent housing. Today, we are celebrating our fifth family moving out Sacred Heart into stable housing in just less than nine weeks. But all of our families need safe place where they can go when life falls apart. Please put a resource to keep the Sacred Heart family shelter and all the shelters open. You will see that which stables and opportunities families to get back on their feet. I also wanted to thank you guys for your opportunity to speak here tonight.
Thank you, Barbara.
Council members, my name is Flo Beaumont. Sacred Heart Shelter is one of the oldest shelter programs in Seattle, and it's been serving families since the late 1970s, before CCS took it on. Our mission hasn't changed. We bring families inside who have lost their housing, and we work with them to get back into housing again. But the environment has certainly changed, and I don't think I need to tell you about the problem of affordable housing and how hard it is for a family with a low income and a negative rental history to get back in. But we work together, side by side, and we do it. Five out of five families that exited in the last quarter from this program went into housing. 100%. I don't know if we can ever do that again, but we're really glad, and we want to keep trying. But Sacred Heart, like St. Martin de Porre Shelter, which I talked about a few weeks ago, is coming up to a financial cliff in 2020. Both of them are big deficit programs. Our agency can support them only so long, and City of Seattle funding has not kept up with increased costs. I'm giving you advance warning of a serious problem with a couple of our oldest shelters, which have been a partnership between local government and private fundraising. Whenever the Regional Homelessness Authority gets going, you are going to devote your human services dollars to that, but when you do, you're going to need to look at the scope of the need, and you're going to have to increase what Seattle is doing in order to try to meet that need and not cut existing programs, which are really just stanching the bleeding. I'm also here to ask you to please support the comparable wage study. We can't hire enough people to do the services. It's hard. CCS has gone out on a limb, and we have given almost all of our staff a 5% cost-of-living increase this month, and it's still not enough. We're also asking that you support Home for Good, the proposed shallow rent subsidy. This is for people who are on fixed incomes, on disability, who can really succeed in the housing market if they have some help. They can't do it anymore. You used to be able to rent a cheap room, but you can't do it on your own if you're on SSIRS/SDI. If you support rent, then we can move people out of shelters, out of homelessness. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Lachlan Johnson is 19, and Bill Curlin-Hackett is 20, and 21 is Megan Murphy.
I would like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the First People of Seattle, the Duamish people, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duamish tribe. We are here as members of the Democratic Socialists of America to support the Duamish Longhouse Safe Street and Accessibility Project. The road in front of the Duamish Longhouse, West Marginal Way, is five lanes wide. It carries 1,900 vehicles per weekday, 85% of which move faster than 45 miles per hour.
As socialists, we assert that mobility is a human right, and that right is not being distributed equally and fairly to all members of our community. As the Longhouse is situated in an industrial area that is much like the rest of Seattle, seeing rapid growth, the road is currently dangerously unsafe. People speed through it much higher than in residential areas, at 50, 60, 70 or higher miles per hour. We encourage the council to listen to and heed the words that Cecile Hanson spoke earlier, and we stand in solidarity with the Duamish tribe as they fight for these road safety features. That the federal government has failed to uphold its duties and responsibilities to the Duamish tribe does not absolve the City of Seattle from upholding these rights of its citizens, let alone the moral duty that it has to respect the dignity of the First Peoples of this land. With that, we would like to cede any remaining time to a representative of the District One Community Network, if they are available.
Hi there. Deb Barker with the District One Community Network, and we've already spoken our words and ask you to support the Duamish tribes' funding request. And thank you for everybody who supports that. Everybody, thanks.
Thanks, Deb. Bill Curlin-Hackett. Bill Curlin-Hackett, you're number 20. 21 is Megan Murphy. Patricia Hayden is 22.
Councilmember Bagshaw, and councilmembers. Bill Curlin-Hackett, I direct the interface task force on homelessness, and I am a co-lead on the scofflaw mitigation team with Jean Darcy, who sends her regards and approves all my comments. We request your approval of the scofflaw mitigation/intentional-vehicle-resident outreach proposal before you. We've done scofflaw mitigation since 2011 with no public funding. During that time, there has been little to no intentional vehicle outreach. Lived-in vehicles are 1/3 of the unsheltered count annually, and recently, they went over 50%. Expenditures on this population have never even reached 10% of all funding. Further, there is no coordinated entry outreach to date for vehicle residents, thus no diversion, no vulnerability assessment. The pathway to housing is invisible. Also of concern, there's little to no inclusion in HMIS, thus systemic unsheltered homeless reporting excludes vehicle residents. This funding will begin to change that. We will include necessary partners, many funded to address unsheltered homeless, but few to none including vehicle residents. We'll use volunteers who will help leverage outreach and extend use of funds toward those in need and not toward the system's staff and support structures. We hit the ground running because we will expand partnerships that we already have with LEED and REACH and others. We'll sustain scofflaw mitigation also with partners Seattle Parking Enforcement and the Municipal Court, and when the weekly scofflaw referrals lag, we will use our time to do that intentional outreach. I've not seen anything in the budget directly addressing these homeless persons. Yes, a lot of money to Seattle Public Utilities for trash collection around RVs, but not for the persons in the RVs, and also a lot for navigation teams that don't navigate onto the streets. The funds for our proposal, and for in part beginning a necessary expansion of LEED, would best come from the mayor's budget, where 1.2 million is aimed to dismantle two existing tiny house villages. Keep the villages!
Thanks, Bill.
Pass some legislative tools to do it. Use the 1.2 million to fund us and to help start that funding toward LEED.
Thank you, Bill. Megan Murphy is 21. Patricia Hayden is 22, and Mohawk Kuzma is 23.
Okay, this is from Sawant's budget proposals. I would like to see a right to a lawyer for all renters facing eviction. Provide funding to hire housing justice attorneys to ensure that tenants facing eviction have the right to an attorney. Property background checks for renters. Create a citywide know-your-landlord database to help tenants seeking housing by compiling building information on ownership, housing code violations, and eviction rates. Build more tiny house villages. Fund construction of 20 additional tiny house villages, a proven and humane way to reduce the harm of homelessness and help people find stable and affordable housing. Fund renter organizing and empowerment in the community. Fund community-based organizations to do renter outreach, education, and organizing, and help develop the independent voice of renters. Build more publicly-controlled affordable housing. Build 5,000 new homes with housing bond paid for by reinstituting a modest tax on Amazon and other super wealthy businesses. And save youth shelter beds. Central District Small Business Displacement Survey needs to be funded. Funding anti-displacement community work in the Central District needs to be funded. Support Vietnamese senior association activities. I say all this in honor of my son Ray. I lived in Iowa, and the state decided that I had a diagnosis I don't have, and so I've since found out that I really do not have. I found a lot of community here in Seattle, and last week, my son was able to give a special message to me, and it was because of Sawant who told me to organize. I collected like 100 signatures and got through somehow to my son, and organizing works and all these things are so worthy of funding. Thanks.
Thank you, Megan, and glad you connected with your son. Patricia Hayden, good to see you.
This one works.
And Mohawk Kuzma is 23, and Coach Lenny Wilkins, looking forward to you, number 24.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
My name is Patricia Hayden, and I'm the chief program officer of the YWCA and co-chair of the Seattle Human Services Coalition. SHSC members appreciate your work this summer to enact the automatic annual adjustment for inflation that will begin to stabilize human service contracts through HSD. It is time now to take the first step to correct the long-term legacy of underpaying human service workers for the skills, education, experience, and integral importance of this work to build well-being in communities across Seattle. You have expressed concern with the precocious state of inequity, as well as interest in remedying it. You have the opportunity within to, you have the opportunity in this budget to begin. We recommend that the City of Seattle, in collaboration with providers, conduct a pay-equity analysis of human service jobs as compared with jobs that require similar skills, education, and difficulty. We urge council members to allocate the resources for a robust comparable-worth analysis of benchmark jobs. This would require $502,000 in 2020. We also recommend a companion investment of $120,000 in 2020 for community-based organizations to coordinate participation of human service providers in the design and implementation of this analysis. In addition, we encourage council members to restore funding for SPAN advocacy and invest in the four additional actions outlined in our recommendation. Together, we can build a just and thriving community if we make it our priority, including a budgeted priority. The members of SHSC, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Patricia.
I have a copy of them.
Mohawk after number 24, Coach Lenny Wilkins, and then 25 is Alev.
Is Seattle ready to end homelessness in six years? I got your solution. I'm not going to give all these solutions like everybody else wants to get, all these ideas. Want to know anything about homelessness? I traveled to 23 states, one mission, was voluntary homeless in 23 states for one mission, end homelessness in Seattle, and I figured out how we can do this. You know, you give about, you give 50 million in affordable housing, because we currently need affordable housing in the city for people actually before to live in the city. Also, we need about 75 million in addiction and mental health services increase. Also, give domain on abandoned houses and houses that are no longer, and give the homeless a rentum for low wages. Give food delivery jobs. I do a food delivery job. I make $800 a week. Like, it's easy, it's easy, if you have no record, it's easy to get a job. You don't need to beg for money. Put change collection boxes. Put change collection boxes like they did, like they do in Salt Lake City. It reduced pen handling in Salt Lake City by 75%. I'm witness that. Also, give, make, as families, make sure it's two weeks. Two weeks if it's a family, in housing. A month. A month if it's in, if it's in, if it's individual. That's what they did in Sierra City, Utah. Also, educate the homeless opportunities. There's plenty of opportunities. There's app economy, there's plenty of opportunities out there. I don't understand why our cities have end homelessness. I already know how to. It's not that hard. Like, don't give money to show that there's involvement around homelessness, like the gospel mission. All you just sweep stuff in a rug, and they just keep giving involvement to addiction. They don't solve it. They don't solve it. They claim to do. They don't. So, basically, at the end of the day, if you want to end homelessness, what is the point of being here? I traveled through the city, I'm seeing what can happen, how we can end homelessness. If you just say I have no business wanting to end homelessness, that's fine, but don't expect me to stay around the city and watch the city be destroyed by your problems that you don't want to solve. I could solve them. Your choice, not mine.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Lenny Wilkins, and with Rise Above.
Hi, my name is Jackie McCormick. I am from the Nessprish Tribe, and I am co-founder of Rise Above. Rise Above is a Seattle-based nonprofit, and we focus on empowering youth, education, and creating resiliency in Native youth using sport as a modality. We believe that Rise Above is one of its kind, and we're excited about the opportunity to bring this program to Seattle. Indigenous youth are the most vulnerable group of children in our country. Over a quarter of our indigenous children live in poverty, and they are twice as likely to be diagnosed with type 2 diabetes. 22.1% of Seattle American Indian and Alaska Native populations self-report in Seattle lacking a high school diploma. In 2017, while 1.5% of the children living in Washington State were American Indian and Alaska Native youth, the foster care system disproportionately represented 6.3% of the population. Indigenous youth are 30% more likely than Caucasian youth to refer to juvenile core. So, what Rise Above does is rather than talking about a reactive approach, we're looking at a proactive approach to keeping our children on the right path. And if you would have told me five years ago that I would have this dream team of people behind me, including one of the most iconic figures in Seattle, supporting Rise Above, I wouldn't have believed you. So, without further ado, Coach Wilkins.
Hey, Lenny. Hi. I'm Lenny Wilkins, and I'm an advocate. I am an advocate of supporting young people. They're tomorrow's doctors, lawyers, citizens, and they're our future here in Seattle. So, I definitely support Rise Above. Rise Above empowers Native youth to live healthy lives by providing awareness, prevention, and character enrichment using sports as a modality. So, I support Jackie, Rise Above, because I'm all about the future of Seattle.
Thank you.
I'm Brad Myers, a co-founder of Rise Above, and again, we're blessed to have Coach Wilkins to be one of our partners. But there's two things I want to emphasize. One is, we're all about prevention and intervention. We want to get to that 11- and 12-year-old Native youth, specifically urban Native youth who doesn't have access to resources, maybe disconnected from the tribe, doesn't have access to programming. Youth sports are expensive today, so we break down that cost barrier.
Brad, you can raise that microphone up. There you go.
Jackie was a point guard. So, we get to them upfront, 11- and 12-year-old, to interact through prevention and intervention. We know the first use of drug or alcohol occurs when you're 11 or 12 years old, so we get to them early. On the back end, I'll give you, I'll give you a personal story. I worked with five Native girls out of the city of Seattle, came to our program in Spokane, and came back. Amazing young women. They were 17 years old. It was a decade ago. We've lost three of them, and the other two, I don't know where they're at. Rise Above can fulfill that need to reengage those children as they age out of a program or a system or a foster care environment. We can be that need and fulfill that gap here in the City of Seattle. I want to highlight this, too. Basketball is a driving sport in Native American communities. So, if we say, Jackie and I, we're going to have a prevention clinic for drugs and alcohol, we'll have four kids show up. But if we say, we're going to have Coach Wilkins come speak to you, it's a free clinic or a free activity, and we're going to engage them in basketball, we'll have 300 kids show up and be engaged. So, sport is just that modality we use to bring kids there, and specifically in Seattle, urban Native kids need a safe place to go, play, and participate. And I guarantee you, they will come, they will play, and they will participate. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Galanda. I'm an Indigenous rights lawyer with offices in North Seattle. I've partnered with Rise Above. We have a nonprofit that I run, which focuses on incarcerated Indigenous citizens and youth. We've worked with the state of Washington to make sure that our incarcerated relatives get what they need to make sure that they're successful in their reentry to society, and as it relates to youth, we're looking for opportunities to make sure that they find a better way than the one that has gotten them into juvenile rehabilitation. The statistics that Jackie shared with you should be astonishing, particularly the fact that 30% of our Indigenous youth are referred into the juvenile system rather than deferred away from the juvenile system, as are their Caucasian counterparts. We work with Rise Above to get them before they end up in the prison pipeline system and are otherwise lost. We would appreciate your support.
Thank you very much, all of you.
We have two letters we will submit with the clerk for the record.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Brad. We'll be in contact. Coach Wilkins, thanks for coming. Brian Robinson, thank you for being part of this. Appreciate it. Okay, 25 is Alev. That's Aurora Lichten Springs Urban Village, and then Deck Powers and Cassandra Gaspard. Good. 25, 26, and 27.
Hi, my name is Leah Anderson, and as you mentioned, I live in the Aurora Lichten Urban Village, and I am a member of that neighborhood group. If you're not aware, the Aurora Lichten Urbage Village came into place by the city in the '90s, and the area is north 84th to north 110th in North Seattle, bisected by Aurora Avenue. We were fortunate to work with the city through the Hala process to get the zoning changed from commercial to neighborhood commercial, which will allow for more dense development along Aurora Avenue, ideally retail at the base, housing above, to add to all the density we already have, parallel streets. But with that density, we need places for the community. We don't have anything that is part of what is, should be included in a residential urban village. We don't have services such as a major grocer, a pharmacy, a bank, a post office, and we don't have community-city investments. We have one park that doesn't even cover the whole area in the five-minute walk shed requirement per the city. What we're here asking for today is for you to fund the feasibility study for a community center sponsored by Councilmember Juarez. Thank you. Our community needs a place to gather. We need a place for We need a place for kids and families and seniors and teenagers to go after school on the weekends, a place for programs and support services to get to our community members. It's a nominal ask, but it is going to have a big impact on our community, and the first step to getting a community center is the feasibility study. So please approve that in the budget this year.
Very good. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kevin Watley, and like Leah Anderson, I am part of the A-Love community. And just to echo a little bit of what Leah had to say, that we're one of the urban villages that is underserved, underfunded, and I believe the urban village system that Seattle has, it has high density and growth, but when you drive up through Aurora, people just want to drive through it. They're not aware that there's actually an inclusive community that we're trying to build here together. And that was really important for me when we started A-Love. In fact, our motto was building community together. And when I sit back and I look at you all, I am very happy and proud that you're a city council, because at the end of the day, it takes a community council like you, because the idea of the community council is actually to build and support community, the same thing that we're trying to do here today. And I just want to echo all the people that are here today. Actually, I want to support all of you, because it is amazing that we have this safe space for all of these diverse voices to come and gather and share opinions, and that's something that we're trying to do in our community, that we have a lack of amenities, even a sidewalks, but people, all people of color deserve to feel safe. They deserve to feel safe for our vulnerable populations, for our young children, and having a basic community center where we're Office of Planning and Community Development, we're actually one of the highest needs areas, and we're actually one of the most underfunded community villages in the entire part of all of Seattle. When you look at Capitol Hill, Lake City Way, West Seattle, Ballard, all of these places have thriving business districts, which we're trying to build step by step. But one of the things that's important in doing that is actually recognizing that community first and giving us a safe space to be able to gather, and a safe spaces for all of these populations to come to first. So this, this budget that's before you, I grant it, it is going to be very difficult for you guys to go through and actually have to make very tough decisions, but this is a very small asset that will affect an entire urban village, and it's a very small amount, I think just over $100,000, just $150,000 maybe. That's all it's going to take to help build and invest in our community. So I really want to thank your time. I want to thank your leadership and the safe space, just for all of these diverse opinions to be able to come up here, advocate for those causes, because I love Seattle. I love our progressive values. I love that we can come here, actually organize, be able to talk and share these things with you. So I'll be brief, and I'll get the rest of the minute to other people here. So thank you.
Kevin, thank you. Thank you both so much for coming. Is it Dee Powers? Dee Powers, Cassandra Gaspard, and then number 28? So we got 26, 27, and 28.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Dee Powers, and I am here with some of my friends from Stop the Sweeps Seattle. We are here to talk about how homeless encampment evictions cause significant harm and are a major drain on funding and resources. I am here as someone with lived experience and firsthand knowledge to offer the city fiscally responsible and humane alternatives to encampment sweeps. I've stood and witnessed as my unhoused neighbors are evicted from what little stability they have found within the communities they have created. I have seen tears and sheer panic in the eyes of grown men as they scramble to save medicine and documents before the backhoe comes and throws it all in a dump truck. I have seen the city destroy newly donated tents. They provide people with inadequate but essential protection against the elements. The medical examiner's office investigated 122 homeless deaths in Seattle last year. With winter coming on, I'm getting worried about the thousands who are about to face a deadly season without shelter. Encampment evictions scatter people. It makes it difficult for smaller organizations to resume services, as it can often take weeks to reestablish contact with households lost during the shuffle. Additionally, replacing newly donated survival gear like sleeping bags is an enormous drain on nonprofits, resources, and budgets. We discourage help from ever arriving if the helpers know it'll be trashed by the city. So here are five ideas I would like to share as alternatives to the cruelty of encampment sweeps. Provide basic sanitation services for established encampments that are not on the hazard sweep list. This could be something as minimal as meeting UN refugee camp protocols. That's one portable toilet per 20 to 30 people and a weekly trash pickup. I mean, preemptive sanitation options are always going to be less expensive than mopping up after what could be months and months of neglect, and that allows people to maintain their dignity. We need to reduce the budget allotted to the navigation team's sweep activity. Hazard and safety sweeps are necessary in cases where folks are legitimately in danger, but these are a small percentage of the sweeps currently happening. It would be more cost-effective to add more social workers, subtract law enforcement, and reduce the nav team's eviction power only to hazard and safety sweeps where lives are in imminent danger. We need to reestablish, thank you. We also need to reestablish an affordable, safe, overnight parking program with some of that money that we're redirecting from the navigation team and their cleanup crews. Vehicle residency is on the rise, and I'm sure we can all agree that that complicates the lives of business owners and residents alike. We need to build and support more tiny house villages, not be shutting them down. Our homeless neighbors overwhelmingly prefer tiny houses. They ask for it as first choice almost every time. They're easy to secure, easy to maintain. They create dignity and privacy within their communities. It's what people want, and if it's going to house people better than shuffling them back and forth across the city, who are we to say no? But last but not least, I ask that you, as the city, consider a policy change towards a Housing First program. It has been proven to work in every area that has implemented it except Washington DC. Every area. Seattle pioneered this style of service at 1811 East Lake 15 years ago, and it's time to expand on it. Repeat studies have shown that when an individual's environment is stabilized, their dependence on substances decreases and their, their preference toward getting help, getting psychiatric care increases. So the time is long overdue to admit that our policies around encampment sweeps are cruel, ineffective, and fiscally irresponsible. They run contrary to the values of our community, and we've got to decrease that suffering and get people housed.
27 is Cassandra. 28 is 28, and 29 is Reach Case Management. So I cannot read, maybe, maybe Barbara is 28? Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Cassandra Gaspard, and I am a resident of one of the homeless tiny villages. And I want to say that when I became evicted from my house in April, I was living in my brand-new car, which then got repo'd, and I can't tell you how grateful I am to have a tiny village house where I can close the door and not worry about my belongings being stolen, not worry about somebody trying to stab me on the street to get my shoes, and let alone suffering with the elements in the cold and wet. I, I, I can't speak for all the homeless people, but I can speak for myself that having a safe and secure and sober environment has given me the stability to become successful in the next steps to transitioning to permanent housing. And so I ask for expansion of the tiny house villages.
Thank you, Cassandra.
Good evening, council. My name is Eric Davis. I am a LEHI site coordinator, but I'm also a co-founder of Camp Second Chance. I strongly support the expansion of tiny house villages. Just as my resident said, one of the strong things that we need is safety, support, and heat. As this season goes around in the winter, this is the worst times that I remember experiencing in tents, and we just didn't, didn't have any way to stay warm. Now, the last couple of years, I want all the other homeless out there to experience the good things that we're feeling in these tiny house villages. We need that. We need that. It's supportive, it's strong, it's safety. People get up and go to work, they wake up with a smile, and that dignity, you can't replace that. We just want everyone to experience that, man. It's just a little bit of that. So I just strongly support that each of you take a walk through the villages in the winter and see what we're saying. Opposed to being cold, you'll see us open a warm door and greet you. Someone coming from work, someone not angry to see you, because all that stress is gone. So I just, I just want some dignity for all the rest of my homeless brothers and sisters. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kev Darrell, and I'm just the echoing voice of the many voices you've heard speaking about homelessness in the tiny homes. It's a privilege to be able to speak on the matter and speak for, for all of us in that manner. At the end of the day, it's about uplifting fallen humanity, and we know those that are on the streets that need that helping hand or, you know, need that place where they can be warm, safe, and sure of their next destination based on having a roof over their head, being able to prepare for a job or come back from once having a home. So I'm, like I said, I'm just the echoing voice, and I, and I hope that you hear the echo, because it's loud and clear.
My name's Steven LeBert. I'm a vet. How many of you have ever been in a homeless camp with a tiny village, visited? Three out of four, five? How many y'all? I'd invite you to come see Camp Second Chance up in Burien. I think you'll find it kind of enlightening when you walk into camp and people greet you, and give you a cup of coffee, or come ask you to build a couple houses in the camp. I think you'd like that. A lot of us weren't that way a year and a half ago. I wasn't. I was on a First Avenue Bridge. I was doing scrap, doing copper, everything I could to survive. Now I have a full-time job. I have a truck. I'm on the board of directors at a camp. I have my dignity back. And you know what? It makes a difference in your life. When you got a community you can walk into and you can close your door or walk out at 5:00 in the morning and see 20 other people going to work, this isn't your normal homeless village, and this is what a good village works, and a community makes community to make it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kyle Malone. I live at Camp Second Chance. This is the only format that I have seen or know of that works to fix your homeless problem. I have security there. I have food and clothing there. It is safe, and thank you for your time.
Thank you all for coming. Barbara, and then we have Reach Case Management, and somebody Johnson, number 30. So 28, 29, and 30.
Good evening, council members. My name is Debbie Carlson, and I'm the executive director of LGBTQ Allyship. We represent nearly 4,000 community members in King County and beyond. Allyship has been working on housing issues for over four and a half years. In fact, from a report addressing LGBTQ inequities in housing and senior services, four out of five seniors experienced discrimination but did not report it, thus not receiving any legal recourse. And it was discovered that 20% of LGBTQ seniors experience homelessness. Out of Allyship's own housing report in 2017, we discovered that almost 30% of LGBTQ marginalized residents have been economically evicted, and over 60% have experienced a rise in rent over the last two years. Allyship has been conducting renters' rights training since the last, since over a year, and we have been doing, we have our own LGBTQ renters' rights curriculum. Through our work with renters, seniors, and homeless youth, we know that renter education, organizing, and affirmative marketing to LGBT communities about housing resources prevents unlawful evictions and prevents displacement for queer and trans elders, youth, and low-income renters. We are a small LGBTQ-led housing and economic justice organization that knows what our community needs around housing justice. Please fully fund our tenant education, organizing, and outreach work so we can truly address LGBTQ homelessness, displacement, and housing discrimination. Now I would like to introduce you to Barbara Seer, a member of our LGBTQ Senior Housing Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was 30 years ago, I came out as trans, and I faced a lot of anger, a lot of discrimination, and I, there were even people who were trying to kill me, including members of my own family, and from time to time, myself. I survived all that, and now I'm at a different point in my life. I no longer face discrimination because I'm trans. I now face discrimination because I'm old. I'm 71, and I have, I've been out in the community which I now live, but being in that community is not just as simple as paying my rent on time. It's about living with each other, literally in a small public housing unit. And I faced, when I got there, every bit of discrimination that I experienced when I was younger. And I faced neighbors, people that didn't want to know me. I had to give back. I had to make a formula to be able to live there and not go live on the street. What I did was call on my skills. I know everything there is to know about computers. I had the skills, I had computers of my own, and I started teaching classes. I taught people, I taught grandparents how to write emails to their grandkids. I taught, how do you use, how do you use catalogs? How can you buy something on the internet? How do you, how do you keep from getting scammed? Suddenly, I was one of the hottest people on the entire, in the entire building. It worked so well that S.H.A. decided to expand my classes to three other buildings.
Wow.
And that's the kind of work that Allyship contributes to the world, that peace through understanding. And that's why I am so proud to stand here with Debbie and with...
Tobias.
Tobias, I'm sorry. But I am really proud to be here, and I really appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Great. I'm proud of you too. Thank you.
My name is Tobias Carroll. I am the Economic Program Coordinator at LGBTQ Allyship, funded through the OLS, and I stand by everything said here.
Great. Thank you so much. I like that. 29 is Reach Case Management, then we've got, it looks like, maybe it's Carroll, but it's Johnson, number 30, and 31 is Julie.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Marcus Jones. I am a lead case manager for the North Team, working specifically on Aurora. I stand today before you as a veteran and as a profound member of the North Team, and I am tasked with working with the men that live in our homeless own Aurora. And these are men that are battered daily by vigilantes that are there to tear up their tents or throw bricks or shoot BB guns through their RVs when they're just looking for a cold, a warm place to sleep at night. I'm tasked with, you know, breaking down vulnerability issues for these men throughout their lives and just kind of empowering them to be strong men in their community and be leaders of their community. and be leaders of their community. And one of the things I like to tell to some of my men these days is to have the ability to fail forward. A lot of these men, you know, they fail every day of their lives, whether that be with their addiction, or having to steal food just to get by for the day. But one of the men that kind of took to that is one of my favorite clients who chose to fail forward, and now he is not serving a six-year sentence. He's free out in his own, stays down at the Xanadu, and he's doing very well for himself. And he's looking to get his license now, and he's looking to get a house. He's employed and has been employed, and he's been free from heroin for close to a year now. So we're doing great work here at Lead, and I am the only male for the team. I work next to a gaggle of women. But I just ask that you guys give us the grant so that we can continue to help these men and these women on Aurora fail forward instead of just fail backwards every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
Hi, thank you. My name's Stephanie Harris. I'm also a case manager for the North Seattle Precinct, too, so I work up on Aurora. My client load is mainly women who have been involved in the sex trade and are highly addicted, but I also want you guys to hear me as a survivor from the sex trade as well. I used to work on Aurora for 10 years, and so to be out there and to serve in a place where my personal trauma has been, has been rewarding and so privileged and honored to do that. And I often look at my clients and the ability and like our caseloads and the things that we're able to do with them, and I wish that like, all those years ago, there would have been a case manager, you know, for me, or my sister, or any of the other women and men that I know out there. And we need, at the end of the day, like, money is the motive, and we need more money to help people who are just like me. Like, if we want to serve this population, then we need people with life experience to be able to come in and share that life experience to help them. Proper ground to get there. I was blessed enough, you know, I'm a white woman in America. I had a lot of privilege in my recovery, but when I look at my women, the women of color who faced the same story as me, their trail was a lot different than mine. And so for me, yes, I get to do this work every day, but I see so many other people who could be doing this work but don't have the ability to get there for whatever lack of resources. And so I really just want to push forward. You know, a prime example of our caseloads and just how taxing this work is on us is today I was tied up with a client, and Marcus found another one of my clients on Aurora in a bra and leggings soaking wet, no food, nothing. But I wasn't able to get to her because I was dealing with someone else. Luckily, Marcus had free time, but it's rare for us to have free time. So at the end of the day, if we are the only ones on our team helping this huge population, there isn't people out here serving women who are working in prostitution, men who are working in prostitution, who are highly addicted. Yes, there are organizations around that are doing anti-trafficking work, but they're not serving people who can't, who are nodding off in their place. They're getting kicked out for that, you know? So at the end of the day, Lead and Reach are the ones who are doing this work, doing it well, and so why try to fix something that is working? You know what I mean? We're doing it, we're doing the work. So please continue to help us and support us. We're pretty badass. Thank you.
Well done. Are you number, are you number 30? Excuse me, before you start, are you 30?
Yes.
Very good. Hold it for just a second with you, and then Julie is 31, and Idabel is 32.
Ready?
Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Cara Johnson, and I'm an advocate with the local campaign, Yes to Drug User Health. I'm here to ask for the council's support for the methamphetamine research pilot, and to thank Councilmember O'Brien for sponsoring this budget ad. Thank you also to Chair Bagshaw and Councilmember Gonzalez for your support. This proposal is coming from the University of Washington's own Dr. Judith Suie, who is a national and local substance use disorder treatment expert. It also has support from a wide range of diverse organizations, including Evergreen Treatment Service, the Seattle Fire Department, and Seattle Counseling Services. This legislative body has shown immense leadership in providing funding intervention dollars for opioid use disorder, but we also have a real crisis of methamphetamine issues, and your attention is again needed. This modest budget ad can make Seattle a national leader in evidence-based innovative treatment options for people impacted by substance use disorder. I'm also here because I hold a master's in public health and volunteer every week at the Needle Exchange with the People's Harm Reduction Alliance. The number-one thing drug users request is drug treatment and accessible ways to reduce their use and related harms. These folks are just trying to take good care of themselves and their bodies, and would love to have evidence-based options for meth treatment. Thank you for including this budget ad and supporting this much-needed research. And I'll pass it to my colleague.
My name is Richard Waters. I'm a primary care physician in the community. I work with an amazing team of interdisciplinary professionals, including the wonderful folks at Lead, and fully support their expansion. One of the most rewarding things in our work is to work with clients who have opioid use disorder, to embrace them and welcome them with the dignity and respect they deserve, to see them linked with housing, opportunity, and hope for the future, and evidence-based treatments for opioid use disorder in the form of medications. The transformation can be huge. It is quite amazing to see the number of clients and the progress they've made. We don't yet have the same treatments for methamphetamine use disorder. There has been research, but not sufficient. The idea of a city council funding a research pilot to broaden the knowledge scope, to see what are our tools to help clients with methamphetamine use disorder, may seem off, and yet this is of great importance to the citizens of Seattle, to those with methamphetamine use disorder, to the broader public. There's certainly been an outcry, hoping for solutions. Certainly, some of the good proposals we've heard today, amazing housing can certainly help opportunities, economic justice. Our ask is to fund the pilot for a methamphetamine study in the hopes of getting more information on whether this, a certain medication, could be used to help clients reduce or stop their methamphetamine use. Many of my patients desire that, but they're caught up in the cycle of cravings, use, and then withdrawal, struggling to break out of that cycle. The social services and housing are an essential step. This admittedly is one small piece, but could give us in the medical and social service community more tools to treat the crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thanks. Good, thank you all. So Julie, Idabel, and Elliot Swanson is 33. So it's 31, 32, and 33 are next.
Hello. Hi. My name is Julie Stolman. I'm here to support the Mobile Pit Stop Program. And a number of years ago, I came out from my house and saw human feces down the side of my neighbor's house. And I cleaned it with a feeling of compassion and disgust. And I guessed at how desperate that person must have felt. They were in desperate need of a toilet. Enter the Mobile Pit Stop Program. These include not only toilets, but needle disposal and dog poop disposal. They are mobile, and they can be moved anywhere around the city in neighborhoods that need it, as needed. They cost less than Portland's program, so we're not asking for some extravagant program. And this is not just a matter of convenience, it's a public health issue that needs to be addressed. I know that there have been some problems with toilets in the past in the city, that they've been used for drug dealing or drug use, but this, these toilets have staff. There are attendants who would be monitoring use, and I think that makes a huge difference. Let's see. I have a friend who is a bus driver, and a number of years ago, he was thinking about a birthday present for a friend. And what he did was, he took a key, and he made a duplicate, and he gave it to his friend for a birthday present. And this key was a very precious birthday present, because it was the bus driver's secret key to all the toilets in the city, for bus drivers. He's retired, you'll never find him. But I think not all of us have, not all of us have a bus driver friend, so I urge you to fund five mobile pit stops.
Nice, thank you. Idabel, 32, Elliot, 33, and Katrina Johnson, 34.
Hi, my name is Idabel Fosse, and I'm speaking on behalf of the YWCA of Seattle, King, and Snohomish Counties. Today, I'm here to advocate for your continued support of the community-based health and human services funding that our participants need in order to move closer to thriving in their communities. First of all, we would like to thank you for enacting an automatic annual adjustment for inflation on all of the human services contracts through HSD. There is great work being done to build well-being in the communities across Seattle, and we urge you to support that by making no cuts to services. One of our priorities for funding was not addressed by the mayor, and therefore, we're asking you to please fund a long-term legacy of underpaying human service workers. Human service providers are skilled professionals with specialized knowledge and years of experience. Typically, once workers have acquired those skills, pay inequities in nonprofit work force them to leave and look for better-paying jobs with the city or county. This leads to high turnover of good workers and risks the participants that are not getting the highest quality help that they could. We're asking that you allocate the resources needed to take on a robust comparable worth analysis, which would cost between $500,000 and $600,000 in 2020, as a first step in helping end this inequity. Secondly, we're asking that you take action on the mayor's proposal to fund and implement a much-needed county-wide domestic violence hotline, which will provide immediate crisis support and counseling, and serve as a single point of contact to the region's specialized advocacy services. Survivors in the most need of help often have the fewest options for accessing it, and calling a hotline is often the only most way that they can access services. Again, thank you for your work and your commitment to helping those most in need get the services and care that they require to lead healthier lives.
Thank you, Idabel. So the next group is 33. You do not look like Elliot Swanson.
I do not look like Elliot Swanson.
Wait a minute, is it true it's your birthday?
It sure is.
Okay. Yes, it is.
Happy birthday, Allison.
Happy birthday, Allison.
All right, so please go ahead.
Thank you very much.
And, you know, it has to be a round of, you say it's your birthday by The Beatles, we'll let you sing, otherwise, no. Go ahead.
Well, since I have a cold, I'll just, I'll pause with the singing. But thank you, Elliot Swanson had to leave, but he was here to speak about the Home for Good Program, and I believe each of you received a letter earlier today from Susan Boyd, the Executive Director and CEO of Bellwether Housing. My name is Alison Isinger, and I am the Director of the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness. I thank you all, council members, for being here tonight and for listening to this wonderful array of heartfelt and smart recommendations for a budget that we all know needs to expand. The Home for Good Pilot Program is a program that we are recommending that you fund as a pilot. Now, I have to be honest, I don't go for pilot programs, because I think, generally speaking, they're a way of not doing the thing that needs to be done at the scale that is needed. But you've just heard from people that you have the opportunity to fund a pilot program for methadone treatment, and similarly, this is a pilot shallow rent subsidy program that I want to, again, be honest with you about and say is not what we would typically recommend. People don't need shallow rent subsidies, for the most part, they need deep rent subsidies. But the fact is that we are in a situation where we need to deploy all of the tools available to us. Somebody who is receiving $771 of SSI per month is not at 30% AMI, is at 12% of AMI. So in order for that person to be able to find and keep housing that they can afford, they need a subsidy, and we are willing to recommend this program, even though it would mean that people receiving it would still be rent-burdened. We think it's a really smart investment and a way to put city dollars to use while we work with you to make a smart state recommendation. I'm going to hand my time over to Hillary and Jason.
And good evening, council members. I'm Hillary Coleman with the Coalition, and I wanted to echo the asks that Patricia and Idabel shared for the Seattle Human Services Coalition. We are a member of that coalition and support the full Human Services Coalition package, and we particularly want to make sure that we are funding the comparable worth analysis. We are glad for the unanimous passage of the inflation adjustment earlier this year, but as we all discussed during that time, that is just the start of what we really need to do to look at the wage gap. Human services providers bring years of experience, both lived experience and the experience gained in other ways, and provide well-being for our citizens, so we need to make sure that we are funding that wage study. And then?
Good evening, council members. My name is Jason Austin with the Coalition on Homelessness. Prior to my current position, I used to be a case manager with the Housing and Essential Needs Program. This means that I have helped countless Seattle residents make the transition from temporary state assistance to permanent federal disability income, or SSI. The day that a person's SSI is approved is supposed to be one of relief that gives someone hope for the future, but because SSI so, lags so far behind the cost of housing in this city, it is a day that's oftentimes marked by fear and uncertainty. I remember a man that I used to work with, a gentleman named Rodney, a joyful man with a giant smile. He got the first permanent housing of his adult life through the Housing and Essential Needs Program. He called me the day that he found out that his SSI benefits were approved and left me a panicked voice message, asking if there was something he could do to appeal that decision. He was going, willing to go as far as considering hiring a lawyer to reverse the benefits that he had spent years fighting hard to acquire. Rodney was scared because he was facing an impossible choice. Should he stay in housing that he could no longer afford and risk the cascading consequences of being evicted, or should he walk away from the only stable housing he's ever had? Rodney was set up to fail. We may not be able to address every single factor that contributes towards homelessness, but we do have an obligation to create a system that itself does not perpetuate the problem further. Please allocate no less than $750,000 towards the Home for Good Program, so that we are not needlessly making this crisis worse than it already is. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your all coming. Next one is Catherine Johnson, 34, Tiara with the Washington Recovery Alliance, 35, and it looks like Danny Garcia with Reach, 36. So could I please ask the next two to come up as well, so we're ready to go? Catherine?
My name's Tracy Gillespie, but I was signed in on behalf of Katrina Johnson.
Okay, and you've got your 34 card?
I do.
Okay.
So thank you so much. My name's Tracy Gillespie. I'm one of the project managers for the Lead Program up in the North Precinct, so I oversee the Aurora Corridor. And I'm here to talk about two populations that are largely underserved. First of all, I know you all heard testimony last night in regards to the sex worker population, and I want to echo some of the sentiments that were shared, specifically that people in the sex trade do fall along a continuum, and the harms associated with folks in the sex trade are even more profound for people who are engaging in street-based sex work. So any type of intervention and diversion intercept have to reflect that, the continuum of populations within the sex trade and street-based sex work, and also be really competent in the harms associated with those populations. So interventions and services that I am here to promote and really ask for financial support is the POC Swaps Green Light Project, which provides harm reduction outreach-based services, Aurora Commons drop-in services. Of course, you have heard from our amazing Lead Case Managers, who are doing arrest diversions and intensive harm reduction case management. And I also am here to promote the Organization for Prostitution Survivors, who do prosecutorial diversion and survivor services for people in the life as well. All of these agencies largely employ people with lived experience and are providing unparalleled services for people involved in street-based sex work. Secondly, I would like to plug, on behalf of vehicle residents, the Skoff Law Mitigation Team. They are one of the only programs that I know about that is doing assertive outreach with people who live in their vehicles, and is supporting them with their very specific sets of needs. So thank you to all the council members who are championing these initiatives and these programs that are serving these largely underserved populations. For those of you who are unfamiliar with these programs... For those of you who are unfamiliar with these programs or proposals, I really urge you to look into them and to vote in support of their funding requests this budget season. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. 35, Tiara, we have a group, and Dani Garcia has a group, and Katie Wilson has a group. So you're the next three up. 35, 36, 37.
Hi, I'm Amanda Richard. I'm a displacement consultant here in Seattle. And I'm here on behalf of Washington Recovery Alliance and Seattle Harm Reduction Coalition. I'm asking you to not only keep funding LEED programs, but we need expansion as well. Working within harm reduction, last Sunday, we saw 70 people in two hours for harm reduction. That's not counting lunches, that's not counting other supplies. It would be in the conversation for us to say, it would be great to reach out, to reach or lead and get people into treatment when we have people approach us and say, "I want out now." And we're, hopefully you stay alive until tomorrow. These services, these wraparound, these collaborative service and comprehensive services are essential to keeping people from not only reoffending, but becoming parts of the community. It stops that institutionalization into different forms of, whether that be jails, whether that be, being homeless is a form of that. Being vulnerable is a form of that. And so, in order to lift these people up, we need these comprehensive services. We need these wraparound services. We need to not only fund them, but we need to expand them because they work. And we know right now that a lot of talk goes into solutions. Well, we have one. It needs to be refined. There are some flaws, I'm sure, that we can work out, but it works. And it works not only here, but it works globally. So that's what I'm asking you, is to fund what works. And I can tell you that I am living proof of it working. I had to live a year and a half under a bridge while I underwent brain injury treatment. I have been housed now. I have my own company as a displacement consultant, and I connect nonprofits to each other, and I connect people to resources. But I can tell you that I, none of that, none of what I have been able to give back to my community, none of the people I have been able to help heal would be possible without wraparound services that first helped to heal me. You can't have a healthy community without healthy individuals. We have to give people a chance to not only survive, because survival is hard. When you are just surviving, it is very hard to make these meetings, to speak up, to talk to the people that you need to. It's much easier when you're allowed to thrive. So that's what I have to say. I know I have more time, but I'm going to let it go.
Thank you all. So Dani Garcia, followed by Katie Wilson, followed by Pamela Bradburn. Hi.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you about the importance of the work that my colleagues and I do on a daily basis. My name is Daniel Garcia, and I am a law enforcement assisted diversion case manager with the Reach program. In the last five years as a LEED case manager, I have had the opportunity and good fortune to work with some of the most vulnerable people in our, in our community. These incredible people are struggling with homelessness, are having to deal with untreated mental health issues, are living with chronic health conditions, and are struggling with substance use disorders. And in some, in most cases, are struggling with all four. And for many decades. The work that my colleagues and I do allows us to walk with these resilient and resourceful people who have lived through painful life experiences and poverty. Their substance use can be intensified by these struggles, but as providers, I can tell you that what these people are doing is what they know to do to deal with that pain and to survive. As a LEED case manager, I get the opportunity to advocate for people within the legal system and explain to judges, prosecutors, and police officers why criminalizing drug use is not useful and the traditional jail sentences are not effective. What we are witnessing is that the war on drugs is ineffective, and the casualties of it are people living in poverty. Many of those people are people of color. Individuals who already have to face oppression, discrimination, and historical traumas. As providers, we have a unique opportunity to help address this by meeting people where they are, supporting them, and providing vitally needed services. Services that are difficult to access because of things like racial bias. What we have is the ability to speak up and to fight for the people we serve. Please understand that the services we provide require an enormous amount of time and trust. We, when we meet our clients, they don't trust us because of the experience that they have had within the system. The work requires that we be trauma-informed and client-centered and requires that we have the time to develop relationship and trust. Recently, for example, I lost a client. She was, she was a remarkable human being and a fighter in every sense of the word. She was living with some significant health issues and had been struggling with substance use for over 20 years. And many of those years while living on the streets. It took me about a year to get her to believe that I was there to help her. And in one of our final conversations, she would say to me, "I know you have my back," and tell me that she trusted me. This work requires us to be, to do intensive outreach. That means that we need to go out under bridges, in parks, on the streets, in jails, hospitals, and be present for them and where they need help. I must tell you that this work on some days, is difficult some days because I see and I'm aware of the pain it has on our clients. That can be exhausting and challenging because of the size of our caseloads. Earlier, I stated that I had a personal connection to this work, why I believe the services we provide are crucial. About 10 years ago, I was a man of color, struggling with untreated mental health, living with an untreated health condition. I had been homeless off and on for 12 years and struggling with a substance use issue to help me cope with my own demons. Fortunately, I had case managers who provided me with the services and helped me so that I could be here today to speak with you. I can, it can be exhausting and challenging to listen and hold space for an individual's experience and trauma. At one time, I had more than 40 clients on my caseload, and 25 to 30 of them required my help and attention. At that time, we were only in two precincts, and now that we are in five, the work has become even harder. Because there are not enough of us, the people who are being referred are falling through the cracks. They are unable to get the services they need and find their way out of their circumstances. As providers, we are asking that you please see how harm reduction approach is effective. It allows us the ability to treat people with dignity, compassion, and respect. We show up without judgment. We see them when others don't want to and make them feel invisible. Please help us by not cutting the funding we need to keep doing this work, work that could impact issues such as increasing deaths that we are seeing as a result of overdoses. I am asking you, we are asking you, to please help us continue this work. With your help, we can do the best to impact the issues that we are facing as a community.
Dani, thank you. I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
Okay. Well, with your help, we can impact the community.
Very good. Thank you so much for coming, the three of you. Katie Wilson, nice to see you. Are you having a group, or are you just speaking to yourself?
My colleagues had to leave, so two minutes is fine. I'll keep it short.
Great, thank you. Katie, after you. Pamela Bradburn, 39, Erin Lovell.
Hi, my name is Katie Wilson. I'm here representing the Transit Riders Union. Thanks for hearing our comments tonight. I just wanted to express TRU's support for a few of the programs you've heard about today. First of all, we support funding, Real Changes Call for Funding for not one, not two, definitely not zero, but five mobile pit stops in this budget. People need a place to go to the bathroom, it's as simple as that. Secondly, we support the Home for Good program. We need to help people with disabilities who are living on SSI, stay housed, get housed. There's no way that someone living on that much money can afford to live in this city. You can help fill the gap. Thirdly, we support our friends at Nicholsville, and we support funding for tiny house villages. Tiny houses save lives. So we do not support the part of the mayor's budget where money's being spent to close down tiny house villages. We need your support to keep them open. And Nicholsville needs your support to maintain their self-management model. Finally, you heard earlier tonight, feels like hours ago, from some of my colleagues in the Mass Coalition, Move All Seattle Sustainably, speaking about our transportation package and some specific budget asks. Obviously, we also support all of those. And I just wanted to say a word about transit funding. We need more dedicated bus lanes all over the city. And so we are happy in the mayor's budget about the significant investments in the Rainier Corridor. Of course, we're all looking with trepidation at what's going to happen with Initiative 976. In a couple of weeks, everyone will vote no on 976. If the worst happens, we're going to be looking to you all to find new revenue, because no is not the answer. And we're in a climate crisis. We need to be investing in green transportation. We need to give people better options than driving. Thank you. Thank you, Katie.
Pamela, 38, 39, Erin Lovell, and Tanika Thompson, 40. Welcome.
Pamela Bradburn. I am also here to talk about the mobile pit stops. I'm a longtime resident of Seattle, and since 1985, I've lived in District 1. Another graduate student and I were the first two research staff working for the city council. You've got huge staffs now. It started with two part-time graduate students. So that was a long time ago. Each of you and I are privileged to live a sheltered life. Not only are we housed, but we're sheltered by our privilege from many, many issues that other people have to deal with. That fact is temporary. We would like to think that we control the conditions of our lives, but it's not correct. A benign brain tumor, a lost job. You're all up for election. I'm sure you're facing that.
Not all of us.
A divorce. A variety of issues can arise that totally change our lives and take us away from the connections that we've had and the comfort that we've lived in. However, when the conditions of our lives change, our bodily functions don't. I knew that I was coming to talk to you, so I noticed I used the toilet four times today, and it would have been higher if I hadn't been waiting in line since 3:45 to talk to you. How many toilets are available to people who can't afford to buy access? When I needed one urgently, I was able to buy access. These are for people who can't. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. So we have 39, Erin.
Good evening, council members.
Hold on just a second. 39, Erin, Tanika is 40, and Nancy is 41.
My name is Erin Lovell, and I'm the executive director of Legal Counsel for Youth and Children, LCYC. At LCYC, we work to improve the well-being of young people by advancing their legal rights. We provide direct legal services through four programs: Child Welfare, Juvenile Court, Youth and Family Immigration, and Youth Homelessness. I'm here today on behalf of LCYC to seek support for our Youth Homelessness Legal Services Program. Through this program, we provide critical holistic civil legal aid services to hundreds of young people between the ages of 12 to 24 years in age who are or are at risk of experiencing homelessness alone. Between September 1, 2018, and August 31, 2019, we serve 200 young people in Seattle through this program. The majority of youth served are youth of color. About 20% identify as LGBTQ. About 17% are immigrant youth. And consistently, over the past three years, half of the young people we serve every year through this program are minors. They're minors that are facing homelessness on their own. All minors struggling with homelessness alone have a legal issue because someone is responsible for meeting their needs. And most young adults struggling with homelessness have multiple legal issues. We address a number of civil legal issues that directly impacts young people's safety, stability, and access to education, employment, income, and housing. Some of the issues we advocate on include warrants and stealing records, medical debt, charity care, accessing child protective services and orders of protection, name and gender marker changes, landlord tenant issues, evictions, and public benefits. Over the years, our referrals have steadily increased as our community partnerships have grown in number and strength. We embed ourselves in partner organizations such as Youth Care and Seattle Public Schools Interagency Academy so that we can conduct regular intakes at locations where young people already are. We receive no city funding for the services that we've been providing. And over the past three years since they've been provided, there's been a drop in King County youth homelessness in terms of young adults and minors. We're asking for support in the amount of $100,000 in the 2020 budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tanika Thompson, and I'm the food access organizer for Got Green. I'm going to be really brief because I have been before you so many times this year. So when the sugary beverage tax was announced, grassroots organizers in these communities worked hard to ensure that the city would direct those SBT revenue into community-driven food access programs. Got Green and their allies in the Coalition have been working tirelessly to tell people who are most impacted by this tax that this revenue is going to expand and increase city funding for FreshBucks so it can reach more people in need. People who are in the food security gap, for example. They've been communicating that the city is going to be equitable with the tax revenue and accountable to its intentions. And I believe that the city council is going to do just that. My concern today is, and a concern of a lot of friends of mine, is that $3 million that the mayor is proposing go to the P-Patches. My understanding is that the P-Patches are, it's supposed to go to Ballard. P-Patches in Ballard. Well, what about people in the South End? We need food for people in Seattle, not just Ballard. $3 million is a lot of that money. It's a lot of the revenue from the sugary beverage tax. And we need that money to feed all families in Seattle. Thank you. Oh, and one more thing. I'm just, I'm just been appointed to the community advisory board, and I would like to share with you the recommendations for that $3 million. For water filling stations, for schools and community centers, micro grants for food access and early learning programs, evaluations, cab support. So why $3 million to P-Patches and only $825,000 to food banks?
Hi, everyone, I'm Nancy. This is a statement from Simone Adler, organizing director of Community Alliance for Global Justice, a member of the Coalition to close the food security gap. This summer, you stood by the values of accountability and equity and approved creating a separate fund for the sugary beverage tax revenue when Mayor Durkin attempted to supplant the general fund money with SBT funds. He voted to ensure that SBT fund programs, funds would fund programs in line to expand food access programs, and they would provide support for communities who are most impacted by attacks on sugary beverages: people of color, low-income people, and working families. It's these communities who are targeted by big soda and the sugary beverage industry. Mayor Durkin is now proposing to use $3 million to fund the P-Patch program. This should not come out of the SBT revenue. Currently, the FreshBucks program is only receiving $2 million from the SBT. The mayor is proposing to put more money into P-Patches than a program that has been in direct response to community concerns. The mayor is trying to fund a- The mayor is trying to fund a program that is not in line with the recommendations from the Community Advisory Board that is only, and that is only, not only unaccountable, it is wrong and unacceptable. While P-Patches deserve the city's resources to increase local food access, the mayor is yet again causing confusing, confusion around the public, around the city's priorities and how they are getting funding. This cannot come at the expense of accountability or equity to the communities most impacted by the tax or by creating fear and division around limited resources. The CAB is working hard to ensure their recommendations are aligned with the people directly impacted by the tax. And today, you have the opportunity to demonstrate your support for the recommendations of the CAB, which include funding water hydration stations, scratch cooking classes, and specific food access programs that are driven by community. Do not approve the $3 million from the SBT revenue fund for P-Patches. Invest this money back into impacted communities. And as Nancy, I stand in solidarity with Decriminalize Seattle and the youth from the Center School and support their demands.
Thank you, Nancy. Next three speakers are Will, is it Tosburn? Tosburn? And then Joan Irvin? Then Dennis LaCleche? Will, Tracy, and Dennis?
Hi, my name is Will and I'm testifying on behalf of Solid Ground, Poverty Action, the people I work with, and most importantly, the communities we serve. At Solid Ground, we pursue our mission of building community to end poverty by providing a wide range of supports and services as well as organizing and advocating to undo the oppressive systems that are the root causes of poverty. In that spirit, my coworkers will be testifying on behalf of a number of critical programs. We also want to make sure we ask for your support for fair wages for workers providing human services. The pay of human service providers does not at all reflect the education required, difficulty or value of their work to serve our communities. It is increasingly difficult for human service workers to live in our communities and stay in human service jobs. The result is high turnover and the burden of that is on the communities we serve. We thank the council's leadership on raising the cost of living for human service providers, but we are asking the city of Seattle to work with providers to conduct a pay equity analysis of human services jobs and allocate resources for a robust comparable worth analysis. This is an important step in the just treatment of human service workers and the communities that they serve. First...
Hi there. I'm Jay Doran with the Statewide Poverty Action Network. Poverty Action advocates at the state level to change policies and systems that create and maintain poverty. I'm here to ask you to increase funding for state-level advocacy in your balancing package. This funding was slashed by $65,000 in the mayor's budget. For about a decade, we have had a strong partnership and contract with the city and with the modest, modest investment by the city, we bring a substantial return to the residents of Seattle. A few highlights for you of what the city's contract and investment in Poverty Action has done over the last two years. We've increased the benefits that people receive from the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families program by about 10%. We've expanded housing services for people with disabilities by expanding eligibility and increasing investment in housing and essential needs and the Age Blind and Disabled Program. We've helped reform the state's legal financial obligation system. We've made it easier for previously incarcerated people to re-enter the communities by simplifying the process of vacating records. And we've helped to regulate debt collectors and strengthen consumer protections for all Washingtonians. So again, please fully fund state-level advocacy by adding $65,000 back into the budget. Thank you so much.
My name is Frank Miranda. I'm here representing Food System Support, a program of Solid Ground. Food System Support is a program that supports the food banks of the city of Seattle through its support of the Seattle Food Committee, a coalition of 27 food banks that operate in the city. I'm here to thank you, first of all, for your support of vital food bank nutrition, education, and coordination services in the city and urge you to fully fund Food System Support Nutrition Education Services as well as other requests from the most recent RFP. And then also want to recognize the push for achieving, an achievement of restoration of city food bank funding into the city's general fund as well as the institution of the automatic inflation adjustment for all HSD contracts. In addition, like many of my peers, I'm here to urge council to make the comparative worth analysis a priority in this year's budget. Nonprofit workers, including human services, find it more difficult to maintain inflation than for-profit, which makes the inflation adjustment so important. Inflation adjustment satisfied. Current pay rates for many workers in the nonprofit sector often enough make them eligible for the services that they are providing, especially in an environment of growth such as Seattle has experienced over the past few years. The comparative worth analysis seeks to resolve the question of how much of a gap may exist and, once complete, should be able to help quantify that difference, allowing for not only informed discussion, decision-making, but also to push the forward, push the conversation forward towards pay equity. Thank you.
Hi. Today, I'm here to discuss tenant counseling. Despite a large increase for the Department of Construction and Inspections, dollars allocated in the mayor's budget go towards permits and away from funding for tenant counseling, including Solid Ground's bilingual tenant hotline serving over 1,000 people each year, along with in-person workshops empowering Seattle renters to understand their rights and responsibilities. Our funding for this vital service has declined in past years from $175,000 in 2018 to $128,000 in 2019, and we've been recently told to expect another cut in 2020. I urge the council to reinstate full funding for tenant counseling to continue providing these valued services for thousands in our community. It's a critical component of homeless prevention and it's our responsibility to ensure we're preventing eviction and combating the cycle of housing instability and experiences of homelessness. Thank you.
Good. Thanks. I believe 44 is next because Tracy Gillespie spoke with a different group. Joan Irvin, 44. Dennis at 45 and Melody Reese at 46.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Joan Irvin and I am a lifetime member and a dedicated volunteer at the Central Area Senior Center. You've heard, you have a lot of information about us, but my point today is just to relate to you our support, our support in our community. Most recently, I was part of a team, a membership, a phone team to, because we had a campaign going to raise $55,000 in about a week to meet the requirements of our ownership. So we took that on and I called many people and we spoke to, when Diane, our director, presented this challenge, I thought this was an impossible feat, but I was encouraged by the immediate response. People lined up at our doorstep to make donations. The phones rang off the hook with pledges. The poor receptionist, she was overwhelmed and needed help from staff and volunteers to take in the donations. The donations came from our ethnic, all our ethnic communities, our businesses, people of color, all colors, members from far and near. Donations kept coming and we exceeded our goal.
Oh, great. Good for you.
I spoke to one lady who was not able to, she said financially she was not able to support us, but she would pray for us. And I said, prayers are a pretty strong force and we welcome that, too. Thank you very much for, oh, Monday, I just want to say last, this past Monday, we gave a thank you to, we had an open house for a thank you to all our, the community for supporting us. And it was a free lunch and we had activities and it was a very good event.
Nice, Joan. Thank you. Thank you.
Council members. My name is Gwen Wrench and I've lived one mile from the senior center since 1970. I'm active in the enhanced fitness and other programs at the center and I, as well as many others, want to be able to continue to take advantage of its programs and close proximity. Past mayors supported maintaining the center as a community resource and two years ago, a consultant recommended that the city transfer the deed and yet it hasn't happened. Why not? Why wasn't the transfer part of the mayor's budget? The city council passed a resolution providing for the transfer and yet it hasn't happened. Why hasn't the city council forced the mayor's hand? To give the senior center to developers for so-called affordable housing goes against the 1975 Referendum 29, providing for the senior center to serve as a community center open to the public. The Central Area Senior Center needs to continue to be the great community resource it is. Mayor Durkin, transfer the deed.
I also find that people under 69, so you might want to revise that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Joan Paulson. I'm speaking in support of the MOB Greenwood and Capital Central Area Senior Centers and Byrd Bar Place Properties to be transferred by a legal instrument of a deed so that the ownership change will happen from the city of Seattle to these three community organizations this year. This deed transfer effort of ownership for these three organizations has been thought of of a 50-yard dash, however, is really more of a 26-mile marathon over the past 40 years. Mayor Ed Murray had been supportive of these deed transfers, however, for the past two budget cycles, our current mayor has not been supportive. Therefore, it will take, again, the majority of the support of the members of the city council to make this deed transfer happen this year. Please continue your efforts and make this effort of deed transfer cross over the finish line for these three organizations.
We thank, we thank the city council last year and Lisa Herbold and, and Michael Bryan for cheering the effort to make the resolution happen, that we are to have ownership of the building in this year. And we have continued to wait. Every day, we have a new criteria to meet. Joan was celebrating our $97,000 success because the city said we had to have at least $50,000 in the bank for maintenance. Well, we paid $680,000 worth of maintenance from 2014 to 2019. So every day, there's a new criteria and we would just like for you to use all of your effort, resources, and power to make sure that the transfer of the three mutually offsetting benefit properties happen this year. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Diane. Thank all of you. Joan.
Diane, I had to leave for a 7 o'clock meeting at your place. I literally just left your place.
Okay, okay.
Everything is doing well.
45, Dennis. 46, Melody Reese. 47, Annika.
He wrote us a letter on the 27th saying that he met with us.
Are you talking to us? All right. Sorry. Hello. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Councilmember Herbold, were you talking to us?
No.
Oh, sorry. Dennis? Thank you. 46, Melody. And 47, Annika. Please, go ahead.
My name is Dennis LaClesh. I am alumni status of the LEED program. Three years ago, I was in my tribulation, darkness, and the grip of my disease. Heroin, cocaine, methamphetamines. And I say that specifically because these certain drugs affect me in different ways. Today, I have two years and six months clean. The LEED program has been my foundation. I had, struggling with 30 days clean, 30, 60 days clean, and I knew about the LEED program. I was in King County Jail and I actually heard about the program from other inmates and even on the streets of Seattle. And I remember being booking, knocking on the window, seeing Felix, one of the SPD officers, just longing for the LEED program. Said, Felix, Felix, please. He came to the window, he talked to me. Please, I need this program, you know? And there were a few other steps. And I'm glad I had this opportunity because the LEED program has changed my life and saved my life significantly. You know, with, they've done incredible things through coming to court with me and advocating for me, helped me into sober living, taught me budgeting, all types of different wonderful With the help of Harm Reduction Medicine, Narcotics Anonymous, the Fellowship, and the genuine love of this program, it's saved my life. Today, I work at Thunderbird Treatment Center as a counselor's aide, almost done with my degree in chemical dependency. And I have a beautiful daughter back there and my mother here. And to see the smile on my mother's face is priceless.
Well done, Dennis. Thank you.
Because I put that, I put my mother through hell. I'm a single child from South Seattle and I put her through hell. Sometimes I'd be, you know, so broken and, and loaded, I'd be on the floor, on her floor, just praying for the next day to come for another chance. Desperate for this program, desperate for just a new life. And this program has given me the ability to be my true authentic self.
Great. Dennis, thank you.
Three years ago, I...
Thank you so much.
Hi, city council.
Hi, Melody.
Good to see you.
You're 46?
Yes.
And Annika is 47 next and Chris McDaniel is 48. Thank you, please.
Excellent. So my name is Melody Reese. I am a LEED project manager with the Public Defender Association. I also am a former employee of Swap Seattle and an active sex workers' rights activist in the Seattle community. And as a project manager for LEED, I just want to fully advocate for the full funding of the LEED program as well as funding other community service providers that overlap with the LEED populations, including POC Swap and Greenlight Project. I also want to clarify some misconceptions about the LEED program as came to public hearing last night from Swap Seattle. So when LEED is at fidelity, interaction with the police is not actually required for referral into LEED services. So the idea that sex workers have to come into contact with police when this model is fully funded is not actually accurate. However, it's being operationalized that way currently because we have to prioritize referrals in order to balance capacity issues. It's vitally important that we keep the LEED mechanism intact and operating at fidelity in order to have the best outcomes for the population and for the rest of the community. Additionally, our case managers that we work for, that we work with at REACH are absolutely sex worker competent and many of them have been our survivors themselves and have been members of the life, as you heard earlier. And there's, there's a range of reasons why people are doing sex work on the street and our services should reflect that. Greenlight Project has been ground zero for this population in services, but LEED case managers specifically are the best way for police to interact with this population and to manage all appropriate services for this population. So once again, I just really want to advocate for fully funding this LEED program as it's the most appropriate mechanism and then also community-based wraparound services. Thank you.
Thank you, Melody. So, Annika? Annika Lumberger, it looks like you've got a lot of people behind you, so.
Yeah.
Welcome to the group and appreciate you talking about tiny houses.
Yes. So, hi, my name is Annika. I live at Georgetown Tiny House Village with my fiance and my two-year-old daughter. Over the past two years, Georgetown has been a model of acceptance, compassion, recovery, and success. Our village, working with Lehigh and the navigation team, serves some of the, Seattle's most vulnerable homeless adults and families, some who have been on the streets 10 to 15 years. Should our village end, 60 adults, one child, and 22 pets would be back on the street or in a shelter. They would no longer feel accepted, but instead be the outcast of society once again. To keep our village would be the continuation of stability and the opening of more villages would help thousands more homeless individuals feel the dignity and community that we feel from our village daily as well as from the Georgetown neighborhood. I would like to end with a quote from the book Community Growth by Jeanne Veneer. "When we pool our strength and share the work and responsibility, we can welcome many people, even those in deep distress, and perhaps help them find self-confidence and inner healing."
Great.
And I would like to yield the rest of my time to Barbara Hill.
Thank you. Welcome, Margaret.
Hi, everybody. I'm Barbara Grace Hill. I am a member of the Georgetown Community Advisory Council and have had the honor and the pleasure of working with the village since its opening and it's been an incredible experience. I'm here to ask you to please keep the... I'm here to ask you to please keep the, keep funding more villages and to please keep the Georgetown Village open as well. The cost to close a village is approximately $300,000, and that's the cost of building approximately one more village, which we desperately need, as I think we all know. Or it would provide salaries for around six to eight case managers for up to a year. So as we've learned over the past few years, more case managers result in more people moving up the housing continuum into permanent housing. That's a critical need, as we've heard from many this evening, including those who have risen from homelessness to become case managers, mentors, teachers. This leadership development is one of the unexpected benefits that I have witnessed within the Georgetown Village. Annika is a leader in her village community, and I have confidence that she will continue to grow in this ability. Patty here is another village member. She's working across the country, carrying the message of success of the tiny home village model. Andrew also is doing that, and he's a village resident and leader, and with all due respect to Mayor Durkin, I'm pretty sure we may one day call him mayor. These three are modeling leadership, collaboration, and democratic decision-making to all the residents, as are all the residents back to them. They work with the neighborhood on numerous events and with those of us serving on the CEAC and concert with the Human Services Department, the Department of Neighborhoods, and with Lehigh. Recently, we've had the pleasure of sitting and speaking with some of you, and we're very grateful for that time and that collaboration with all of the city. That relationship is growing and getting better every day, and we're really excited about that. Our community largely supports, our Georgetown community largely supports the continuation of the Georgetown Village. Georgetown is a model for this city and the country. Let us all continue to do this transformative work together and make a difference for everyone. Please continue the villages and Georgetown specifically. Thank you.
Congratulations on a village well-tended. I appreciate hearing this. Chris McDaniel is 48. Devin Andel is 49, and we have a number 50. It looks like Naomi. Chris?
Hello, my name is Chris McDaniel. I visit Tiny House Village in Georgetown also. I've been sitting here listening and trying to think what to say, and I'll be brief. Kim, Bama, Mo. Those are three people that once lived at Georgetown Tiny House Village, but for various reasons left. They're dead now. They didn't kill themselves, they were killed. If you close this village, that's going to happen again with other people. You need to open more villages. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you Devin?
Yes, ma'am.
49. Devin, hold on just a second. Naomi is 50, and Brid Fleming is 51. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Brede Diane. My name is Devin Andel. Last year, I had moved up here after moving out of a very extensive situation, and I came up here with nothing but the clothes on my back. Since staying at the UGM, I was then led into the Georgetown Tiny Home Village, to where I have been there for almost over a year now, and it has sheltered me from the cold, from the violence, discrimination, and hate. These villages that you have all the way around, we've visited many different ones, many different cultures, and many different kinds of people that have many different ideas. These villages promote these ideas, the growth of these ideas, and also the growth of their personal potential well-being. The $600,000 that were allocated to demoing these videos or reallocating them could, as spoken earlier, open up two more, which then would make it 22 more villages off the $12 million that was proposed to open up to 20 more villages. And that's all I have to say. I'm going to give it to my friend Travis here for the rest of my time.
Great, thank you.
Hello, I'm known as the guru Travis. I have been a member of this community for the past 10 years now. I moved here very young. I was the first underage person at the Union Gospel Mission. At the minimum age requirement was 18. I was 16 at the time. It was a terrible place. Then I left and got in a tent in front of City Hall here with my mother. I got referred by the REACH team, and now I'm an alternate resident of the Georgetown Tiny Home Village. It has saved my life. I have personally been blessed by it in ways you would not understand, and I thank you all for listening to me.
Thank you for coming, Travis. All right. Number 50 is Naomi, 51 is Brid, and 52 is Alex Finch.
Good evening. My name is Naomi C., and I'm a student at the University of Washington. I would like to first speak on Miss Wann's budget proposal allocating money to the Office of Planning and Community Development to contract with a community-based organization in the central district, like the Black Dollar Days Task Force. To support black churches and cultural institutions develop their vacant and underutilized properties. Growth in the city of Seattle should never come at the cost of displacing and disenfranchising groups of the population. It is the responsibility of all of us to empower communities throughout Seattle to advance economic opportunity and develop safe and culturally relevant neighborhoods. We cannot recognize growth as progress if we are not doing this work. I would also like to speak on behalf of the Tiny House Villages. As a volunteer with the Low Income Housing Institute, I feel privileged to have had the opportunity to spend time in these incredible communities. It is clear we are calling to solutions to this crisis, and Tiny House Villages is one of these solutions. Please hear the voices of those impacted by the villages because they showed up to talk to you today. And remember that when you invest in a tiny house village, you are investing in the beautiful, courageous, and important lives they support. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. So we have Brid, Alex, and then Sean Smith, 51, 52, 53.
Hello, my name is Brid Fleming. I'm a member and resident at Second Chance Tiny Houses. I became homeless 10 years ago, suffering in all the usual ways. In the beginning, I stayed at missions and overnight shelters, being kicked out the next morning in despair and loneliness and desperation, and I turned to drugs. It was an easy way out, a way for me to feel good. And in turning to drugs, it didn't last long, the feeling of security and all that, it made it worse. So I turned to other methods like harm reduction. I was able to get sober, and in getting sober, I found myself in places like Tennessee, where I was still in a tent, suffering and becoming more and more debilitating with arthritis. And along the way, getting sober and healthy, I found out that I had other things going on, like liver disease. And I've been on the list for Seattle Housing Authority for five years now, and still no housing available. But now with tiny houses, I'll have a house, a home that I live in when I receive a new liver, because I'm now on the transplant list, so I'm just glad I have a home to live in. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Brid. Alex Finch? Sean Smith is 53, and Rebecca Finkes is 54.
Somebody apparently left a phone up here. First off, I'd like to start off by thanking you all for staying with us this long. So my name is Alex Finch. I am the External Affairs Coordinator at Nicholsville Northlake. I could talk to you about how Nicholsville has helped me with all the positivity of my life since moving into Northlake, but I won't because it's a story you've all heard multiple times tonight, not to mention, I really could not top those kids with that So instead, I'll ask you all a question, and it's a question I posed slightly differently two years ago with the EHT, and that is, are you all happy with your legacy as Seattle City Council members? I know some of you are leaving at the end of this term, somebody else will take your spot, but are you happy with your legacy? A legacy in which homelessness deaths have been increasing. By example, when I first started talking, there were 67 at this time. As you heard earlier, there was 94. It's a legacy where a massive amount of data that would put the post office's servers to shame is more important than the flesh and blood people who are here begging you to govern with compassion, to save lives. I'm not up here just for me. I'm up here for the person who will be in my shelter after me, when I no longer need it. So please, support Swant's Amendment to fund more tiny house villages, to not close Georgetown or Nicholsville Northlake, and to help the mayor follow through on her campaign promise of opening more tiny houses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, 53, Rebecca, 54, and Lindy Knight, I think that's Knight, 55.
Good evening, Council. My name is Sean Smith, but you already know who I am. Tonight, I could talk about who invented self-management, but I won't. I could talk about who invented tiny house villages, but I won't. Instead, I'm here to ask you to be honest with yourselves and look at the crisis that we face on the street nightly. 3,000 people spent the night outside in the rain last night. We need you to vote for Councilmember Swant's Amendment, $12 million for 20 more villages. We cannot afford to shut down. One, we're not even close to building the housing that we need. Please, let's get back to work and help people. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Rebecca, Lindy is 55, and Jason Austin is 56.
Hello, I am Becca Finkes. I work for the Low Income Housing Institute with the Tiny House Program, and I'm so grateful for all the residents that came out tonight to speak about their experiences and their willingness to be vulnerable and open about those. And with that in mind, it's not my role to speak on their hardships at all, but I do want to bring up a population that our villages serve that are left out of these discussions oftentimes. The 2,019-point time count identified 1,583 children under the age of 18 experiencing homelessness this year on one night, and that's probably an undercount. The Tiny House Villages currently offer safe and dignified shelter for 26 of those children experiencing homelessness and 71 total over the past year. I like to spend a lot of my time at a fellow village. The kids there ride around the village on their bikes, they love to play hide-and-seek, and they're the sweetest, goofiest little humans I've ever had the pleasure of meeting. The villages offer a place for children to take a shower before school, the security to get a full night's rest so they can do their homework, and the stability to think about who they want to be when they grow up. I urge you to support increased funding for more tiny house villages. I think that we must acknowledge that we can do better for children experiencing homelessness in Seattle, and this is a step in the right direction. And to do otherwise and to look the other way is not only a disservice to our community, but also our future. I spoke on similar sentiments last week, but again, feel free to reach out to me if any of you are interested in visiting a village and meeting some of our next astronauts, teachers, police officers, and hopefully presidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindy? 56 is Jason Austin, 57 is Joss Castle.
Okay, it's Linda, actually. It's the spelling, it's German.
Thank you. Linda?
Okay, so I came here to talk to you about some problems that are coming up that you may not even be aware of. Santa Rosa, California was in the wildfires that hit California, and that wildfire destroyed 8,000 structures in many communities, both high-end, middle-class, and lower-class. The city lost 5% of their housing stock. Imagine that happening here. One bright, bright note in this whole thing was one construction company owner built a tiny house village for some of those who'd lost their homes and donated the land to put it on. Each home cost $15,000 to construct, and a lot of the work was donated by not only carpenters, but electricians and plumbers, the expensive stuff. And these are permanent homes. They are not what you think of when you think of the tiny homes of today, which are extremely important. But what I want to tell you about is something that's not so good coming up in the future. I live next door to a man with dementia, and he was crying to me the other day because he lost $20, which he cannot afford to lose because there were holes in his pockets, and he couldn't figure out that he had to take the clothes that had holes in their pockets off and put on clothes that had no holes in the pockets. So I had to guide them through that, just like I would a child, but without messing up his self-esteem. Then I found out his jacket had holes in the pockets, so I gave him one of mine that did not.
Two minutes already?
We have got to construct tiny houses permanently for these people and their caregivers because we are due in a projection to have 140,000 more people in the state of Washington with dementia.
Thank you for coming tonight, Linda, and giving us that information. Okay, Jason Austin, Joss Castle is 57, and Art is 58.
Good evening.
Good evening. Are you, you don't look, you don't look like Jason, but we're happy to see you.
Jason already went. Yes, thank you. So we're slotting in. Hi, thank you. I'm Daniel Malone. I'm Executive Director of DESE. I'm here with my Harborview colleagues to speak in favor of Councilmember Bagshaw's proposal, supported by several of you, to invest $2 million in the construction of a new medical clinic to be located in Hobson Place, DESE's new apartment building in North Rainier Valley. With this funding, we plan to build out a clinic, a high-quality, integrated, physical and behavioral health care to become a reality for thousands of people with significant behavioral health and medical needs. Here's why this is so important. The homeless adult population is older than it used to be, and we're seeing increasingly complex health conditions among people currently or formerly homeless. People with both serious behavioral health and physical health conditions often get inadequate care for either type of condition. This project builds on and expands existing DESE and Harborview partnerships to serve clients in an integrated way so both conditions are more effectively treated.
Hi, I'm Tricia Madden. I'm with Harborview Medical Center, and we have nurses, doctors, physical therapists, and nutritionists, and psychiatrists working hard every day to treat people who are unhoused and dealing with poverty and social determinants of health issues. We have partnered with DESE for well over 45 years, bringing nurses into shelters and then initiating that first partnership of Housing First with 1811 Eastlake. And this project is really the next step, as you're hearing everybody talk today about needing housing, needing this integrated care model of people who are going out on the street and doing street services, as well as enough access to a primary care clinic that is integrated with chemical dependency and mental health treatment and psychiatry services, case manager services, a payee services. It's a really comprehensive, integrated clinic that's going to have 175 units of housing. I really think this is kind of the next step, where we're cutting the edge with 1811 Eastlake. I think this project is the next step for that. I feel like we've heard... I feel like we've heard plenty of people here talking about the effects of being unsheltered and unhoused on your physical and your mental health. And this would just be a great project to be able to try and help address those needs.
DESE and Harborview are excited to make this clinic and the care will provide a reality. The total project budget is approximately $22 million. We have most of the funding from estate allocation and New Markets tax credits. We also have a request working through King County and are appealing to philanthropy and other grant makers. Any remaining gap will have to be covered via debt, but we're working to keep the debt low so as to keep operating costs unrelated to direct care as low as possible. This kind of integrated behavioral and physical health care, along with badly needed supportive housing units that will also be constructed in the building, is a major piece of the puzzle to solving homelessness and its impact on our communities. Thanks for listening to us and for listening to everybody you're hearing from tonight. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, Josh Castle, nice to see you. And do you have a group with you, or is it just you?
Just me.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
I'm Josh Castle. I work for Lehigh. 196 people died living on the streets last year. Nobody should have to die due to lack of shelter in one of the wealthiest cities on the planet. We are grateful to all of you and to our partnership with the city in the funding and the support of eight tiny house villages in Seattle, which has greatly saved and greatly improved thousands of lives since the first village opened three and a half years ago. These are not a permanent solution, but it's a critical stepping stone from homelessness to housing. They provide shelter, community, and safety to close to 1,000 people per year and have high rates of exits to permanent housing and long-term housing compared with other shelter programs. Even with the severe lack of affordable housing in our city, our case managers have transitioned over 500 tiny house residents into permanent housing since the program began. Right now, city-owned, private, and faith-based land exists to accommodate more villages, and thousands of volunteers are ready to jump in and build them. We're requesting the City Council support the allocation of $6 million from the sale proceeds of the South Lake Union Mega Block and other sources to support 10 tiny house villages with 20 to 60 tiny houses each. 300 to 500 tiny houses can shelter an additional 800 to 1,200 homeless women, men, and children, and keep them safe in warm, heated tiny houses with hygiene and community facilities. Please also pass Councilmember Swant's legislation to authorize more tiny house villages in Seattle. It is crucial the tiny house ordinance passes before the end of March 2020, when temporary permits extensions expire for villages that are not church-sponsored. Residents of most of the villages are here today to share their stories of how the villages have made a difference for them, and please listen to them. Please support more funding to help the many people and families forced to live in their vehicles as well. We're requesting the Council add funding to support more safe parking. The University Heights Board voted to support safe parking, and I wanted to thank Councilmember Pacheco and Councilmember Muscata for participating in that forum a few months ago. Lastly, more support is urgently needed for urban rest stops, and we enthusiastically support the Real Change Campaign for Five Mobile Pit Stops. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Are you Art 58?
Not Art. Art gave me his card and left. Is that okay?
What's your name?
My name is David Delgado.
Okay, just a moment.
With the BIA.
Yep, hold on, David. I recognize you. Hold on just a moment. So after David is going to be Renee McCoy, and Shoshana Weinberg is number 60.
So we're with a group.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right, thank you.
Would you set his time for five minutes, please?
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good evening, actually, now at this point. Good evening, City Council members. My name is Devin Reynolds, and I'm here on behalf of the Ballard Alliance, an organization that represents hundreds of businesses and thousands of residents in the Ballard Corps. We are advocating for a green sheet sponsored by Councilmembers Pacheco and O'Brien that would provide supportive funding for Reach outreach workers in Ballard and the U District. The Ballard Alliance first contracted with the Reach in 2017 to provide neighborhood-based outreach for unhoused individuals in the Ballard community with the goal of offering services, shelter, and housing. This program has worked really well, and, for example, this year alone, our outreach worker has averaged 85 contacts per month. 71 individuals have received shelter this year, and 18 individuals have moved into permanent housing this year. For 2018, the city provided funding to support, to help support the cost of the Reach program in the Ballard and U District BIAs. The green sheet proposal before you will provide partial funding to continue this program for 2020 and 2021. We believe this program is a successful public-private partnership that provides a critical tool for serving unhoused individuals in our neighborhood. The Ballard Alliance is committed to this program, and we encourage continued commitment from the city to help support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David?
Good evening. My name is David Delgado, and I am here today in support of the BIA outreach program. The title given to me was University District Outreach Coordinator, but I'll always be a social justice advocate first. I say this because I want the council to know that I would not speak on behalf of a program for employment security. I am here today because I'm convinced that assertive, neighborhood-based outreach is currently the most effective outreach model for meeting the needs of some of our most vulnerable populations. The BIA outreach program not only helps our community with individual needs, but this program has positive meso effects that I don't want to go unnoticed. Yes, during my workdays, I am doing the micro-work, such as helping people get into shelter and housing, obtaining IDs, providing harm reduction services, or helping people get accessing mental health and chemical dependency services, things that are being recorded. The BIA outreach workers also does lots of work that tends to go unnoticed. For one example, conducting safety checks on people experiencing emotional and psychological distress. Because of the nature of mixing Reach workers with the BIA, I have had the honor of working with the whole community. With the help of the SPD and the local businesses, my ability to help others has greatly increased. In my short time working with the BIA, I have found a missing person and reconnected him with his parents. I found a newborn that was in an unsafe situation for CPS. I have housed two mentally ill persons with hoarding behaviors on an Ave and not just moved them around. Sorry, give me one second. It's been a long day.
Do great.
Where was I? Oh, yeah. I also help people find lead people. I often get calls from the police requesting support for either a person who is unhoused or someone who thinks that they are mentally ill. I also get calls from businesses directing me to help unhoused peoples, or sometimes a store will call me to help de-escalate an unhoused person who appears to be in distress. I feel like I'm being used as a tool for the police and the businesses, and I welcome it. I think it's a good thing that our police has a social worker at their disposal when dealing with complex social issues in regards to our unhoused community. And I often hear from stores and property owners that before they had my number, they used to just call the police since they didn't know who I was to call. Now, the public has more options to better the safety and cleanliness of their neighborhood in a way that is more ethical than before the outreach BIA program. Again, I think neighborhood-based outreach is effective and currently the most ethical means of doing outreach. My hope is that this council will recognize both the micro and meso benefits of the BIA outreach program and support it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Mark Crawford. I'm serving as the Executive Director of the U District Partnership. We began our pilot program in March, deploying David Delgado in our community. David has already spoken to you, but I'd like to take this opportunity, and I'd just like to publicly thank him for all he has done for so many people in such a short time. He's made a profound difference, and we are grateful. We have a lot of data, and I'll be glad to leave our cumulative report here with the staff, but in seven short months, David has helped 44 individuals with substance use referrals, 35 individuals with short-term shelter resources, 26 individuals with longer-term housing access, 28 individuals with medical referrals, and much, much more. To launch this pilot program, the UDP and the BIA provided funding, which we did in partnership with the city and the Rotary. We were grateful for that launch funding, and we would like to continue the program. We will also commit to the continued framework of private-public funding to support the program, and so we're asking the city to support us at the 60% level, and we will raise the private funds for the remaining 40%. Simply put, this is a program that works. It has the support of the community, both in terms of the programmatic buy-in and the willingness to provide a sizable percentage of the funding. It is efficient. It is effective. We hope the council will support the request to add dedicated funding for this program in both Ballard and the U District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Number 61 left. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was concentrating a bit. Okay, thank you. After my able assistant just geared the pudding out of me. We've got Renee, and we've got Shoshana, and we have Sunny.
Good afternoon.
Are you 59? Are you 59? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm 59.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Please, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank each one of you, because chances are I might not see you again, and I have been down here many times to speak on behalf of humanity for affordable housing and things like that. But I really want to thank you, each one of you that won't be returning for your service, and I do wish you the best. So, the lead program is wonderful. I definitely support more funds than that. Keeping people out of the judicial system is the best thing, actually. Anyway, mobile showers, you know, I had this idea a long time ago, so I was happy to hear that people are talking about this. But these mobile showers, they start at like $22,000, you know, on up. I mean, for $48,000, you can get, you can just Google it, they're right on there, and they also have some laundromat facilities with them. Some of them have bathrooms. But as far as personal hygiene is just so important for anyone. And, you know, and so we can't have housing for everyone right away, but the best way to have people have dignity, to be able to get out and feel okay in society, is, you know, first and foremost, but I'm not seeing any of these like practical things take place. And I'm out on the street every day. And I'm also concerned about my safety and as well as other people's safety, but I'm going to address that in a minute. Anyway, so the mobile showers, you know, you can get bathrobes while they're washing their clothes, have them sit with, after they've taken a shower. I mean, these little details are just practical and can happen. Tiny villages, absolutely, without the money to be able to have the millions of dollars of cost for other things, tiny villages are also just common sense.
Renee, can I ask you to get to the last sentence, please?
To the last thing?
Last sentence.
And I do support hiring more police. Because, yeah, because we do, it's really good that they have accountability, that they're being retrained, but also they're...
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Shoshana Weinberg, and I understand that 61 has left, so is Sunny, 61. Not here? Okay. So Bradford Gerber, 62, will be after. Shoshana.
Good evening, council members. My name is Shoshana Weinberg. I'm here on behalf of Youth Care in support of SHSC's budget package for a just and thriving community, as well as a budget request for legal counsel for youth and children to provide legal aid to youth experiencing homelessness. Thank you for unanimously supporting the annual inflation adjustment for human services contracts this summer. We urge you, however, to take the next step in supporting a comparable worth study submitted by Councilmember Swant to assess the chronic underfunding of the field and create new wage benchmarks. We are already starting to see smaller, community-based organizations close their doors because they can't pay staff or keep up with rising costs. Human services create the foundation by which all people in our community can achieve stability and success, and we cannot afford to lose that foundation. And on that note, Youth Care relies heavily on our partnership with Legal Counsel for Youth and Children to help young people experiencing homelessness achieve stability. And unfortunately, as was mentioned earlier, that legal aid is also at risk. I want to echo the words that were shared earlier, that the young people we work with, but especially minors, are often navigating multiple systems with complex legal needs. And our partnership with Legal Counsel for Youth and Children has been transformative in helping youth address the types of legal issues that create barriers to accessing housing and long-term stability. So thank you to Councilmember Gonzalez for supporting this work, and we urge the full council support for both of these important issues. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for coming, and thank you to Youth Care. Really appreciate all the work you do. 62 Bradford, 63 Maureen, and 64 David Rosen.
Hello, and thank you, council members. My name is Bradford Gerber, and I'm a program manager at the Low Income Housing Institute. I work on the tiny house program. For the past three years, I've worked on the tiny house program in these communities where I've served as liaison, project manager, advocate, and, most importantly, student to the people who are living in these villages and working in these programs. And in this work, we have never not been busy. Most recently, we have added a new kitchen and community area to Camp Second Chance. We've added hot showers to Camp Second Chance. We've added toilets, a kitchen, laundry facilities, and new showers at Interbay Village Safe Harbor. We've built accessible ramps, added accessible gravel, added porches with handrails to Georgetown Village. We've added 12 tiny houses to Othello Village, et cetera, et cetera. All of these things fueled by volunteers and funded by the community. Seattle is unique. We have unique challenges, with more people per capita experiencing homelessness in this city than any other major city in the country, and a climate that is not forgiving. We have unique solutions as well. The public-private-community-resident partnership of this program is unique in the nation, and the nation is watching. One village opened in Bellingham after having come and received some assistance from residents as well as our organization, which was pretty interesting. One opened in Denver. Eight are opening in San Jose. One opened in Sacramento. Two opened in Olympia. Three have opened in Oakland. One opened in Hawaii. One opened in Minneapolis. And there are others. The list goes on. And all of these groups have learned from Seattle's work, and so have we. The data is there. Tiny houses in Seattle are more effective and cost-effective than any other option that the city has. In this truth is Seattle's unique opportunity. Please visit these communities, all of them, as they're all different and they all have different things to teach us, support more villages, support funding more villages, and hold the regional authority accountable to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen? Before you get started, Maureen, you're 63.
63, Maureen Ewing, EB in the University Heights Center.
And David Rosen, 64, and Mac McGregor is 65. Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity and for hanging here with all of us this evening. I am here to represent our Board of Directors that unanimously approved launching a safe lot at the University Heights Center, and we are extremely grateful for your support in including not only the continuation, but the expansion of that program. Other West Coast cities have figured it out. I have been spending hours and hours every week talking to them, particularly in urban areas like LA. I can't express the need better than the folks that have gone before me with lived experience, but it's important for the U Heights Center to be a place for all, and our lot is basically an unsafe lot right now. And so we can provide a pathway to housing there in a regulated way. Right now, there's a minimum of over 2,100 vehicle residents in our area, and our budget includes not only providing a parking space, but we're providing hygiene services, trash collections, meeting basic needs. And we need to meet people where they are, and we need to know where they are in order to reach them when housing is available. So it's so critical that we provide this service. Different cities, as I mentioned, employ different models. There are strong opinions about how to run the program, how much to staff the program, what works in more suburban areas may not work in the U District and more urban areas. But what we can agree on is that we need to launch this program, and we need to do it now. This is a pilot. We're adaptable. We are surrounding ourselves with all the key partners in the U District. The Y has offered showers. We've got support from all the other local service providers and faith-based communities. And we would greatly appreciate your support so that we can be the second lot in Seattle, which we really need to get going on this. And inspiringly, a lot of our students, elementary schools, are rallying around this project as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming, Maureen. David, 64. Mac McGregor, 65. And Danielle Gonzalez, 66.
City council members, my name is David Rosen. I'm a District Four resident, second-year MPA student at the Evans School of the University of Washington, and currently a board fellow for the University Heights Center. I'm here to advocate for the funding to help us establish a safe lot at University Heights. At this very moment, there are over 2,000 vehicular residents in this area. Their cars are their home, their transportation to work, and very likely, their last bastion against sleeping on the street in the cold and the dark. against sleeping on the street in the cold and the dark. We all know the story. Rents are increasing with wages being left behind as inaction at the federal, state, and local level fail to stem the tide. We cannot, should not, and will not accept the word "car" becoming synonymous with "home." How to deal with this is a contentious matter. There is no arguing that. But our city has failed to address, has failed to plan to address it, and thus, our city has planned to fail. At University Heights, we have a plan. We will provide people a place to sleep, a place to be able to do something as simple as going to the bathroom, and a place to connect them to services that can provide them shelter that isn't a blown tire away from not being sheltered at all. In August, we were lucky enough to hold a vehicle residency forum with supporters for our safe lot lined up outside of the door. There is commitment in our community, there is commitment at University Heights, and there is commitment in this very room. Please fund the University Heights Safe Lot. Thank you for your time, council, and thank you for your time, everyone here who has given us a voice here in Seattle. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Hey, Mac? After Mac, we have Danielle Gonzalez, and then Bruce is number 67.
Hi, I'm Mac McGregor. And many of you may know that the transgender community is three times more likely to face unemployment compared to the regular population, and five times more likely to be underemployed if they are employed. And so I have worked with a company to help create a program that helps the trans community face our unique obstacles, the trans and gender nonconforming community face the unique obstacles we face in the job market. We have tackled them one by one and created an education program that helps empower people to walk into the job market with confidence, skills, and knowledge. We all know that knowledge is power. And just to give you a little insight into the unique things that we in the trans community face in the job market, I'm someone that prior to transition is lucky enough to have had a great education and employment. I was a college professor, also an executive director of an international nonprofit. But all that experience is in my prior name and gender marker, and in the Bible Belt in the South. So if I apply for something now, I have to ask a potential employer to either deal with that, or I have to try to call those places, those references, and ask and explain Trans-101 and hope they get it, and hope they come along. So you see, there are some really unique obstacles that we face. And there, we have a large trans and gender nonconforming population here in Seattle, and we want to help those people go forward in their lives and not struggle, and be an active part of our community because they're not worried about struggling to pay rent, or make it, or put food on their table. And that's what this does. This empowers people in their everyday life. So I'm asking you to fund the pilot program, the trans and gender nonconforming job program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mac. All right, we have 66 Danielle Gonzalez, then Bruce, 67, and Peggy Hoots is 68. Hi.
Thank you. Sit down, shut up, don't rock the boat. These are some of the things pounded into the minds of transgender and gender nonconforming people. We're trained not to challenge the status quo from a young age, and we begin to internalize that narrative. In adulthood, that internalized narrative translates to a professional passiveness. Two years ago, I was fired from a Wallingford Pizzeria for, quote, "causing too much drama" when I asked my manager to put an end to my being misgendered by a coworker. I said nothing. I moved on to the next minimum-wage job, living well below the national poverty line, and being sexually harassed at the new job because of my status as a transgender person. Again, I said nothing. This story is all too familiar. We hear this kind of thing from other transgender and gender nonconforming people all the time. We put up with civil rights and labor violations, all because too often, the only work available is that minimum-wage pizzeria job. And we don't want to rock the boat. According to the 2015 National Transgender Discrimination Survey conducted by the National Center for Transgender Equality, 29% of transgender people live in poverty. That's more than double the national average. 30% of transgender people report being homeless at some point in their lives. Transgender people experience unemployment at three times the rate of the general population, four times for trans people of color. The proposed job placement services would go on to help hundreds of transgender and gender nonconforming people in the greater Seattle area to develop their skills and their voice, to enter into the workforce, lower the unemployment rate among the transgender community, and boost Seattle's overall economy. Two years ago, when I was working at that pizzeria, I never would have gotten behind this microphone to address my city council. But because of these kinds of services, I now have the confidence and voice to advocate for my community. And now I'm starting my own business to coach organizations and companies around the Seattle area on diversity, inclusiveness, and justice, and helping them foster a welcoming and inclusive culture. By approving this budget measure, there are, these are the kinds of gifts you'll be giving to hundreds of Seattle's most vulnerable citizens. I can assure you that those who receive this training will pay it back to the community with their unique talents and flair for life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. 67 is Bruce, 68 is Peggy Hoots, and thank you for coming up to the microphone. And we're skipping 69 because they spoke as number 44. And then we've got, at 70, it looks like Stephen, I'm not sure, we're talking about tiny house.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bruce Gogel, and I'm a resident at Occupied a Fellow Village. I have a shocking thing to say. I am not going to complain about Lehigh tonight. Matter of fact, I'm not even going to read what I wrote. Instead, what I'd like to say is that with failure, sometimes the greatest success can be achieved. And your failure to get Lehigh to negotiate with Nicholsville this past summer after hearing countless testimony has now given you the opportunity to vote yes for more tiny houses, to vote yes to having at least 10 other, 10 tiny house villages ran by other organizations. And with that, we will finally figure out what's better, self-management or mismanagement. And maybe next summer, instead of hearing me complain about Lehigh, I can sit at that table and talk about metrics, statistics, success stories, and things like that that can come from self-management. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Linda? Linda, Linda, next was two minutes.
And you don't know I'll use this next time.
Two minutes for this, because the group's already... Peggy, are you just, are you planning to speak for two minutes? Because Seth has already been here, and I think Bruce has already been here, Alex.
Yes, yes. I didn't know they were behind me.
Well, they're there for moral support, so let's sign up for two minutes.
Moral support, yes, yes, yes. So, good evening, council members. Thank you for staying so late. I'm here to speak, I'm Peggy Hoots, and I'm a Nicholsville founder and volunteer. And I'm here to speak in favor of Councilmember Sawant's budget amendment, I think it's called now. And that amendment would propose funding for 20 new tiny house villages. A good part of that, too, of that amendment, is that 10 of those tiny house villages would be operated by grassroots organizations like Share, Wheel, and Nicholsville. That's a good thing, because for the last few years, for some mysterious reason, the city's been promoting a monopoly of operators of tiny house villages. And it's pretty intuitive to realize that one kind of structure in a tiny house village isn't going to suit everybody. And what we need is a range of different operating options for people to go to. So as I heard in one of your meetings this week, one size does not fit all. So we need to have some different operators out there. The other part of the amendment would propose taking the $1.2 million that was to destroy two existing tiny house villages, makes no sense at this time, and that $1.2 million would go into the operating budget for those 20 new villages. So thank you for listening, and please vote for that amendment.
Thank you, Peggy. Do we have a number 70? It looks like, it looks to me like it's Stephen, might not be Laberth. Tiny Homes, if any of my colleagues see a name and can read it better. Let me know.
72, just to be clear.
I see that.
I think, because they must have been missing.
Oh, I see. So maybe a 72? Do we have a number 72 here? Okay, well, if I end up skipping somebody, raise your hand and let me know. So 73 is Laura Wright, 74 is Jackie Vaughn, 75 is Debbie Carlson.
Did you want to go back to the idea that you had earlier?
Is she ready?
Didn't, did she signal you that she was ready? No, they just told me that they would be ready about 20 minutes.
Good evening, y'all know me, Israel be free.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I'm here representing Wablock Washington Building Leaders of Change, as well as the Rainier Beach Action Coalition Corner greeters, as well as here in solidarity and support of Creative Justice and Community Passageways. Council members, I would like y'all to know that all the work that we do is in collaboration. And so, in fact, it is most effective that you fund all of these programs and organizations that we are bringing up today. And I actually, I got a recognition, y'all.
Recognize!
I don't think they heard me. I said, I got a recognition, y'all.
Recognize!
I want to shout out the Rainier Beach Action Coalition, Creative Justice, Community Passageways, Feast Seattle, God Green, Youth Undoing Institutional Racism, Nurturing Roots, the Black Elephant Army, the Black Prisoners Caucus, Credible Messengers, Surge, Decriminalize Seattle, I L P S, Asians for Black Lives, Parasol, A P I Chaya, A P CAG. None of this work that we do was done in silo. It takes all these organizations being fully funded in order to make this work.
Mission.
Recognize!
I don't think they heard me, I said I got another recognition.
Recognize!
I want to recognize that in the last two weeks, over 600 students, educators, parents, and community members have signed a petition and written stories about why Freedom Schools is so vital and must be fully funded by the city of Seattle in the 2020 budget. We're going to use the rest of our time to uplift some of the stories from our community.
Hi, I'm Michaela, I'm a program manager with Wablock. All right, Freedom Schools is an extraordinary program that supports scholars in ways SPS and their staff cannot. They provide amazing social-emotional education through a localized, cultural, and environment-based lens. I cannot stress how beneficial Wablock is to the community and scholars. During summer programming, students have the opportunity to work closely with adults that truly care about them, look like them, and come from where they are teaching. They provide education in arts, literature, social justice, restorative justice, and intergenerational leadership, just to name a few things. Our communities cannot afford to lose Wablock or Freedom Schools' presence.
Hey, my name is Shelby Jones. I was born and raised in South Seattle, and I'm also an educator at South Shore. Freedom Schools build powerful learning experiences for students who are most likely to be underserved in the regular school year. South Seattle youth and families deserve compelling, enriching, culturally-sustaining summer learning experiences.
Hi, I'm Hinkway 2, I was born and raised in South Seattle. I'm currently the operations specialist at Wablock. We need high-quality learning programs that are focused on, created for, and lead the young people of this neighborhood. This program is essential in continuing the work of empowering young people through academic success and social justice-oriented leadership.
Good evening, my name is Chelsea Gallegos, and it has been my distinct honor to serve the Rainier Beach High School community as the school's social worker for the last six years. I absolutely could not do my job without Wablock and Freedom Schools. During the summer months, the scholars learn so much about their identity, their community. They learn healing and restorative practices. They engage in a day of social action. When I first started at Rainier Beach, we had a major attendance issue because kids could not afford bus fare. Shout out to Mike O'Brien and the Transit Riders Union, who helped us launch a transit campaign. Four years later, we now have free year-round Orca passes for every single high schooler in the district. And that is all because of the 2015 Freedom School scholars. Please continue to invest in this program.
Good evening, my name is Darzel Touch. I am an educator because of this Freedom Schools program and an original founder of Wablock. I'm going to read a testimony from one of our former Rainier Beach High School students, who is now a senior at the University of Minnesota. As a Dunlap Elementary, Aki Karosi Middle School, and Rainier Beach High School graduate, and Freedom School participant for four years, I saw the direct need for Freedom Schools in the South End. The program honestly built me into who I am today and inspired me to continuously not only seek justice, but to always grow in my power. I learned that my voice matters and that I can create change where it's needed by speaking up and speaking loud. If I did not get the ability to participate in Freedom Schools and grow with the amazing staff, I would not be a senior at the University of Minnesota with the intention of becoming a doctor and opening a private practice that serves marginalized communities of color.
Oh, great.
These are just 10 of the stories. We have a storybook that we've created for each of you, and we hope you take the time to look at it. We also look forward to meeting with each of you in coming weeks. Thank you for your time.
And we have 74, is that Jackie? 74 Jackie Vaughn?
No, it's not.
Are you, does somebody have a 74 card?
I got it.
Okay.
But I'm Dominique Davis from Community Passageways.
You know, I thought I recognized you, Dominique. Okay, so 74, Debbie Carlson is 75, and Peter Cleary is 76. Okay. Please go ahead.
Okay, hi, how you guys doing? First of all, I want to shout out to Sawant's office for reaching out to me and talking, asking what our needs are in our community. I appreciate that. I also want to shout out to the council for supporting our youth consortium and financing that last year. I really appreciate that. That's what got the ball rolling. I'm here, but all the community organizations that just got rattled off a few minutes ago, those are all my friends and all my allies in this fight. Community Passageways is a felony diversion program. And we've been doing this work for the last three and a half years. I'm not going to go into that, because I'm sure most of you guys already know about that. What I do want to talk about is this youth consortium that you guys financed. In that youth consortium, we have a couple of community organizations that have partnered with us, Creative Justice, Safe Futures, and the African Community Housing and Development Program. We've been building this community, youth community consortium for the last year. These young people have been meeting every week and been planning on, and on doing this forum that they did here at City Hall, which you guys are aware of. And it was an awesome forum. These guys planned it, they put it together, they put the questions together, they facilitated it, they had panels, they did report cards, they graded answers to the questions, they did the whole nine. They planned it from beginning to end, I'm so proud of them. But through that process, they did workshops with people that work through the city and the county to learn how the local elections work. I'm here because I want to talk about how do we take money from the systems and put money into community systems, right? How do we take the investments that are going into locking these same kids up that are so brilliant and bright and on fire to learn and to make a difference in their community? How do we take the money that does that and locks them up and puts them away and put that in a position where they can keep building their community up and keep being an asset to their community? This program that we're doing, more and more kids want to keep coming and be part of the youth consortium. We get a ton of kids in Community Passageways. I'm not worried about that. We don't need no more referrals there. We're swamped. But for the youth consortium, I had to close the doors because I didn't have enough finances to pay these kids the stipends that they deserve, because I say you have intellectual properties. You guys need to be paid for the intelligence that you have. So I pay them for their intelligence and their intellectual properties. I pay them for their time, because I want them to feel valued, and also have them come and show their brilliance in places that they normally wouldn't be in. And they're talking about the things that's needed in their community. We make them think, we take them through workshops and have them developing the leaders, instead of just being people in the community that are being criminalized and looked at as, you know, people standing on a corner not doing nothing, and being harassed by the police or whatever it is, right? Some of these kids were facing prison charges, some of these kids were facing criminal charges at one time. We've been able to divert them out the system, and now they're walking down a path of success and doing the things they need to do. Some of them are even business owners and got jobs in apartments and doing a good job at being young adults, right? How do we grow that? Let's take the money from where we've been investing it that we know it doesn't work. We've been investing money in systems that don't work, and we keep pouring money into the same system expecting a new result from something that we've been working on trying to do for a long time. It don't work! We all know it don't work! And we know it does work. You see it right before your eyes. You know these things work. Community engagement works at a higher level. Our recidivism rates are killing the system's recidivism rates. There's nothing, nothing the system can do better than what community can do, not even close. Community is way better than the system. Let's pour money into it so we can build the resources up and capacity up to do, spread our touch across the whole county, not just the city. So anyway, I'm here to advocate for us decriminalizing our city, decriminalizing our young adults, decriminalizing our youth, building them up and giving them opportunities and chances to be the great people that they are. I'm going to let one of my young kings go ahead and close this out.
How you doing? How you doing? My name is Kayshon Adams. I've been spoke on this a couple, few times, and met a couple of you guys before, but just the journey that I've took since the three years of rocking with Big Bro and speaking on panels and different events, I was facing three felony charges. I'm a business owner now, I got a contract with the Department of Public Defense, and just taking steps. Just taking steps, and my big bro right here, just taking the investment of his time and all the time, all these youth that are showing up here, and the youth that we had to deny into the program, because, like he said, our capacity's just not high enough. We don't have enough people to come and teach the things... to come and teach the things that we're wanting to learn. We have a lot of people who are willing and want to learn and change their lives, but in the marginalized communities that we come from, funding is not being placed into our communities. So we need an opportunity. If you see the work that we're doing is working and you see that the youth are, you know, we're the future right here. So if you're willing to ignite for the future, igniting the investment, igniting to the people that are right here in your face, right here that want to make change into the society, we're up next. We're going to be sitting on these seats next. So information should be. And that's all I want to say. I hope you guys support this cause.
Do we have Debbie Carlson? Or did she speak earlier? Okay, great. Peter Cleary, Seattle Counseling, number 76. 77 Levi Gonzalez. Nice. And after 77 is Jennifer Pierce, 78, and Stephen Prey, 79. Thank you. Go ahead. I'm going to ask, please ask the people as you leave, please, like, get out in the hall before you continue your conversations.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for spending your time here. I know it's of value and it is getting kind of late and so patiently listening to all the diverse voices and important issues. I am an LGBTQ cisgendered man. My pronouns are he, him, his. And my name is Peter Cleary. I have the great fortune of working with Seattle Counseling Service, and I am very proud to be the program assistant for Project Neon. Project Neon has been offering harm reduction services for 26 years in Seattle. And I work full-time and I'm able to rent an apartment where I live with my two dogs. This hasn't always been the case, though. I have been unsafely housed. I have been homeless. I have injected illicit drugs. And I'm here to add my voice to those who have already spoken so passionately in support of funding the pilot program for medically assisted treatment for methamphetamine use disorder. I work with some of the most marginalized and stigmatized people in our community. And I've watched so many people struggle with substance use disorder, and I've watched the amazing changes that come with recovery. Please fund this pilot program. We so desperately need a viable medically assisted treatment program for methamphetamine use disorder. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings, council members. Thank you for all being here. My name is Jay Scott. I'm 29 years old. I've been a peer educator for Seattle Counseling Services Project Neon for over two years. I'm a recovery coach for Pierce Seattle, and I am the founder of the Live Healthy, Find Hope Project, a street outreach program. We help people who are experiencing homelessness and substance use. I'm here to speak alongside the Public Defenders Association on the Say Yes to Drug Users' Health, a project to help with methamphetamine use disorder. I've been in recovery for crystal meth since August 7th of 2016. I have lived experience in the pain of suffering, the stigma, and the insanity that methamphetamine use disorder can bring upon one's life as well as loved ones. My substance use lost my home, made my children homeless, took almost everything away from me, including my mind. Now I stand before you as living proof that we do recover. Now I stand, but it's not easy. I have a close relationship with members of our community who are blessed with medically assisted treatment for opiate use disorder. I have witnessed the power and wonder it has blessed them with so that they could grow, rise up against their own substance use, and become a great asset to the community. It has given them their life back, and then, most importantly, it's given them hope. As we all know, opiate epidemic that has not just plagued our community, but our country, has taken so many lives. King County Public Health Department shows that overdose deaths due to methamphetamine has surpassed heroin and other opiate use deaths this year. From my personal experience and professional experience, I don't see a lot of people offering viable solutions in efforts to help towards methamphetamine use disorder. From my personal experience, I'm here today as not only a person who has experienced the struggles of trying to recover, but to be the voice of those who cannot be here themselves. It is within your power to grant funding for this pilot program in a world with so many problems and few solutions. It is our responsibility to give those who are still suffering another tool to help them find hope and live a healthier, happier life. I want to thank Councilmember O'Brien for sponsoring this budget, Chair Bagshot, and Councilmember Gonzalez for their initial support. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Levi Gonzalez is 77. And then 78 is Jennifer Pierce, and 79 is Stephen Prey.
My name is Morgan Harris. I'm here with my colleagues on behalf of the probation department at the City of Seattle. I specifically work for pretrial services within the Court Resource Center.
Would you please get to the microphone? Thanks.
So I specifically work with pretrial services at the Court Resource Center. As of today, we have 150 people on our pretrial caseload, all of whom have been referred to us in lieu of being in custody while their case is being adjudicated. That's 150 people who are able to go to work, attend treatment, meet with case management, and be with their families instead of being in jail. When they meet with us at our office, we are following up with their case management, always asking what resources a client may need, calling detox centers to get someone a bed date, helping to schedule assessments for chemical dependency and mental health treatment, staying in constant contact with case managers and counselors to eliminate a client's barriers between themselves and the court. Additionally, we can connect them with our Resource Center. At the Court Resource Center, which is run by the probation department and is open to the public, not just for court clients, we have DSHS, King County Public Health, Seattle Public Library, as well as agencies who provide cell phones, employment readiness, referrals to other resources within our city along with clothing, hygiene kits, and emergency food supply. The goal always of pretrial services and probation is to engage with our clients and do our part for them, people who are part of our community, to live healthier and safer lives.
My name's Todd Sanders. I also work with the probation department. During my time with the court, I've also worked in pretrial services and as a screener at the jail. I would like to share just the work we do as PR screeners and also tell you about the personal experience I had as a probation counselor. So the personal recognizant screeners are present in the jail 365 days a year, 24 hours a day in order to interview all individuals who are arrested on SMC charges. And those individuals who we are eligible to be released, we actually release from custody so they don't have to stay in the jail pending an appearance before the court. Additionally, on nonjudicial days, we interact with the judges through an electronic hearing calendar by phone and email in order to expedite the process of getting those people out of custody. We also assign public defenders, coordinate with public defense to put them in contact with their clients. We coordinate temporary releases for people who have funerals or other family emergencies. We contact friends and families, outside resources, nurses and psychiatric staff for clients who have trouble navigating the jail system. We explain to both people in custody and out of custody their court obligations, how to contact their attorney, what shelter resources are available, what the community resource center has to offer. We answer calls from family and friends to help them navigate the process. A cut to probation will serve only to keep people in jail longer with fewer options, less information, and fewer choices, chances to understand the criminal justice system.
My name's Levi Gonzalez. I work for Seattle Probation as well. And my position actually is a direct result of Seattle's continuing evolution of supervision. I monitor individuals with the ignition interlock device. So anyone that gets a DUI is going to have to deal with that in one form or the other. And I work with them to rectify getting their license back, which any of you know can be a trying process for an individual between the interlock SR22 insurance. So I'm helping them right from the get-go. Every person that gets put on probation that has a DUI-related charge, I'm meeting with and helping them all along the way. In addition to that, as my colleagues are going to explain further and give some examples, we aren't DOC. We are not trying to put people in jail. We are not the standard probation that you might have in your head. And, you know, waiting many hours after a full day of work to come here and knowing public perception about probation, we just wanted to be clear and hope that you might come to a new understanding that we are meeting people where they are and working with them to help them succeed. As you're probably already aware, there's a lot of great programs that talk tonight. The reality is, though, that there are mandatory monitoring required for DUI charges, for DV-related charges. And we are on the cutting edge of supervising them and want, you know, a cut to the funding with that would derail us from making that progress that myself and those behind me would love to tell you more about. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Is the next, Jennifer Pierce, are you part of municipal court?
Yes.
All right, so you're the next group. So go ahead.
Hello. So I'll start it off. My name is Mena J. And I'm one of the probation counselors at Seattle Municipal Court. I work with the court's community service and work crew programs, both programs which are alternatives to confinement. And clients that work doing either community service or work crew have a lot of good things to say about it. It gives them a work ethic. They're able to come out of there. Sometimes they've gotten jobs at some of the nonprofits that they volunteer at. And people, we have the social justice component since people are able to, you know, work off their fines. They're not penalized because of their fines, et cetera. I came from the Department of Corrections, and what drew me to the court was the holistic approach that the court has to probation in being creative with restorative justice and the programs we administer to our clients. And that's why we have different units, like domestic violence unit, DUI unit. It's all very specialized attention to our clients. We're the faces our clients see on a daily basis. We see their ups and downs, and we help them every step of the way. Every part of probation is very crucial to the success of our clients. So we would ask that you maintain our funding.
Good evening. I'm Sean Richard Davis, an almost 28-year employee of the city of Seattle. 15 years as a domestic violence victim advocate. In the last 12 years, I've worked in probation, both in day reporting and in probation, where I manage right now a caseload of probably 90-plus defendants or clients that are on DUI supervision. What I bring to the job is my passion, is my compassion, is my love for people and to see people do their best. And what the person that you see tonight, the smile that you see tonight, that's what I bring to the job every day. And we work with clients from intake to completion of the case. We have a plan set out for them for them to be successful with probation. And we try to follow up with them to make sure they're complying with treatment, they're complying with ADIS, they're complying with victim panels. We help them to get into inpatient treatment. I'll give you an example of a young man that I was just working with in court last week. He's in his mid-20s. He had previously gone to school[1388.97] He had previously gone to school at the University of Washington, but he had not finished school yet. Came to me as a client, and he is addicted to a prescription drug. So he has relapsed a number of times, but every time he relapses, who does he call? He calls me because he knows that I'm going to help him get to the right place. Not only that, but his parents also came to visit me without telling him because of their concern that their child was going to die from this addiction. And so as a probation counselor, then I heard their cries and tried to give them all the resources that I could, but also to let them know that he was responsible for this. So when we left court, what happened was his attorney told the judge that the three of us were working together as a team for his success. And that's every day at probation. That's what we do.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Pierce, and I'm a probation counselor and a Protec 17 shop steward. I would like to introduce you to the SMC probation counselors, who in the past have worked as domestic violence advocates, mental health clinicians, drug diversion court case managers, inpatient mental health specialists, court prep clerks, child protective service social workers, family team decision-making facilitators, youth court managers, juvenile probation counselors, public guardians, drug court work release case managers, diversion boards coordinators, special needs schoolteachers, housing boundary spanners, adoption workers, housing coordinators, family advocates, juvenile rehabilitation counselors, and behavioral intervention specialists. Simply put, you will not find a more multi-disciplined group of professionals under one organization serving a common purpose of to serve, treat, support those who find themselves in the court system. Any cut to our probation budget shuts the door on the passion, the knowledge, and expertise this group brings to us every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for coming. Next up, Stephen Prey, Tricia Madden. Oh, I have an announcement before we get going. So Allison just wanted me to remind all of you that the parking garage, if you're in the Sea Park parking garage, is closing at 10 o'clock. Right now, it's 9:36. If you want, there are some pages over here that you can write your testimony on, and those can be part, become part of the public record. So if you are in that position where you're parked over there, I just want to alert you that you've got about 24 minutes. Also, if you would kindly, when you leave, use the elevator to take you down because what's happening on the first floor, our lobby, we're setting up now for our overnight shelter. So just out of a matter of respect for the people that are trying to get settled in, if you'll take the elevator and go down to L1, security, is that about, and then somebody? Okay, so you wanted to take the elevator, first floor lobby, okay, very good. Thank you. So sorry to interrupt you, but Stephen, if you're ready, Tricia Madden is number 80, and Ed Solzang is 81.
Good evening, council. My name is Stephen Prey, and I'm a union representative at Protec 17 and represent over 30 probation counselors at the Seattle Municipal Court. It is my understanding that agreeing sheet for a $1.5 million budget cut to the Seattle Municipal Court was proposed. Whether this is still on the table or not is unclear, but it seems like every year we're having these conversations about the worthiness of our probation program again and again. This proposal, or any like it, is misguided and undoubtedly an attack on organized labor and Protec 17 members. Let's be clear, there is no way a budget cut of this size will not directly impact the working condition of our probation counselors, who are tirelessly every single day and chose to dedicate their careers to serving our community. How can we say that this proposed cut respects the work of our court employees? How can we say that this proposed cut isn't going to create barriers to our probation officers providing the best services possible to their clients? We can't. There are no guarantees that this proposed budget cut won't lead to elimination of positions or that our work won't be contracted out. Many of you, sitting here on the council today, speak about how you're an ally of organized labor and a champion of workers' rights. I don't want to hear this rhetoric in your public comment or when you come to us for an endorsement, I want to see it when you vote on a budget. I'd like to offer each and every one of you an open invitation to meet with myself and my members to talk about the work that we do each day. Thank you.
Thank you. Tricia Madden is number 80, Ed Solzang is 81, and Jen is 82.
That person actually left, can go in their spot?
What's your name?
That's all right?
Yeah, what's your name?
Yep.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
My name is Russell Hanalami, and I'm talking about the Uber tax and the proposed minimum wage for Uber drivers.
Russell, wait, do you have a different number before you get started?
110, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you, go ahead, please.
So the 51 cent tax can be done better, there's alternative ways to raise funds, and this really puts an undue hardship on disadvantaged communities. If you are low income, or as many of my riders are, fixed income on social security or disabled, this is going to hurt their pocket. And there, if a 10% sales tax has not provided you with the money to do the things you need to do, you need to relook at the budget. Furthermore, on the aspect of the proposed minimum wage, the minimum wage that they received in New York City is $17.22. They have quit taking new applicants as Uber drivers as of April of this year. Furthermore, they are locking people out of the app, meaning that when the hours are not busy enough to support the drivers on the road, they are locking people out. As it stands right now, I have no family, and I can work for 84 hours a week, I have no problem with that, I can maximize my profits fantastically. This is only restricting my ability to work. I worked for 3 hours and 52 minutes today, and I made $134 and some change. I really do not need the council to get involved with my private affairs and legislate any further. Thank you.
Okay. Ed Solzang is 81, Jen is 82, Alicia Glennwell is 83.
All right, thank you all for staying strong through this marathon.
We're here for you, buddy.
My name is Ed Solzang. I'm here on behalf of 45,000 members of FCIU 775 and Garfield Class of 77. We're here in support of the Office of Labor Standards. OLS provides a level playing field for fair-minded business owners and much-needed stability for the most vulnerable workers in our city. That means workers for whom an hour or two shaved off a time card can make the difference between a $10 insurance copay and a $2,000 uncovered emergency room visit and worse. I'm going to guess a lot of those workers on the margin live in our tiny villages. Am I have that right? Through outreach and enforcement, OLS has helped thousands get relief from unfair labor practices and return millions of dollars in wages stolen from them. Those recovered wages are going to be spent in our local economy and represent a huge savings in misery and public assistance dollars. Enforcement of worker protections levels the playing field for fair-minded business owners by taking away the cheater's advantage. You've stood up for good business and workers on the margin by passing ordinances for paid sick and safe time, fair chance employment, domestic workers ordinance, wage theft, I think there's a total of 11. Please keep the teeth in those ordinances by, with funding for the OLS. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Jen, and who's your buddy?
Nathaniel.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Nathaniel.
And what's your number, Nathaniel?
82.
Okay, so two minutes for the two of you?
Yep.
Okay.
So good evening, my name is Jen Muse, I'm the executive director at the Ballard Food Bank. Thank you for your leadership and support for human services, including the inflation adjustment that was passed this summer. Tonight, I'm here to urge you to support SHSC's budget recommendations and specifically the comparable, comparable worst study put forth by councilmembers to want. Yesterday, I spoke with two separate providers who were struggling to keep staff. Both shared they are losing experienced staff that had developed relationships with their clients. At our own food bank, we partner with several nonprofit providers. Social workers visit the food bank to conduct outreach and sign clients up for services. In fact, we have seen the very same social worker sign up for that service. When a staff person leaves, the ramifications on our clients can be devastating, yet it is a common story amongst nonprofits, that amazing staff leave their organizations for high-paying jobs, as increasingly more difficult to live and work in Seattle. We can do better. Human service staff plays a critical role in building our community's well-being. Yes, we're here for the mission, but our staff also need to be able to afford to live and work in the city. I know as a council, you value human service providers, I urge you to support the SHSC budget recommendations and the comparable worst study. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like to draw attention that oftentimes, we are drawing from the same communities that we are serving for the people, and that this leads to a question of social justice in paying people an equitable wage. If we are not willing to pay people in the community to serve their own community that they love and value, we are not living up to Seattle's own Race and Social Justice Initiative claims that we need to be valuing, learning, and showing up for the community. We ask you to take the first step towards that in showing up and valuing the people that are showing up for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you both. So Alicia Glennwell, thank you. Kelly Rogers, 84, Elizabeth James, 85, Elizabeth Pato, 86. Nice to see you.
Hi, thanks, good evening. My name is Alicia Glennwell, I'm with the Coalition Ending Gender-Based Violence. On behalf of our more than 30-member programs, we support a number of funding proposals currently being considered in this year's budget process. It's heartening to have so many items to talk about that I have to speak quickly to get them all in. First and always, we are proud members of the Seattle Human Services Coalition. We support the full portfolio of SHSC human service funding recommendations, particularly the comparative worth analysis to address the historic underfunding of human service work in our region. The next two items I'm going to talk about are also included in the SHSC budget portfolio. An estimated 132,000 women a year experience intimate partner violence in Seattle, and when they do, many of them call domestic violence hotlines. I was a hotline advocate for eight years. I will never forget some of the deeply profound, heartbreaking, triumphant conversations I had with survivors on the line. The hotline was the place my heart first connected with this work, and it's, for some survivors, the only place they can connect to services that center their safety and choice. The proposed funding for the coordinated countywide domestic violence hotline will give survivors the time, focused attention, and experienced response they need and deserve. Please protect and approve this critical funding. We also strongly support funding for civil representation for sexual assault survivors. We thank councilmember Sawant for her championship of this issue. Sexual assault survivors face unique, complex civil legal circumstances and require access to attorneys that are specialized to their needs. I also join our partners at the Urban Indian Health Board in urging full funding for Resolution 31900, approved by this council weeks ago, which called for sustainable investments that address the missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls crisis. In particular, we support funding to remedy racial misclassification in law enforcement systems, and investment in Indigenous-led organizations to provide direct services to Native people who have experienced violence. Finally, in acknowledgement of the important conversation many of us here want to have tonight about the harms of mass incarceration, we urge you to explore and expand community engagement and community-based alternatives to the criminal legal system, including restorative and transformative justice processes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well done, Alicia, that was fast with lots of information. Kelly Rogers, 84, Elizabeth James, 85, and Elizabeth Pato, 86. Round here? Okay, moving to 87, Amanda Farman, 89, Michael Wolfe, and 90 is Imogen Williams. Excuse me, just a sec. I'm sorry, what's your name?
I'm Sarah.
And what's your number?
87. Is that where we were at?
Good, great, absolutely.
Finally.
Ah, wake up. Almost done.
Almost done. So mostly y'all know me from when I worked here, what's up, MOB. So when I was here, we worked on Resolution Detention Zero, a resolution that was moving toward ending youth detention, and that was passed in these chambers about five years ago. Afterwards, we worked to put money into restorative justice for alternatives to incarceration. And after that, the community came together to block the bunker, removing money that would build a bullet-and-bomb-proof police station into affordable housing. Seattle has a long history of supporting abolition, and I'm here to remind y'all of that legacy so that we can continue it by divesting $3.2 million from the Seattle Police Department. Broken windows policing is expensive. It doesn't work, it only perpetuates poverty and social problems. Funding the Greenlight Project, Freedom Schools, community-based first responders, and allocate funding to create a harm reduction working group. These get at the root of the social problems, not just punishing people for poverty, which is all the SPD does. Also, on a side note, as a sustainability scientist and climate justice advocate, allocating $3 million into a pee patch in Ballard is offensive. Of all districts, Ballard has the most amount of single-family homes. That means these peoples have backyards, and wealth, and grocery stores, and whiteness. So this is the opposite of equity and justice, move that money to the South end where it's actually needed.
Hello. My name is Helen, I'm a student at the University of Washington. I'm calling on all councilmembers to reject the proposed expansions within the Seattle Municipal Court. Please do not allocate $170,000 to the Seattle Municipal Court for enhanced probation. Earlier today, we heard from parole officers, who talked about how a lot of the people that they deal with are people who are dealing with addiction. If people are dealing with addiction, we shouldn't be using the court system or in using jails to address that, we should use literally anything else. Parole officers aren't social workers, they're not health workers, they're parole officers at the end of the day. In addition, increased tracking by probation officers, oh my gosh, I said the wrong word, I meant probation, may also increase drug tests, and these forms of surveillance and coercion are counter to the spirit and accumulated wisdoms of harm reduction and public health practitioners. The confusion around the roles of probation officers who double as counselors further create confusion for impacted populations. Obligated by the court to report violations, probation officers are not effective in serving as confidants for court-involved officials.
Hi, my name is Amanda, I'm a resident of Seattle and also a member of Decriminalize Seattle. So I'd also like to say, please do not allocate $150,000 to the city attorney's office for case conferencing. The details of the pilot project are unclear. For example, no language in the pilot guarantees the presence of the defendant's attorney or public defender or the defendant themselves, and we do not trust the criminal legal system to hold itself accountable. I would like the council to allocate this $320,000 toward the youth consortium package consisting of Creative Justice Community Passageways and the Safe Futures Youth Center. The council should also support equitable development and anti-displacement efforts like the Equitable Development Initiative and the community-driven planning like the Graham Street Station project. I do not support the criminal legal system using the language of harm reduction and reform to further invest and expand itself. The city should instead invest in and expand real harm reduction services, following models like the VITAL Program and the Crisis Solution Center in Seattle. These are just two examples of programs that the city can invest in. And study after study in places like Los Angeles, Philadelphia, and New Jersey have shown that increased probation does not result in lower, sorry, lower crime rates. And nationally, municipalities are moving away from probation, so it doesn't make sense for a city to double down on this program. Our budget should be addressing the root causes of why people end up in the criminal legal system. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, then, Imogen Williams, is she still here? May not have, Greg is number 91, and Carla Esquivel is 92.
Great. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you all for staying here so late. We did have a bigger group earlier, but a lot of our members had to go out and either help people get home safely on the road today, or attend to family needs and various other things. To that end, one of our drivers wanted me to submit his written testimony, so if I could give that to...
Linda, can you grab that? Thank you.
Now, on to the matter at hand, the Fair Share Plan. So Drive Forward is supportive of some of the general ideas of the Fair Share Plan, the idea of having a minimum hourly guarantee, which we've communicated very publicly, should be set at about $27.50 an hour, from data that we've gleaned from our members through surveys and focus groups. This is a data-driven number, we think the city could adopt that safely and be able to achieve reasonable earnings value, earnings standard for drivers in this industry. On top of that, we do believe that there should be some kind of pathway for a driver deactivation review panel. We think it should be driver-led. On the resource center, it's a great idea, but it should be, whoever's managing it, should be in a democratic, open process that any organization can apply for, that is voted on by the drivers. The city shouldn't select who runs that program. It should be voted on by the drivers in a democratic fashion. We are opposed to the tax because it does not directly benefit drivers. It goes to a project where you can't even manage to order the right kind of street car. It's not fair to drivers to be taking money out of their pocket, charging riders more to go to projects that don't benefit them. So that's why we feel this is an unfair plan. And that's all I have to say, I'm going to yield my time to some of my drivers now.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you so much for taking your late evening time to hear us out today. My name is Lynn Reed. I'm here on behalf of Drive Forward and myself. I'm an independent business owner and a TNC driver. I live in Olympia. Very commonly end up up north on a drive to the airport or have a meeting up here and then just turn my app on and head out. The flexibility that I have with driving TNC is everything to me. I have hidden illnesses, a bad knee that's getting worse, and some days I head out and feel like I can take on the TNC world, and other days I get to the end of the block and have to turn around and go home. So the flexibility that we have now means so much to drivers, and my fear is that with this increased tax, it may force companies into eliminating drivers on the road to be able to fulfill these limits that could come out of this. Drive Forward proposed a $27.50 an hour minimum floor earnings guarantee that included $5 to $6 for expenses, and we submitted that to the mayor's office, and it fell on deaf ears. Like Michael said, we got data from our driver membership that was real data on what it would take for a minimum wage floor for drivers, and unfortunately, we weren't listened to. We need that implemented now, not a year from now when the mayor gets to her study that she wants to do on it. So we also looked at it, and it would cost about $0.05 per trip, not $0.50, to implement the driver-led program for deactivations and things like that. And so please take a second look at this and figure out where you can get money for a misdirected street car, other than taking it out of the pockets of drivers. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Dave, I'm a diamond driver for Uber. The one thing I would like to stress to the councilmembers is that if things go as planned right now, you have $17.75 million over five years that will probably go to the Teamsters to run the deactivation board. I would rather have somebody look at this number and look at alternatives that might be there, where you can save some money and go to other, more important programs. I know for a fact that I will actually put my hat in the ring there and say I can do it for half that amount. I'm sure there are other people that are more qualified, they can probably do it for half as much. If you could just look at that, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you, for your time.
Just to clarify, it's not 3.5, it's up to 3.5 million, just to clarify, it's not a... Up to 3.5. So it's...
Correct, it's 17.75 over five years, equates about $3.5 million a year to run a board for about 25 drivers a month.
Up to. Up to. It's a ceiling.
It's not a minimum.
I understand your point.
All right, thank you. Next items, Imogen Williams here. So Greg at 91, very good.
Greg Calucci, I'm number 91.
Good, please, before you get started, Carla Esquivel at 92, and Lynn Moore at 93. Thanks, please go ahead.
I'm here for supporting the people's budget and specifically money to the tenants' union of Washington. I live in a low-income building that was the first of the, in this nation for people, actually in the world probably, for people with AIDS. It's called the Cal Anderson House. It's on First Hill. This past year, we were running into issues with our management, not the owner of the building, but the manager of the building, and I reached out to Shama's office, and they suggested contacting tenants' union of Washington, and they were really helpful, they supported us, and empowered myself and other tenants to approach the management company, and the result was that we have a new management company, and none of our tenants, who are vulnerable tenants, were evicted. So that's a powerful thing. And I feel like they do that kind of work often, the tenants' union. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming tonight. 92, Carla, and then 93, Lynn Moore, and 94, Lonnie.
Hi, my name is Carla Esquivel, and I'm a small business owner in Columbia City, still one of the most diverse areas in the city, but just barely. Over my past 15 years in business, I have seen a multitude of small businesses and people of color businesses be forced to leave a community they love. Right now, I can count at least two businesses, long time, that may be forced to leave because their rents are being tripled. Because I think the city needs, I think the city needs to help protect small businesses from gouging rents and from one of the most regressive tax structures in the country that only benefits big businesses and large corporations. I want to acknowledge the people's budget and Shama Sawant's office are working with small businesses like mine to spearhead funding for a central district in southeast Seattle survey that will identify key factors that lead to business displacement and to determine steps the city can take to help small businesses and marginalized businesses. Small businesses are the fibers of our... Small businesses are the fibers of our communities. We don't want to turn Main Street into a place that only big chains with deep pockets can afford. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Carla. 93, Lynn Moore, and 94, Lonnie, and 95, Jessie Cook.
I'm 93. It's Ian Yu. As a community member, I'm here, and we're very proud people, so I'm here to share that my dad is homeless. He had cardiac arrest six times, and now he's at a rehab center. He shouldn't have to go through the extreme in order to receive the services that he needs in order to wait for housing. So as somebody that understands where my dad is at, you know, I feel like the government here is to mediate harm caused by white, ableist, cis hetero patriarchy capitalism and serve the people who need you the most, not judges, not businesses, not the cops. I pay more taxes than Bezos and the wealthy. I shouldn't have to serve up my heart on a platter to you to remind you who you serve. Let's be clear, the police and the courts will not be in compliance with the Race and Social Justice Initiative, which the city council and the attorney supports. Judges should be organizing themselves out of a job and not asking for more funding. $3 million should not also go towards the Ballard, One Ballard P patch. It's a bad look for Seattle. Here to support the community-based first responders and bystander trainings for community members who are the de facto first responders in non-medical emergencies. And also, I just want to say, the last public hearing, Young Folks Part of You Speaks was here at 9:00 PM. They were the last to speak while the judges got prioritized, and that is not okay.
Thank you.
My name is Nikita Oliver. I am the co-executive director of Creative Justice, which is an arts-based alternative to incarceration that partners with Coach Dominique with Community Passage Ways and the Youth Consortium. I want to ask the council to please not invest additional funding in Seattle Municipal Court with enhanced probation, to not invest $150,000 in the city attorney's office without a clear plan as to what it means to have case conferencing, and understand that the courts could easily violate people's rights by not ensuring that that plan actually honors what it means to have a health-based approach in our communities, and want to ask you not to invest more money in emphasis patrols. What I would like you to invest in is enhancing our community-based organizations that are doing frontline work that keep young people and adults from ever touching the criminal legal system, a system which is punitive, retributive, and traumatizing by nature. I would like you to reemphasize your commitment to the Zero Youth Detention Resolution that you voted on four years ago, and our city's desire to get to a place of ensuring that every young person in every community has the full opportunity to thrive, and I want you to incentivize our youth in that direction. A part of Creative Justice program is to ensure that every young person receives a stipend for their time with us, acknowledging that economics is often a driver into the criminal legal system, and that we live in a city that continually criminalizes poverty. Two of the proposals that are put before you want is for the Youth Consortium, which helps young people develop their voice and their leadership skills, but the other, which I spoke with Shama Sawant's office about, is helping fund the youth stipends that Creative Justice gives to young people that are directly involved in the criminal legal system, to be involved in arts-based projects that advocate for changes to that system. We want to honor their intellectual capital and their brilliance, but we want to acknowledge also that capitalism plays a role in why young people are driven into the criminal legal system. So again, I would ask you not to invest in courts and police, but instead invest in community-based alternatives to incarceration and policing.
Thank you. And we have Lonnie. I saw Lonnie. Here she comes. Lonnie, Jessie, and then number 96, looks like Flosa.
Hi, I'm Lonnie. I'm currently a resident at Whittier Heights Tiny House. And to my understanding, last year or the year before, there was almost a half million dollars spent on picking up trash and campsites throughout Seattle, where that could have went to helping people with tiny houses.
Lonnie, use the microphone, will you?
They're detrimental to our society and to the public in cleaning up the streets and everything, and the tiny houses are real, and the help that is there to rejuvenate people of poverty and homelessness is vital to our community. And I just ask you to please put some funding towards more tiny houses in Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. 95.
Hi, my name is Jessie. I'm at the Whittier House, Whittier Heights Tiny House Homeless Village, and I am so thankful and so grateful to be there. When I was found, I was staying in my car, and now I can lock my door, I can go to the bathroom, I can take a shower, I can cook, I can wash my clothes, and I'm just very thankful for that. And I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your time in troubles, for listening to each and every one of us. And I'm just asking that, you know, that you think more about the families who do need all these helps, the baby boomers like me, you know, and everybody who really needs the help. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Jessie. Do we have a 96? Flosa, 96? Dawn Blakeney, I don't see him. 98. I cannot read 98. And after 98, we've got the Reverend Angela Ying, and then 100, Harm Reduction Research Treatment Center, but I don't know who's got 100.
Hi, I have 98, but my name is Arista Chen. My name is Arista Chen, and I'm the organizing director at Feast Seattle, a food justice organization led by youth of color in South Seattle and South King County. Feast is here to support the South End. We support funding Freedom Schools, and big shout out to Jarrell and Wablock for their support, and all our students and families in South Seattle and South King County who couldn't be here tonight because it's pretty late. And we're here today to advocate for food justice by funding scratch cooking for Seattle Public Schools, including purchasing scratch cooking equipment and funding training for cafeteria staff, not to use $3 million to fund P patches as Mayor Durkin proposes, a lot of which would go towards land acquisition in Ballard. For many students, especially students who use the free and reduced lunch programs, school is where students get two of their three meals for the day. However, in a survey Feast students conducted at South Seattle and South King County high schools last year, approximately one in four students skip school lunch every day, and students have reported that skipping lunch makes them feel sleepy, like they can't focus, and ultimately negatively impacts their ability to learn. However, 73% of students said they would eat lunch more often if there were fresher items and more variety on the menu. Supporting SPS and making meals from scratch rather than using prepackaged meals and ingredients is the key to getting fresher, healthier items on the lunch menu, meals our students will actually eat, and ultimately supporting students' desire to do their best in school. We need to fund systemic change for food justice in our schools. P patches are one part, but we know that the most urgent and effective way to make systemic, equitable change for food justice is to fund scratch cooking, including equipment for cafeterias and training for kitchen staff, because when our students can eat fresh meals made from scratch, they report feeling healthier and more engaged. We urge the Seattle City Council to consider and adopt a budget that includes robust funding for scratch cooking in Seattle Public Schools and a healthier, more just, and equitable future for all of our students.
Thank you for coming. 99? Somebody have 99?
That's me.
Okay. And two minutes here, please.
I'm with my sisters. Come on in. We had 43 faith leaders from the Muslim, Jewish, Christian, Sikh, and Buddhist, and so a number of them had to leave, so I invited my South End sisters to join me in solidarity, and so they're all here with me. Good evening, I'm the Reverend Angela Ying. I am senior pastor at Bethany United Church of Christ, where we are a social justice community on the South End, and we are in coalition with partners such as Got Green, the Freedom School, which our young people talked about earlier, Youth Undoing Institutional Racism, No New Jail for the Youth, also Riwa, Ravenna, and Rainier Valley Cooperative Preschool, and the South End Rapid Response, not to mention Black Power Epicenter Cooperative. So I'm here tonight, though, as I speak on behalf of 43 faith leaders and their faith communities, Jewish, Christian, Muslim, Buddhist, Sikh, and their synagogues, their churches, their mosques, their temples, and the number of signatories is growing. As leaders of faith, we urge the city of Seattle to greatly expand the number of tiny house villages, as many have spoken tonight, to provide basic safety and human dignity to people currently living on our streets. Homelessness is a crisis crying out for humane, compassionate, just remedy. Last year, a record of 191 people died on Seattle and King County streets. That's unacceptable. That's unjust. And we found out that in a month, 5,228 people will be on the streets throughout the county without any shelter. Tonight, over 3,500 people will go to sleep under bridges, in tents, on sidewalks, on abandoned buildings, and in cars, and that's just plain unacceptable. But we can fix this. The tiny house villages have proven to be a lifeline to people without homes, as they shared tonight and gave witness. Currently, we have nine tiny house villages which are thriving in Seattle, providing life-saving shelter and community to hundreds of women, families with children, LGBTQ people, straight and gay couples, immigrants and refugees, domestic violence survivors, and people with pets, groups of people who have not and cannot access traditional shelters. Many of our faith communities have been involved in building, sponsoring tiny house villages, and...
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you very much. Can you just give us your last sentence?
Yes. We're excited that the city council, council member Sawant, has brought forward legislation to allow for up to 40 tiny house villages in the city, and we hope that you'll support it, for housing is a human right. Tiny house villages work, sweeps don't. Thank you very much.
Does someone have number 100? And Harm Reduction Research. Well, introduce yourselves, please.
Hi, my name's Tarmanyi Ventress. I'm a researcher and clinician at the Harm Reduction Research and Treatment Center. Let's see, I'm here to ask that you not allocate $170,000 to the Seattle Municipal Court for Enhanced Probation. I'm here to voice my concerns about the criminal legal system attempting to use the language of harm reduction to further invest and expand itself. Harm reduction is a set of approaches that aim to reduce harm, often substance-related harm, and to improve quality of life. Harm reduction is not coerced or mandated treatment, and it is not interventions that increase the likelihood that members of marginalized and stigmatized communities will find themselves enmeshed in an inherently adversarial system. We only have a few minutes, so I won't use them to read the longer definition of harm reduction in this book, a book that respects the communities that first articulated these principles, but I would like to introduce one of the authors of this text and the co-director of the Harm Reduction Research and Treatment Center, Dr. Seema Clipassefi.
Good evening. My name is Seema Clipassefi. I'm a psychologist, a clinical social worker, and an associate professor in psychiatry and behavioral sciences at the University of Washington Harborview Medical Center, where I co-direct the Harm Reduction Research and Treatment Center, along with Dr. Susan Collins, a professor at Washington State University. Dr. Collins and I prepared this statement jointly. We're all here tonight, and we are all invested in the same thing. How can we help people who have been marginalized by substance use disorder and protect public safety? To answer this question, we have spent the past 13 years conducting a series of peer-reviewed evaluations right here in Seattle with the very population this proposed plan would serve. Study after study has shown that overall, this population does not respond well to legal coercion or even abstinence-based treatment. Specifically, this population has been through abstinence-based treatment 16 times on average. Their attendance at abstinence-based treatment is not associated with decreased substance use or substance-related harm. So what does work to help both people who use substances and to improve public safety? Harm reduction approaches, which support people's autonomy to move toward positive behavior change on their own terms and timeline, even if they are not currently ready, willing, or able to stop using. In the past 13 years, we have scientifically evaluated many harm reduction approaches: D E S C's Low Barrier Housing First approach, Seattle's Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program, the Navigation Center, and our own center's own harm reduction interventions, which we offer at Harborview Medical Center. We have repeatedly found that harm reduction approaches, which do not require abstinence or even use reduction, are not associated with enabling increased use. Instead, harm reduction approaches are associated in every study with reduced use and substance-related harm. Community-level programs like Housing First and LEAD are also associated with decreased involvement with the criminal justice and legal systems when compared to systems as usual. They need to have adequate funding. But let me be clear about what harm reduction is versus what it is not. No definition of harm reduction would support enhanced probation, mandated abstinence-based treatment, or coercion by the criminal justice and legal systems. Well-intentioned as they may be, such approaches are diametrically opposed to everything that the harm reduction field stands for and every research finding we have accumulated over the past 13 years. We strongly urge you to not support funding enhanced probation and other legally coercive approaches, and instead allocate funding to already proven, evidence-based, true harm reduction practices that aim to reduce substance-related harm, improve quality of life, that are grounded in the community, and that promote social and racial justice. Thank you.
Courtney Jackson, and although I could speak to you as an academic or a professional, I'm choosing to speak with you as a community member whose family has been impacted by some of the policies that we're discussing today. Justice is a nebulous concept until we learn to think in terms of its material reality. For me, that reality manifested in a fatal disease transmitted to my stepdad through the drugs that landed him in prison or the tattoos that proved he had been there. It manifested in the felony charge that kept him from the transplant he needed to live, and it manifested in the financial and personal hole that his death left in my family. So when we talk about justice, we need to recognize that the punishment we give to an individual is the punishment we give to the family. This isn't justice. Expanding an inherently oppressive system is not justice.
Thank you very much. 101 is Joey Stanton. 102 is Laura Lee Sturm. And 103 is Barbara Finney. Do we have those?
My name is Joey Stanton.
Okay, Joey, that's great. Hold it for a sec.
Okay.
Do we have 102 and 103? Okay, great. Is 102 here? Okay. All right, come on up. Thank you. Thank you, Joey. Proceed.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate everybody staying up late. Y'all look great.
Better to look good than feel.
Kind of tired too, kind of hungry. A little bit about me, my name is Joey Stanton. I am an alumni of 1811. I am an alumni of the streets, and I am also an alumni of the criminal justice system. I really think that it is all of our job to monitor the narrative that we're giving people, what we are telling the public. Tonight, I heard the term "harm reduction" used approximately 42 times, okay? When I read the proposal for the enhancement of probation, in there, they said that they trained people in harm reduction. Okay, and in the very next sentence, the very next sentence, they committed, they told us about bad things, man, things that don't work, like graduated, what the hell was it? Sorry. Okay. Graduated sanctions, okay? And other small incentives. Those don't work. I mean, I don't want, I'm not trying to tell you your job, but damn it, stay in your lane. I mean, if we need to, you know, I mean, harm reduction is grassroots, okay? We learned from people like Bill Hobson, who started D E S C, Alan Marlat, who helped write this book. Dr. Seema Clipassefi. Seema Clipasefi, who helped write this book. And if you scour the pages of this book, you will see no mention, no mention of requirements other than where you're at, what you need, what can we do to help you get there. And that doesn't mean a free ride. It does not. And for those of you on this council that think that, sir, ma'am, you're wrong.
Thank you, Joey. So Laura, Laura Lee, Barbara Finney, Teresa Barker.
Hi.
Hi.
Great, well, thank you so much for being here tonight. Really appreciate everyone staying late. My name is Laura Lee Sturm, and I'm a Master's of Social Work student at the University of Washington, just started my second year. And I'm also the Outreach Manager with the University District Street Medicine for the Northlake Tiny House Village. So I'm here tonight to oppose the mayor's proposal to remove funds and support for several existing tiny house villages, as well as to support Councilmember Sawant's proposal to build up to 40 more tiny house villages across the city. So our city has tried a lot of different ways to address homelessness. One of the main critiques that I know you all have heard about a million times is that the city is funding methods that don't work. But here's the thing, tiny house villages do work. Over the last several months, I've had the incredible chance to build relationships with individuals at the Northlake site, one of the villages that Mayor Durkin intends to shut down. Folks there have the chance to build leadership development skills and gain a real sense of independence. The most effective way to address homelessness is by providing housing. So why are we spending money to take housing away? What goal are we really serving when we propose removing housing? There is no credible alternative being proposed to house folks who are currently stable and living at the tiny house villages that Mayor Durkin wants to shut down. The tiny house village residents will be homeless if the mayor's budget proposal passes as is. We will then spend even more money on the navigation team to, what exactly, connect these now homeless residents to services to help them find housing? They already have that. Let's use our resources to build more tiny house villages and build community. I want to end by asking you to take a moment and think honestly about what it means for you to have a door. People always refer to housing as having a roof over your head, but that's really transactional. Having your own door, that's what's transformational. Contribute to the transformation of this city by investing in proven solutions to homelessness that empowers our communities. Invest in the dignity of our residents by supporting Councilmember Sawant's proposal to build more tiny house villages and preserving our existing villages. Thank you so much again.
Thank you for coming. 103 is Barbara Finney. Is 103 here? Would you raise your hand? Okay. Teresa Barker, 104. Ruth Burge, 105. Lata Ahmed, 106. All right, come on up, buddy. And then we have 107. Is 107 here? Okay, good. So 106, 107. And Dominic Davis has already spoken, so then we've got Carlo, 109. Is Carlo here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. If you'll all line up there, it'd be great.
All right, my name is Peter Quill. Thank you very much, councilmembers. I know you've been tired for a long time. I really appreciate your, your sitting. Here, I and Lata, we are members of Airbase Association, Uber and Lyft drivers. And we support highly the fair share plan. We support that 100%, there is no doubt. And we support also the Drivers' Support Center, that can help drivers that are driving around our city that don't know, that don't have no help. And also, we support the housing and transit. We support that. We have a lot of homeless people. It's very sad when someone driving around and see them every day. I really recommend it should end, it should stop. And please do that for them. And try your best, by all means, to put more money for our homeless. When we see them, it's sad. For me and for everyone of us, let us give them a place. Let us make Seattle the best city in the U.S., accommodate our homeless. And another thing, my friend, the forward driver has put before, I will say that again, the purpose of share plan by the few drivers, 51 cents is not a problem. The problem will be a dollar and 50 cents that go to insurance. That dollar and 50 cents do not benefit me, do not benefit other 30,000 driver driving in Seattle. Notice, when you get accident, you better keep quiet. If you tell over, they will take you out of the system. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, councilmember, and thank you for staying this late. And my name is Lata Ahmed, and I'm an Uber driver and same time leader committee. I'm just here to support my, what brother says is really enough for me. I have nothing to add on it. But I'm really here to support the fair share plan. And our community is diverse, as you all know about that, and they all support this fair share plan. So I want to just mention very quick point over here, which comes from the driver, together is to make together sure Seattle growth is working for everyone. Our fair share plan priority is driver deserve a living wage after expensive, and let make sure that Seattle is the first city in the nation to outlet unfair deactivation. Drivers deserve a powerful voice and support resolution center, which is more need to the drivers. And we all asking for that, actually, and we really need your help to support us for this fair share plan. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Lata. Gun violence prevention, and we got Moms Demand Action. Come on up.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Kazhan. I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action and Everytown for Gun Safety.
My name's Catherine Parker. I'm also a volunteer with Moms Demand Action and Everytown for Gun Safety.
And my name is Lauren Owen, and I'm also a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America.
I live in West Seattle, and I'm here because I know that we have, we know that there are evidence-based solutions to reduce the amount of gun violence that we're suffering from in Seattle, and we really want those solutions continuously and fully funded. And I'm referring to community-based violence intervention and prevention organizations that have proven to be effective in reducing gun violence, such as Choose 180, Community Passageways, and others. Research shows us that some of the most effective ways of reducing gun violence don't require any gun safety legislation, but they lie farther upstream in social justice policies and in funding choices. These programs have extraordinary mentors. They work to keep, some of the things that they do, they help to keep students in schools by diverting suspensions and expulsions, by providing a school-day alternative in partnerships with school districts.
The brave and remarkable youth and young adults who've participated in these programs have faced tremendous adversity amid highly challenging and inequitable circumstances that led them to the gateway or into the criminal justice system. While the odds were clearly stacked against them because of the hard work they've done through these effective programs, they have made genuine commitments to find new paths that position them to avoid guns and crime and build stable, healthy, and happy lives. These intervention and restorative justice solutions are the best possible option for reaching youth and young adults before involvement in the criminal justice system. Our young people should not be subjected to long and costly police investigations, prosecutor evaluations, lengthy court processes, or detention in anything but the most extreme circumstances. We know that both the criminal justice system and gun violence disproportionately affect Black and Brown Seattleites and those in the lowest socioeconomic brackets, while these community-based programs are specifically designed to support and uplift them. And we know that detention outcomes are unlikely to do anything to deter future criminal offenses.
We understand that some funding has been allocated for these programs in 2020. We strongly urge you to approve these in your final budget negotiations. However, we also hope that you will consider increasing funding again in 2021 and beyond, as we know that there is a much greater opportunity for Seattle to see a drastic reduction in gun violence with the help of these programs. There seems to be some consensus among Seattle City Council members and also candidates running for the council this fall that community-based violence intervention programs, such as Choose 180 and Community Passageways, have been successful. So my fellow Everytown and Moms Demand Action advocates want to ensure that everything possible is being done to act upon these beliefs and increase public funding for these incredible organizations. We know we can end gun violence and at the same time create brighter and more equitable futures for all of our young people. Thank you for your help. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Carlo? Carlo, 109? Nice to have you. Just a second here. We've got James Lockhart, 111.
Hi, my name is Carlo Necky.
Hold on just a second. We'll give you your full minutes. James Lockhart, 111, and Devin Reynolds, 112, and Philip Courier, 113. 11, do I have hands here? Okay, moving on to 114, Annette. 115, Arista. 116, Jessica? Yay, okay, bingo. And then Dan Roach, 117? No, Melissa Purcell, 118? Okay, great. If you'll just line up, Melissa, then we'll, and we've got three people. Go ahead, Carlo. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Carlo Necky. I'm a resident at the Interbay Tiny Cabin Safe Harbor Village, operated by Lehigh and in partnership with the Porters Seattle. We've heard all night how people need to help us, the homeless, and I believe, I'm thankful for that, and I appreciate that. But I like, but that's not the way I like to frame this argument. No offense, some of you guys are up for reelection. Not only would I support the tiny cabins, I'd be telling my constituents, I want one here first. You ask the mom and pops in our neighborhood, if we left, would it hit their bottom line? If we left, would tents go up? Would needles be on the streets? We have sharp boxes. We take 60 tents off the streets with one camp. And we're right there at the cruise ships. You think tourists want to see tents? So the tiny cabins also give back to the community. They give an opportunity for high school kids to learn carpentry by helping volunteer to build the cabins. Community involvement. We got four-year-olds that help make sack lunches. Lot of us work. I work for the Seattle Conservation Corps. You know, the, we give a lot to the community, too. There's a lot of opportunity that can be made by working with the tiny cabin villages. Also, we're a great lab. You know, if you have an idea, we love to try to test it out. Let's figure out what works. If we can figure out what works here, we can export it to other states. We have less homeless coming into our state from the rest of the country. It only seems to make sense to expand this when we know it works. You know, I've cleaned up some of those unsanctioned campsites. Two people in a campsite for about a month, three, an F-350 dump bed, and an F-250 full of trash in one of the parks on the lid. Two people. We take 60 tents off the street with one camp. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlo, for coming.
Thank you for being here. My name is Jessica Scialzo, and I'm just here to support most of the people that spoke tonight, because I have a lot of issues that I'm concerned about. So my list is that we definitely need rent control, and I think a massive expansion of public affordable housing, as well as tiny homes. The more people talk about it, the more I'm in favor of it. And someone mentioned tonight the Housing First model, which I think is very important to solving a lot of other issues that we have in the city and beyond. I'm also here for Orca for All legislation, to have corporations in Seattle pay for Orca cards for all their workers. And definitely, I would prefer us to fund police accountability instead of a police force expansion and expand the LEED program. And I didn't know anything about the reach, social workers, but the more I've heard them talk, the more I think we definitely need more funding to go to them so more of them can be available to help more people. Also, the Rayner Beach Freedom School and Youth Consortium definitely needs to be funded. I was very happy to hear them speak tonight. And funding, I'm glad to hear that the Seattle City Council supports the Green New Deal, and I'd like to see a lot of funding go to that and green jobs and training. And my last thing is about gun violence and mass shootings, and so I was happy to hear the three women that spoke about that tonight. And I would also piggyback on top of that, that I would like to see some funding go to getting the information out about extreme risk protection orders, because a lot of people don't know that you can petition the courts to get guns taken away from somebody that is a risk to themselves or to others. And I like what California has done, because they've extended that beyond police officers to like coworkers and teachers and the works. So thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Jessica. So I'm going to call next on Charity. Charity and Seth, would you like to come up? What's ever convenient for you. Here, if that's higher, if you can reach that one.
Perfect. Thanks also for letting us skip the line just a little.
We would have done that earlier.
I appreciate it. No, we're happy to wait our turn. It's just, anyway, thank you for understanding. So my partner Charity and I live in affordable housing through Capitol Hill Housing. We feel extremely grateful for that opportunity. The safety, security, and stability of that housing has enabled us to realize our potential as members of our community. We have housed a series of living caregivers who used that opportunity to build a resume and job skills and independence instead of succumbing to the crises in their lives and becoming homeless themselves. We watch our neighbors' kids. Charity has a pea patch plot at Thomas Street that feeds the neighbors in our building, but also our unhoused neighbors, who use the pea patch as a comfortable place to spend their days and who often don't have access to fresh vegetables. And by the way, she sits here in solidarity with the garden gnomes who want to save the Ballard pea patch, but also critically with the would-be garden gnomes who would be here to advocate for the expansion of the program to lower-income parts of our city, too, if they weren't looking for a new place to live where they can afford the rent. Her solidarity also extends to the children we could also help by funding a scratch cooking program, and that money is probably better spent there. I have the time and security to try to organize a union at the Blood Center, from which I was recently fired for that activity and did not become homeless before I was able to secure new employment. We have the time to explore organizing with attendance union. We have time to be educated citizens, knock on our neighbors' doors to advocate they vote against I-976, and we have time to do our civic duty to come here and pester all of you. None of that would be possible if our landlord were free to raise our rent every year. This behavior on the part of our city's landlords, the worst of it by big corporate developers, upends not only the lives of individuals, but of the communities they create when they are able to stay in place. Councilmembers, community is a fragile thing that takes a long time to build, but which can be destroyed easily by the cruel indifference of economic eviction. We have to stop the brutal disruption of our communities. This council had the opportunity to start that work last year by passing the head tax to fund affordable housing, and in the years since, the repeal of that tax and a cowardly abdication to corporate power has done very little to ameliorate the dearth of affordable housing like ours in Seattle. I hope you realize now that was a mistake, especially since Amazon has been putting its thumb decisively on the scale in this year's elections, which they were always going to do regardless of the repeal. But now you have the opportunity, I realize I'm out of time, so I'll just skip ahead. Now you have the opportunity to fund many of the programs brought before you tonight. I'd really like to encourage the council to recognize Councilmember Sawant for her wisdom in leading on issues like the $15-an-hour minimum wage and all of these issues, which weren't already popular when she took them up. You have the opportunity to fund housing at the scale we need by using our bonding authority. You can fund...
No, go ahead, let him finish. Turn it back on. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Did Charity, did you want to speak?[602.54][602.54](APPLAUSE). All right, well, thank you. Thank you for coming, and thank you for waiting so long. I know it's been many, many hours. Okay, so I think we decided that 117 was not here?
Yes, it's not here.
Okay. And Melissa Purcell, 118? Oh, boy. Do we have the entire Office of Film and Music? I'm loving it.
Yes.
Great.
So my name is Melissa Purcell. I am just going to read off my script, so forgive me here. Thank you, council members, for your time today. When we started out earlier today, we were approximately 30 people, but we've dwindled over the hours.
Not much.
My name is Melissa Purcell. I'm the Northern Business Agent of IATSC Local 488, Studio Mechanics of the Pacific Northwest. I represent the crews that make commercials, films, TV shows, corporate and commercial web content. I'm also a prop master by trade and one of the founders of the Seattle Film Music Coalition. The Film and Music Coalition was recently formed as a labor group representing about 3,000 working professionals in Seattle's film and music industries. Those unions and associations include Teamsters Local 174, IATSI Local 488, International Cinematographers Guild of IATSI Local 600, The Directors Guild of America, SAG-AFTRA, Musicians Association of Seattle AFM Local 76493, The Pacific Northwest Chapter of the Recording Academy, and the International Guild of Symphony, Opera, and Ballet Musicians. We invited anybody...anyone working in the film and music industries who have concerns about our proposed changes to OFM to join us. Why we are here? This coalition was formed because our industry is growing concern about the proposed change in direction of the Office of Film and Music. In March of this year, the director of the Film and Music Office, Kate Becker, left her position. At that time, we were told by OFM that the mayor had requested a pause and a review of that office. We were told that stakeholders would be included with outreach and research about the state of our industries and how OFM might best be utilized before a new director would be hired. I'm realizing I don't have my glasses. That's probably why I'm struggling here. This will help.
It's just dark, that's all.
Let's see. At that time, Randy Engstrom of the Department...the director of the Department of Arts and Culture was appointed the interim director of OFM, which was a surprising appointment to us because OFM sits within the Office of Economic Development. And we were surprised that the interim director would not come from OED or at OFM. Thinking this could be a growth opportunity for film and music business, many of us gave the mayor and department leaders the benefit of the doubt that our interests would be prioritized as the film unions had been asking for support for our industries, and now outreach was indeed being done. Over the course of the following months, the film industry participated in a study to find out what we felt the city could be doing better to support us, stabilize our industry, and grow it. The special events stakeholders did their own study, and the Music Commission was scheduled to meet with the Arts Commission. We were led to believe this engagement process was going to produce action that would grow jobs, wages, business, and revenue in our industries. What we learned was that while these conversations were taking place, there were other agendas moving forward to part out the Office of Film and Music, merge the Music Commission into the Arts Commission, and completely transform OFM's advocacy work that we, the film and music industries, have worked decades to build. For instance, by the time we were given the result of the Ostera Film Report in August, Arts and OED had already submitted OFM's changes to the mayor for the budget release. We were not briefed on those actions. We have come to learn the Music Commission has about 50% vacancy and is currently being administered by Arts, even though there was no due process for this change to the charter, which explicitly states that it is a function of OFM under OED. We also continued to get conflicting responses about the process and what policies were being advanced. When the mayor released her budget in September, we saw that OFM was going to be quote-unquote "repurposed" to focus on a new creative industry cluster. This was a surprise to us because this change in no way reflects our participation in their process. In fact, in all of our conversations, we have yet to find one person who asked for OFM to be changed to a new creative industry cluster. The leap of department heads to propose this change based on our feedback is a complete mischaracterization of our input. In fact, it feels like we were used to support a predetermined outcome that bureaucrats wanted to pursue. It is for these reasons that we have organized ourselves and are asking for your help today. As you're deliberating this proposal, please know that it does not reflect our participation or our priorities or needs. This creative industry cluster proposal does not have concrete definitions or economic development goals for what they hope to achieve. It doesn't seem to have measurements in place to determine its effectiveness, nor does it have accountability from the industries OFM has historically served. We feel that this proposal as written will not support or be of benefit to our jobs or our industries. To be clear, this is not just semantics for a name change. What do we want? We want to fix this problem, and we trust that the city council reject the proposed changes to OFM until the following conditions have been met. We establish a fully seeded Music Commission as a function of the Office of Film and Music to drive a music industry economic development agenda. Establish a fully seeded Film Commission as a function of the Office of Film and Music to drive a film industry economic development agenda. And establish an industry task force built from members of those commissions to write the job description and drive the hiring process for a new director of the Office of Film and Music. In other words, slow down and let our industries have a voice in this. Just briefly, in summary, OFM was built by stakeholders working collaboratively with government to make Seattle a successful place to think a living in the film and music industries. There have been times these industries have thrived here and have served us well. The film industry hires more arts disciplines at the highest wages than any other creative business. The film industry imports money by bringing out-of-state production that spends money and hires locally.
Can I get you to the last sentence? The very last sentence.
We are confident that if the conditions and industry stakeholders described are put into place, that you will see an Office of Film and Music that is ready to work together on inclusive job creation that will allow our industries to thrive and grow. This is what will help push Seattle to the forefront of new creative jobs and industries.
Thank you for all for coming and for staying. Now...
Thank you.
It looks to me like we're just down to a couple of speakers. We've got Greg who's spoken, Melissa's who's spoken, Chris, I know you're in, and the gentleman in the blue in the back.
Joe's in. Joe's last.
Okay. So I better read off numbers so I don't miss somebody. Yeah, I know, that's good. Okay. Elaine Wiley? Okay, check. Sharon?
Niree.
Williams?
Richard Becker. Richard Becker.
120. Richard Becker, you're up, 120. And what's your number?
121.
You'll be next. You'll be next after Mr. Becker. And before you jump in, do we have 122 here? Tim Lennon? Okay, Tim, would you line up here behind Sharon? Vivian? 123? If you'll get ready. Liz AG? 124? Liz here? Okay, let's go that far. Thank you, Richard. Thank you all for waiting.
Thank you. So my name is Richard Becker, and I'm here to speak in support of the funding for the pilot program for the medical treatment for methamphetamines. My son is addicted to methamphetamines, has mental health problems, and last I know, is living homeless right here on the streets of Seattle. So I talk to you just from my perspective as a parent. For years, he struggled with drug and mental health issues, and I always dreaded the thought that he might wind up on the streets of Seattle, and that's exactly what happened. I live with tremendous grief every day about this because I know the terrible effects, both physical and mental, of chronic meth use. I know the damage to my son gets worse every day, and that's difficult as a parent to live with. I also feel hopeless. These are very tough problems, and part of my hopelessness has been a lack of medical treatment for meth addiction. I have an ongoing fear that I will receive a phone call one day soon telling me that my son is gone. When the phone rings and I don't recognize the number, sometimes I expect the worst. This is not an unfounded fear. People are dying from meth use, and I'm saddened for all those who have already lost their loved ones. And so I ask, how can we not try a program now that could save lives? You have the power to give our struggling loved ones a possible path to survive and heal and to give those that love them some hope, and you can do it by funding this program. I understand these problems are difficult and require many different actions, including housing, but this is one step that you can take to save lives. If you're fortunate enough to not have a loved one in this situation, I ask you to imagine that it's your son or daughter or other loved one that is suffering with meth addiction, has mental health problems, and is living on the street. And imagine that there's a program that could give your loved one a chance to save their life and change their life. Would you think it's worth trying? I strongly urge you to fund the program. Every day, the damage is worse, people are suffering and dying, and there's no time to wait.
Thank you so much for coming and for sharing your story with us. Sharon? Tim? Did we...123, do we have Vivian? Okay, good. Please.
Thank you all for being here, for staying. Thank you to your team outside of here. Y'all don't know, but they've been doing an amazing job. My name is Sharon Niree Williams. I'm the Executive Director of the Central District Forum for Arts and Ideas. I am a volunteer of the Seattle Arts Commission of six years. I am also a volunteer as the co-chair of the Historic Central Area Arts and Cultural District, and outside of that, I am a storyteller in various genres that include music, film, theater, and poetry. I am here today in regards to the proposal and proposed changes to the Office of Arts and Culture, the Office of Economic Development, and the Office of Film and Music. It's been a tough six months. We've been meeting repeatedly, over and over and over again. We've had joint meetings for the first time in the six years that I've been on the Arts Commission with film, with music, with nightlife, with interactive, with...with...help me out? And yes, indeed, in festivals, special events. We've been...because we all want the same thing. We want a thriving, creative economy. I don't want the artists that I work with, the artists that I employ for my own personal use, artists in organizations like London Bridge Studios, artists like Michael B. Main, artists like Nikita Oliver, artists like myself, to have to be homeless, to not be able to afford to feed their kids, to not be able to live in a perfect place for them to strive and grow. That's all that we want for the Seattle Arts Commission and the Seattle Music Commission and everything, and that's all we're trying to do is to uplift the increase...the account of increased affordability, increased visibility, more economic opportunity, and greater racial equity in our creative communities, and I thank you.
Thank you. Tim, then Vivian, and is Tracy Wellington here? Do we have a 125? Raise your hand if you've got that. 126? 127? And I know Chris is here with 128, so please, go ahead, Tim.
All right, well, thank you all for taking the time this evening and solidarity with the block and decriminalize Seattle youth and our neighbors in tiny homes and all those struggling with addiction and their loved ones. My name is Tim Lennon, and I am here to speak in support of the proposed changes to Betterline OED, OFM, and Arts. I'm the Executive Director of Langston, past Executive Director of the Vera Project, and a Seattle Music Commissioner. I live and work in the Third District, more specifically, the Central District. Our district has seen the loss of more black-owned music businesses and black and POC and queer and trans artists displaced than anywhere else in the city in the past 10 years. That pace has just rapidly expanded, in large part due to the economic boom that certain sectors have had. I'm really encouraged by this new proposal to add staff and resources to the body of work that's lived in the Office of Film and Music and special events and nightlife and interactive. I'm even more encouraged by the proposal's alignment of the work of OED Arts Deal and some other departments to more effectively serve all of our stakeholders and center their efforts on the most adversely impacted communities by the policies and growth that have gotten us to this point. Small businesses and black and POC and queer and trans and youth culture workers have felt the brunt of this growth for a very long time. We're underrepresented in economic developments. We're as underrepresented in economic development conversations as we are in large-scale labor conversations and large local industry unions. So I really see this as an opportunity to align all the resources, economic development, nonprofit side, education, to really bolster and support the folks who need it the most. And so I'm hoping to see these changes go through. I'm definitely, as a commissioner, as a citizen, planning to hold electeds accountable, hold the offices accountable to the things they say they're going to do. But I feel like my first responsibility is to contribute to making this plan a success, and then we can go from there, and I hope other folks will join me in that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Vivian is before you, Chris. Vivian's 123.
I'm going to go for the shorter mic here. My name is Vivian Huang. I'm the Executive Director of Northwest Film Forum. We're a nonprofit film center in community space based in Capitol Hill. We are all about community and creating a thriving film ecosystem for artists to be able to live and work here. In the past six months, alongside Tim and Sharon, although in a film capacity specifically, I've been working with Amy Littler, the Office of Film and Music, and Ostara Group, spending hours convening conversations with a number of film stakeholders, seven different groups specifically representing location managers, unions, production companies, nonprofits, educators, production resources, and crew. We listened deeply and distilled all of their recommendations into findings to the city. Much of the opposition that came out today actually has not actually closely read the recommendations. They might have, for instance, seen in some of their communications online, there was stressing that we are not creating a film commission or not, and that was not in our recommendations, when in fact that was a part of our recommendations, and something like that is a long-time process, and we are recommending kind of short-term solutions before we get to the long-term solution. What is important to stress, though, is that we're all kind of working towards the same goal, and we do all want to leverage creative community in a way that can bring economic stimulus to the film industry. And in communing these conversations, I think the restructuring of the Office of Film and Music is actually something that is going to benefit us all, even though it may not seem obvious at the time. So in renaming it, it actually creates a way of putting an economic impact on it that the Office of Film and Music has not been able to leverage their resources thus far. Everyone knows that the Office of Film and Music has been somewhat broken and under-resourced, and by repositioning it, we're able to add three new positions in the proposed budget to be able to kind of uplift the creative economy as a whole, because a lot of us are facing the same issues. And yeah, I think part of it is the hope to leverage this creative economy idea in order to assist to pull an influence and relationships with ESTA, Parks, and other departments where the Office of Film and Music has not been able to do thus far. Thank you.
Vivian, thanks for coming. Okay, after Chris, do we have 129? Jim? Do we have 130? All right. Erica Lee, 131? Stephen Schrock? David Butler? Andrew Gruder? Joe Groover, 136? All right, Joe, you are going to be like cleaning up after Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm used to speaking to empty rooms at budget hearings, but I have to say that for someone who's been around a long, long time, sitting through a meeting tonight, not only does it make you appreciative of the work you all do, but if you sat here and listened to everything like I did, jaded, cynical, old guy, it's pretty inspirational at the end of the day. I'm just following on my testimony from last Friday. I don't want to abuse the privilege here and keep you any later. We said that if the fair driver fair proposal was not rewritten, so that all the money, every dime, went into the drivers' pockets, not anywhere else. Drivers are the ones who need money. We'd craft an initiative to repeal, and we have done that. We did it through the weekend. You've got it in front of you. And I just want to point you to the key elements of it. Those of you who've been around as long as me will remember I-91. This is patterned after all the law that underlines I-91, which was the Key Arena Initiative. We define it Section 1, consideration or rate...we state, consideration or rate for the value of four higher vehicle services provided by a four higher vehicle operator shall be at cost or reasonable compensation, including compensation for the personal services of the operator. We define fair value as being three times the IRS deduction. Basically, it comes out to $1.74. It's adjusted. IRS adjusts it every year. It's adjusted. And then we state that the City of Seattle shall impose no tax upon any transaction for passenger...that any transaction that's based on a rate for passenger transaction. Works together. It's simple, requires no bureaucracy, requires very little to implement. All the money goes to the drivers. You set fair rate at $1.74. It's done. If you don't want us to do it as an initiative, just do it as a substitute ordinance or substitute motion or whatever you call it. Thank you.
Thanks for the warning, Chris. Joe?
It's...
Joe?
Good evening, council members. My name is Joe Gruber, and I'm director of the University District Food Bank. While we are a place name for the neighborhood in which we are located, we support individuals and families from across four council districts. I'm here tonight to offer my personal and organizational support for many of the exciting opportunities for investment that you all have before you in the 2020 budget. To begin with, I want to urge you all to support the budget recommendations of the Seattle Human Services Coalition, including the allocations to staff and fund a comparable worth analysis for community health and human services organizations. This past summer, you took an important step to provide automatic inflationary adjustments in human services contracts. Thank you. This small step helps us keep up with some of the rising costs we experience, but you can do more through the comparable worth study. I've seen at our own agency the power that a fair competitive wage and benefits package has on recruitment and staff retention, morale, job performance, and ultimately, our mission effectiveness. The opportunity to strengthen our human services workforce, the foundation on which our community well-being is built, by funding the comparable worth study is not only just and in line with our community values, but necessary to ensure that our network of human service nonprofits remains strong resources for all our neighbors. I also urge you to make additional investments in the budget that improve and expand healthy food access, especially for low-income households and communities of color. Specifically, I urge you all to follow the investment recommendations of the Sweetened Beverage Tax Community Advisory Board. These recommendations provide for expansion of a fresh fruit and vegetable program into high school, expanded support for senior congregate meals and delivery meals to seniors, a serious investment in the assessment of scratch cooking in our public schools, hydration stations, and even a modest micro grant program. These investments are in line with SBD priorities, important, and community-driven. They should not be pitted against pea patch access. Finally, I want to ask your support on several issues important in District 4, including funding for a safe-flop pilot at University Heights, continued funding of the REACH program to support full-time mental health and referral staff in the U District, which is cost-shared with the U District Partnership and the BIA, and finally, funding for the YULU, which is already in the mayor's budget. Thank you for making these investments in the 2020 budget and building well-being across all our Seattle neighborhoods.
Thank you, Joe. All right. Well done. Thanks to all of you. Did I miss anybody? Thank you for coming. Thank you for your patience. Colleagues, five and a half hours. Congratulations.
Record for me.
All right. Good night. Our meeting's adjourned.
You beat my...
Thank you.